Mr. Bowers, everybody here, we're good to go. All right, well, good morning, everyone. It's a beautiful sunny day out here in beautiful Langley. And we just want to, I just want to call the special meeting for priority planning for budget purposes to order. And before I move on to the first item, I believe, I may be corrected, but there's a birthday here, Mr. McIntosh. Happy birthday. It'd be nice to, it'd be nice to him today, it's his birthday.
Well, I couldn't think of a nicer bunch of people to be with on my birthday.
There you go. All right, so what, what we'll do today is, once we get the meeting going, is turn it over to Gord. And, you know, this is basically our workshop to, to go through some priorities and discuss where we've come, you know, where we come from, where we're going. And so I want to keep it as relaxed and informal as possible. But I think because it's on the Zoom world, if those of you want to speak, just put your hand up. I'll, I'll leave the meeting to Gord, but perhaps Gord, do you want me to manage the speaker's list? So you can manage the presentation and the discussion, and I'll just manage the speaker's list.
Oh, thank you very much, that'd be excellent idea.
Okay, so, and again, it's Zoom, it's a workshop. It's, our intention here is to discuss various items. So we'd like to keep it as informal as possible. Certainly, we're going into a meeting after this, where we can start to start looking at some of their, you know, directions and that sort of thing for staff. But right now, I'm going to call the meeting to order.
Mr. Mayor.
Yes?
Can, can we go over the schedule? I mean, I got so many gadgets in front of me. So we're meeting now, it's nine thirty, so how long is this meeting? And then what, what's the day look like?
This means, Mr. Bowers, nine thirty till, what, till two? And then from two till four thirty, we'll be meeting with a, to continue on with the draft budget for twenty twenty one. So this is more of a workshop with Gord. Okay, so the first item would be the motion to adopt and see the agenda items, kind of motion please. And because the screen, the way the screen's set up, I can't see everybody's hands, so if you can just voice.
Whitmarsh will move.
Yeah, Council Whitmarsh moves, and a second there. A second.
Uh, Long.
Second.
Council Long, seconds, thank you. All those in favor?
Aye.
Oh, I've got it, Council Richter, sorry, I didn't see your hand, Council Richter has a question.
Um, I did have a question, Mr. Mayor, thank you. I just wanted to verify that an agenda was sent out on Thursday, which lays the day out, it's starting at nine thirty, and then to two, and then two to four thirty. I'm wondering, after Councilor Long's question, did everyone get a copy of that agenda? Because there were some very important documents in it that Dr. McIntosh has asked us to complete in order to participate in this session. So I'm just wondering, perhaps if we could make sure everyone's got the material that was sent out to them in front of them.
We'll go through that.
It was managed as a, a regular agenda, so it was sent out to councilors that received paper, and those that don't receive paper, uh, received it on Granicus.
Oh, so it is available then to everyone?
Yes, it is.
Thank you for clarifying that.
Do you have your, does Council Richter have her agenda, I wondered? Do you have it there? I've got, I've got mine for sure.
Uh, yeah, well, you're the one who said you didn't have one, I've got mine.
No, I didn't say I didn't have an agenda, I just asked to go over the schedule for the day. The agenda doesn't actually mention that the other meetings are there, so there you go. Whatever.
There's actually two agendas, so, okay, I'm gonna call the question, all those in favor? And opposed, anybody opposed? Carry on, thank you. And move on to the next item, which is the priority planning for twenty twenty one budget. And this is where I'll turn it over to Dr. McIntosh. Thank you very much for, for being with us today. And we look forward to a, to a really good session and a real good discussion. Thank you, so I'll turn it over to Dr. McIntosh.
Uh, thanks, Mayor Frost. Um, well, first of all, um, uh, thanks for the birthday wishes. Um, second though, I must apologize, uh, it would appear the stars have collided, and I'm using three G because our wifi is down. So that's why I'm not using, uh, the video. But, you know, we'll have a break, back to Councilor Long's question. I think we'll, we'll take a break maybe every hour or so. And I understand that, uh, we would take a lunch break, and you can let me know if, is that half an hour, or is it an hour? What suits everybody? Is that half an hour usually, or?
It's just a, it's just a bologna sandwich, we're not eating at the hall today.
Okay.
I, I think, I think half an hour is good.
Okay. So let's plan that, uh, you know, there's little points in time, we'll, uh, we'll take, uh, you know, one or two, uh, shorter breaks, uh, before noon, then just to, uh, so people can move around. And I know this is very different, I haven't been with, uh, with you for, I think, over a year. So when thinking about today, um, I took a look at our last session. And our last session was, uh, October twenty nineteen for strategies. Um, so I took a look at that. And I also looked at, um, the governance session that we did, which was February twenty twenty, to then come up with, um, a bit of a proposed, uh, agenda. Let me go through that, and then come back, and we'll do roundtable, and make sure, uh, we're gonna make the best use of your time. So as, uh, Mayor Frost indicated, we're going to update the, um, uh, strategic priorities. That's, uh, really the original intent of the day. But as well, I reflected back to, uh, our discussion in February, where we had identified areas, um, that even though we may set priorities, uh, are there things perhaps that would, um, hmm, derail? Um, perhaps that's a good word, derail us from these priorities. And a couple of them were, uh, are we, and again, we'll, we can go back over these, just give me an idea of, uh, some topics for the day. Um, but after we set the priorities, how are, are we gonna make sure we do a regular review? And adjust the chart, which, uh, as you can see, uh, the chart really hasn't been updated since October twenty nineteen. Uh, we did talk about the CPC meetings, and, you know, how to make sure that worked effectively. Uh, the last time we met, you were just initiating that, and we said we should do an assessment, and just make sure that's working relative to being strategic. As well, we talked about matters arising, which are important to councilors. Uh, how do those get dealt with? And, uh, the volume perhaps that would detract us from priorities. We also had the issue of public inquiries, um, you know, our expectations and, and the volume that could impact our priorities. Uh, we also talked about, yeah, were there any, um, staff capacity hotspots? And lastly, um, the idea of doing regular, uh, governance check-ins. So with that in mind, I drafted an agenda to think, well, what have we seen? Uh, where are we on the priorities that we, uh, developed, uh, last October? And also, um, you know, are there, uh, perhaps some significant things that we should be thinking about that are happening in, uh, Langley? Um, second, uh, once we do that, then what do we want to discuss? We always, uh, narrow down if there are priorities still in progress. We put those on a chart, Wendy's gonna help you, uh, do that with the whiteboard. And then we'll go roundtable, I asked each of you as, uh, uh, Counselor Richter mentioned, uh, there were some questions asked, so this is a heads up that I'll be asking everybody, uh, are there some significant items that you want to discuss in our time today? I requested two, a maximum two, uh, you don't have to have two, uh, only because we have limited time, and I want to make sure that everybody, uh, got to offer something, so, uh, we'll do that. Then we'll say, as we always do, we unpack them. Um, and respectfully, we'll unpack each one. Some will, uh, proceed, uh, some, uh, will look good. Uh, but good odds we'll have too many, and then we'll have to set priorities. Lastly, uh, when we have our priorities, uh, hopefully we'll have time to say the thing that we need to do to enhance our success in achieving these priorities, uh, for the balance of the term. So, I thought, uh, then we could go roundtable, uh, so it's just a quick review. First of all, we're going to take a look at, uh, you know, the progress we've made so far, uh, things that are still in play, take a look and see what are some big things happening in the township. Second, get our hit list of topics. Third, unpack those, that's where we're gonna spend eighty percent of our time. And then take a look, is there anything we need to do, uh, to make sure that we can be strategic and, uh, keep our attention to those, uh, strategies? So if, uh, if it's okay, I wouldn't, uh, I'd like to go roundtable, and of course, there is no roundtable, no table anymore. So let me just start with, um, and, you know, I apologize if occasionally, and we're so used to being, as, uh, Mayor Frost said, informal. Um, I will try and use everybody's formal name, because I know we're in a special meeting. Uh, so, uh, let's start with, uh, um, Counselor Arneson. Um, uh, how does that sound for you, though, that four-part agenda for today?
Sounds good, thank you.
Thank you, Counselor Long?
Yeah, I'm pretty jiggy with that, thank you very much, uh, see how it goes.
Great, uh, Counselor Whitmarsh?
Yeah, works for me, uh, Gord.
Thank you, uh, Counselor Kuns?
Yes, it works for me as well, thank you.
Counselor Davis?
Um, I just, first of all, how is the temperature where you are? Is it cold? Can you hear me? Yeah, is it cold?
No.
It is, okay. Okay, it's because you keep, you keep referring to, uh, Mayor Froze as Mayor Frost.
Well, probably.
From, from, from my perspective, I hear Mayor Frost. Everything's fine, carry on.
Well done, well done, David. Uh, Counselor Woodward? Counselor Ferguson? Counselor Ferguson?
Is Fergie here? Yeah.
He, uh, well, let's go to Counsel, uh, Counselor Richter.
Well, he's on the list. You could, you should be able to hear me.
Oh, there he is.
Okay, so basically, I am here, I just got caught up, my car wouldn't start, and I had to divert a train. Okay, so that, here I am. Uh, yeah, I did send you an email, and I think that, that it's much to remain the same. You've got a good agenda, and I've got it in front of me, and, uh, I printed it out as, uh, Counselor Richter and others have already pointed out. So I've gone over, I've sent you an email, get a little bit of my, my, things are different under COVID, that's all I can say. And we have to look at the way we, uh, do things. But that doesn't mean to say we can't move forward, but it, we have to move forward with concerns both financially and delivery as well. So yeah, the agenda's good, and, uh, yeah, we're looking forward to unpacking and unwrapping, and then doing everything else we can with, uh, with Mayor Frost. Thank you.
Thanks. Uh, Counselor Richter?
Yeah, um, I'm sort of okay with it. I don't think we should accept as a basic premise that what we agreed to this time last year is still in play, because I don't think it is still in play. I think there's been so many fundamental changes in how we have had to conduct business in the past year, as well as how we're gonna have to conduct business going forward into COVID recovery. So I'm not for maintaining the status quo. I think we have to be questioning everything, and I fully intend to do that, thank you.
Thanks, Counselor Richter, yeah, uh, good point. Uh, so anything still in play now simply for today just goes back to becoming a topic. Uh, uh, and so then we don't set priorities, yeah, no assumptions, a good one. Uh, Mr. Selfie? Selfie? Did I get that right? Ramon?
Did you say Salty?
Yeah.
Okay, uh.
You're okay with the agenda?
Everything is fine, thank you.
Okay, Mr. Winslet?
Yep, good, thank you.
Ms. Bower?
I'm good, thank you.
Mr. Backen?
All good, thank you.
Right. And, uh, Mayor Froze?
All right, good.
My son that right yet?
Uh, Counsel, uh, Counsel Long has a question, Counsel Long?
Yeah, yeah, I'd like to, uh, discuss a little bit more Counselor Richter's comments, because I mean, it seems like every time you turn around, COVID, you can blame COVID for, for this, and you blame COVID for that. Yes, how we do business is different with COVID, and there are other aspects to our life, uh, are, all of our lives that COVID has affected. But how does it affect the priorities that we set last year, and how we go about doing business, other than the fact that we have to Zoom instead of being in person? So I, I, I'm a little troubled by that comment, because if we're gonna revisit everything, and it seems to have been a bit of that happening already in the last year. Maybe what's changed mostly since COVID is, is the attitude amongst the council table, and I, and I'm putting that out there, because I think it needs to be discussed as well. But, uh, you, you agreed right away, Mr. McIntosh, that, oh, yeah, well, everything, so can you explain? Do you, do you, is this the way we're looking at it all across the country? That plans to build, uh, you know, libraries, or police stations, or paved roads, or, or, you know, deliver services is going, is changing drastically because of COVID? Or are we just talking about some financial challenges and other challenges? Anyway, I just thought maybe that could be expounded upon a little bit, because that's the first, uh, shot out of the gate there from somebody, right?
Sure, uh, well, two things, uh, well, you've brought up three different points. But the, the first point is, um, anything in play, uh, as a, you know, let's call it a priority that was from last year, is in play compared to any other topic that comes up, that's really the only comment. Where how they end up, uh, will be up to, uh, to council to decide, relative to COVID or not. Um, and so, so it's, it's simply meant to be that we're gonna discuss anything that was a priority that's not done, and any topics that come up, we'll discuss, and then we'll set priorities. That's, uh, point number one. Point number two, uh, is, yeah, sure, COVID has an impact, we'll need to probably put some context around that. And also, we need to discuss, as you indicated, sort of council's approach to the priorities, and make sure they're successful. So, so that's, um, you know, the four parts to the agenda. So, okay, uh, to continue?
I have a question, Counsel Richter?
Okay.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Mayor, and I think Dr. McIntosh, that illustrates one of the points that has to be on our agenda, and that is inter, uh, counselor, uh, relationships and discussions. Uh, there is clearly a trend in this council right now, that when some of us say black, there is at least one person who says white and vice versa. This has gotta stop, it's counterproductive, and it gets in the way of us being a productive and enthusiastic council, thank you.
No, there, there's two, there's two councils that say black.
Okay, so we'll, uh, we'll carry on, I think it's, it's all, and that's what the purpose of this workshop is, it's to, it's to get some ideas out. Uh, there are no bad ideas, uh, there are just ideas.
No, but if we have, if we have meetings, Mr. Mayor, and this is not on you, because I think you do a wonderful job with our meetings. But if we have councilors that are just gonna go out and snipe at other councilors for the sake of sniping, that's not effective, and it's not productive, and it's not healthy, and I'd like it to stop.
I agree, and, and carry on with this meeting in a open and, and a manner. We respect each other, we respect each other's ideas, because there are no bad ideas, and that's, we need to, no?
I, I forgive you, Counsel.
It's been pointed out, there's some big, big, uh, things going on with COVID. It's changed how we do business. A year ago, we just sat here and we wouldn't even have talked about, uh, COVID. Uh, it was, uh, on the horizon, but we didn't believe it. And now we're in the middle of it, and so certainly lots has changed, and I think Gord has a pretty good, uh, agenda for today, to move, move forward and allow us ample opportunity for discussion. So Gord, I'll turn it back to you.
Great, thank you very much, and, um, yeah, and certainly that was the intent. Um, as you can see, our four-point, uh, part agenda, what would enhance our success? Notice I did the positive, so, uh, for all of council, I think we need to say, where are we? What do we want to discuss? What are our priorities? And what would, uh, stop us from being successful? So, uh, we're not going to, you know, shy away from any of these. Let's just find the right place to do, uh, I'm gonna suggest to just, uh, discuss each one. So let's start with, uh, first of all, I'm gonna, uh, go to Mr. Backen and just say, where are we on the priorities, he was where from December of twenty nineteen? Um, and where are we on the ASE, uh, district? And, uh, is it done? Is it in progress? Uh, does it stay on the list to talk about?
Uh, thank you, Mr. Chair, I'll, I'll give a brief overview, and then if, uh, Mr. Winslet or Mr. Selfie want to, uh, jump in, they can. Uh, being mindful of our timing, uh, the, the arts, sports, entertainment district, uh, the conceptual planning is proceeding. And in fact, we provided an update to council at the last meeting with the view to, uh, providing some, uh, more formal direction at the next meeting. Uh, so we're, we're proceeding with that, and it's, uh, I guess in a, a situation where it's being tuned and retuned, depending upon the opportunities that exist for grant funding. Uh, the Horn Pit, uh, project, we, um, as late as last week, received another, uh, perhaps a more enhanced outline, uh, or layout for that project. Uh, our next step will be, uh, to bring forth the concepts, I think, to council, to get some feedback on those concepts. And then with that, hopefully, we can proceed with the application process for rezoning, being mindful, however, that we have to, uh, to ensure that the neighborhood plans proceed at least concurrently with, if not ahead of, the actual applications itself, so we're sensitive to that. Um, development management process review, I believe, is in its implementation stage. Uh, Mr. Selfie can comment on that after I've gone down the list. Uh, cannabis retail and licensing, uh, we are looking at, uh, I would say at the next meeting or the meeting thereafter, bringing, um, the applications that have endured forward for potentially third reading. As council will recall, we processed twenty-one, and I think at the current stage, we're at five or six, with, uh, three or four being actively referred for future discussion. Uh, two more kind of in that process, uh, one that still needs to have public input, one that has had public input but still needs council's, uh, deliberation. And, uh, in this COVID environment, the, uh, the debt management strategy is going to be delayed, it is in its infancy, although our sessions are, are perhaps helpful, uh, even for example, as part of the budget session, we, uh, we determine that the council's desire, or our perception is council's desire for borrowing is more diminished, and in fact, if there is to be borrowing, it has to be for significant community infrastructure or assets, not part of our regular capital program, but something that's quite, um, I guess, um, special, or something that's going to make a significant impact on the community, that's our, our current goal. But I'll let Mr. Winslet and then Mr. Selfie comment on any item on the list.
Uh, no, I don't have anything further to add, thanks.
So let's, uh, uh, just before we do that, let's go back then. ASE is, uh, district, is that kind of a shelf project right now? Is it just, uh, is it, uh, just hovering there? Waiting for money?
Jason, perhaps you can elaborate?
Well, just a little bit further to what, uh, Mr. Backen said, these priorities were done in December of nineteen, I think, um, Gord. Uh, we were supposed to bring back in March of twenty, as indicated there, we did, we discussed with council from March through July. Um, in November, we did a request for expressions of interest, uh, out to the public, uh, to the private sector. And, uh, staff are currently evaluating and reviewing those, and gonna bring it back for council consideration. So that's all we want to detail up here.
So ASE proposals, okay, I'm just trying to get the key words, and then I'll, I'll turn to, uh, Mr. Mayor, uh, because we got some hands up. Okay, Horn Pit Housing Project, uh, so exactly where are we today? Is this done? Still in progress?
Well, it's, it's running here, and I think, uh, Mr. Backen, uh, provided an overview, it is in the works. Uh, the next step is to present, uh, the, uh, the current options in, uh, in some shape or form to council. Uh, the anticipated date, I guess, is, is, uh, Q two or Q three of this year. Uh, the, uh, intent is for the options to be presented, and, uh, I guess, the, the ultimate, uh, process to be concurrent with the neighborhood planning process. So it's not a standalone project, uh, number two, the Horn Pit. It is to be done in consolidation, in concert with the, the neighborhood planning process for that area, which also is expected to be brought to council this year sometime Q three, Q four. As far as the development management process review is concerned, uh, Mr. Backen provided a high-level overview. Uh, council will recall, the, uh, committee, the mayor's standing committee worked diligently and hard on, on recommendations that were received by council, and then referred back to staff. Staff is currently looking at the implications of the recommendations, and plans to bring forward a report to council in Q one of this year. Uh, as far as cannabis retailers concerned, again, Mr. Backen provided an overview. Uh, applications are being considered, I think it's fair to say that the, uh, the overall policy direction has been provided, unless council decides to, to change that policy. But it's a matter of, I guess, uh, addressing, processing applications based on the policy, or, or otherwise. Uh, I don't know if you wanna talk about next, or we'll just leave it for now.
So the policy has been approved, and now you're actually just processing applications?
That's correct.
Okay, thank you. And, and debt management, that, uh, at, at this point, uh, Mr. Backen has, uh, is, is kind of, uh, no date. Okay, I'll turn to, uh, Mr. Mayor for, we've got some hands in the air.
Thank you, uh, Counsel Ferguson.
Yeah, thank you, I, I know, I, this is great that we're able to look at this kind of thing, because, um, also, we had to roll our sleeves up and, uh, and ask a question. On the arts and, uh, sports entertainment, uh, whoever would answer, Mr. Backen or Mr. Winslet. Now, we, uh, were applying for grant funding, we've also ascend, assembled quite a bit of property that, is that necessarily for the arts and sports entertainment district? Or is that, um, over and above, uh, that particular concept? That's my first question.
Your worship, the, the property is within the district, and, um, the grant possibility would, will be subject to our report to council next meeting.
So, Mr. Mayor, I have a point of order, please, if I could.
My word.
Um, when we're talking about land, are we in a non-camera closed session right now? Because I don't think we should be talking about land unless we're in a closed session.
As long as the questions are, uh, referring to land that's already in public ground, property that we already own, we find that to expect, we have to be cautious, so thank you.
That, that's correct, land we all reown. Okay, second thing is, again, the funding. Uh, the third thing, i- is this an achievable project this term? Uh, going up to twenty twenty-two, I know it's gonna wait and see, but it kind of, eh, I'm asking, it's kind of a loaded question. I don't wanna embarrass anybody, but would this be something that we could accomplish this term? If I may through the chair to Mr. Winslet or others?
I'm gonna, uh, just interrupt, interrupt, uh, Mr. Mayor. Uh, at this point, we're not trying to unpack these, uh, we just really want to get the status and see what stays on the list. We're gonna come back and talk about each one of these, right?
Okay, if we're gonna come back and talk, I'll just wait, because I have some questions on, uh, Horn Pit, and, uh, I guess the other two, the cannabis is ongoing, and the debt management is ongoing as well. Okay, thank you.
Yeah, thanks, uh, Counsel.
There's one thing good about, uh, um, Zoom, uh, Gordon, you can interrupt me anytime.
It's like, there's no more hands, so we can, uh, move on.
Okay, so, uh, no more hands, so, uh, then we have, and this is really just to take stock, right? Um, and see, uh, and then we'll, we'll add to the list. So we got the next items, uh, and we'll go back to, uh, Mr. Backen, uh, just give us, uh, an update on the next items. Where are we at?
Uh, thank you, Gord. The, um, the next item is the North Langley Truck Route. Um, the situation is, we've done some further advancement as to the funding, unfortunately, the cost has risen. Uh, we were also, uh, I guess, uh, considering that there may be an industrial development on the water, there's a designated parcel or parcels that, uh, are, uh, in our plan, and in the, uh, Metro Vancouver Regional Growth Strategy for industrial, but also in the agricultural land reserve. Uh, the, the news is that the, the commission considered those and, and rejected, but we do understand that there is a, uh, a reconsideration application underway. Um, the housing needs assessment, uh, I believe is also underway, Mr. Selfie can provide more detail. Uh, the road network, which, um, I think is actually related, uh, more so to our, um, I guess, um, uh, Willoughby situation, uh, which includes such things as the, um, WAR CAP, which is an acronym that, uh, stands for the Willoughby Amendment Road Contribution Program. Um, and Mr. Selfie will have some more information on that. Our TL property strategy is, uh, I guess it's probably in a companion at this point, uh, to the debt management strategy. It's in a bit of a holding pattern, simply because of time, resources, and COVID. And the other items being the, um, future farming and the community polarization remain as next items. But again, I'll let, uh, Mr. Winslet or Mr. Selfie provide any comments on the list, as they're more directly involved.
Okay, so if we go back to North Langley, uh, truck route, uh, we're expecting a report?
Uh, this will not be a report, but rather council considering budgets, uh, in future years. Uh, there is funding in place already, based on prior year's approved funding, for certain components. for certain components of the works. This North Langley Truck Route uh subject item uh consists of many aspects or many elements, a number of elements. Uh one aspect of it has already been approved by council as far as funding is concerned, that is the uh improvement at intersection of Rollisum and and Glover. That said, the remaining aspects, the remaining elements, which as Mr. Backen uh referenced, based on the fact that there's been more detailed uh design and cost estimating done, uh has increased, remain to be funded by council as part of future years. So unless otherwise, because it's by council, staff was planning to simply put the various elements in the budgets going forward uh for council to consider and and debate as part of the budgeting process. So no specific report in mind.
Sounds like a capital item then and uh with the concurrents of council. Um let's say here, otherwise that would be just simply a capital budget item now.
That's correct.
Okay, housing needs, what's uh our?
Housing needs, it's uh a report that was done in last year as Mr. Backen referenced. It is something that we are required to do through legislation, provincial legislation requires, requires us to do a housing needs assessment. It it is used to inform the subsequent analysis, which is really preparation of a housing action plan. The housing action plan is currently underway based on the results of the housing needs assessment and that will be completed this year uh likely in Q three or Q four and presented to council.
Great, thanks, and uh road network?
Uh I don't think there is anything to do on that unless again, otherwise directed by council. The WRCAP policy has been approved by council, so we are currently in the process of implementing uh contributions that are intended to go towards acquisition of the roads, certain sections of roads uh pursuant to the policy. And then it will be up to council to decide as to how to uh spend that funding whenever we've accumulated sufficient or otherwise borrowed to to complete certain works prior to the funding being in place. So that, I think, doesn't require anything further at this point from staff.
Sounds like uh again um a cap- a capital item. And the next two, if I recall, oh, uh uh Town Langley Property uh Strategy.
Yeah, I'll leave it to Mr. Backen or Mr. Winsley to comment on, I don't have anything to report on that.
Yeah, thank you, Raymond, the the status is very much like that of the debt management strategy. They are somewhat companions, but they've been um I guess uh slowed down because of the COVID circumstance and the uh and the uh I guess uh process we've undergone in finance, bringing on a new director, so they would still be outstanding items.
Yeah, no problem, and I think uh the future farming and the community polarization, if I recall, were simply items we hadn't totally unpacked at the last session um to ship out at all, okay? Um let's go to uh advocacy, so we're uh oh uh any, I don't see any hands, uh uh your worship.
Okay.
I just uh I had a question, um and I guess it just to confirm what I thought I heard earlier was that uh on some of these items that we will still have opportunity today to uh discuss these items further, is that is that correct? Cause uh if so, then I'll wait, but I just wanted to confirm that.
Yes, that's correct, uh so at this point, all the items uh that we've agreed to, one, two, three, four, five, six, seven items uh will now be uh on our hit list to unpack and discuss.
Okay, thank you.
Yes.
That's all the questions, so get out.
We've we've lost, Gordon?
It sounds that way, it looks that way.
Okay.
Give him a minute to reconnect. That's what every radio station fears, silence in the air.
Mr. Mayor, maybe we should take a ten minute break and allow him to.
Yeah, why why don't we do that, we'll we'll uh contact him, so let's take a ten minute break, come back, we'll have a break early, come back about uh ten fifteen.
Thank you.
Thank you, that's a good idea, thanks.
Okay, sorry about that. So Mark, are you uh giving us update on the uh advocacy items?
Thank you, Gord, yes, so the um the again, again, we'll be going through the list and asking for Mr. Winsley and Mr. Seffy to comment. Uh but the highway widening east of two sixteen street is um still advancing. The province um is at a ninety, ninety-five percent detailed design and uh it is, we're told, advancing uh with focusing on the needs for overpasses and that includes such things as road and rail alignments, there are some funding pressures on the project and there may be need to revisit uh some of the scope depending on how how things progress. Uh as to rapid transit, uh the focus of late has been on the potential uh Surrey Sky Training Extension. As most council members will recall during the election process, uh Premier Horrigan referenced uh making effectively, and I'm paraphrasing here a bit, making it one project and having it go all the way from the town from Fleetwood uh or sorry, all the way from the Surrey Town Center to Fleetwood, right through to Langley City. And uh as of right now, there seems to be funding for the Fleetwood leg and now the question is can the opportunity for federal and provincial funding um be uh explored so that it can occur much more quickly? Uh Quatland First Nation Supportive Housing or Housing um I guess Ventures um are are a bit of a hiatus only because many of the uh KFN attempts to uh to receive um government support, government funding uh were are unsuccessful or delayed. Put it that way, I shouldn't say unsuccessful, but they're still still out there, um so they're still plugging away. Uh the B C Housing um University District matter is in a similar position. It's advancing perhaps a little bit, but the province is in the process of restructuring their supportive housing or affordable housing initiatives, uh they are changing their funding methods. So the the sources before such as the hub, as it was called, may no longer be in place. So that requires uh continued diligence and uh communication, which is underway. Uh supportive housing facility assessments, um the the it kind of rolls into the previous two in terms of the the housing needs, uh the the terrain continues to change. It's a bit challenging, but we're proceeding to liaise with all. And the Sixteenth Avenue widening is perhaps becoming more important uh to the township, given the volume of traffic that we're seeing on Sixteenth Avenue, particularly the truck traffic that's traversing from Abbotsford to Surrey as Surrey's seeing unprecedented growth and most of the the uh I guess uh gravel and material is actually coming from Abbotsford at this point. So we're seeing significant volumes in both uh transport trucks and gravel trucks and that's having impacts. Our recent improvements in terms of pullout lanes and lights have certainly helped, but it is causing a uh quicker deterioration of our road and needs uh continued advocacy, however, I must say that the province's interest in it has been minimal. They look at it as being uh uh my Trans Lake Road, which it certainly is recognized on the MRN as one, but not the upgrade to provincial highway status. So Mr. Winsley or Mr. Seffy for elaboration?
Nothing from me, thanks. Myself, Snyder, thanks.
Uh it sounds like um uh all those items uh stay on the list, they're still in progress.
I would say so, yes, that's correct.
Yep. Um just in the interest of time, um maybe uh let's go back to uh round table and so far, uh I have on the list um the ASE uh Horn Pit Development Management Process, um perhaps uh cannabis licensing, um debt management, the housing needs, uh next steps, um and the uh property, uh Langley property. And so let's go around table and see uh let's uh reverse the flow and we'll start with uh Counselor Richter, let's start with one uh on the first round and then we'll go another round. Um uh Counselor Richter, wh- what other strategic topic uh should we look at unpacking today?
Um I'd like to look at the budget process, uh because I think we have a unique opportunity here to revisit um some very basic questions about our budget, such as legislatively, what are we actually required to be providing? And to perhaps divest ourselves of those functions that are not legislatively required and um consolidate costs so that we're not turning over uh somewhere between a seven and a ten percent tax increase in this COVID year to our residents. So I don't know what you wanna call that, but reconstructing the budget, I guess, is what I'd call it.
Okay, uh Counselor Ferguson, uh do you have a topic that you'd like to unpack? I'll uh come back, uh Counselor Woodward?
All right, Gord, are you referring to existing items or additional items?
No, additional items, yeah, so I've got the uh um yeah, got the seven that we have already uh talked about, which we will go back to. Any additional significant items you'd like to make sure we unpack today?
Uh no, I don't have any specific items to add, but there'd be specific rationale for that, which may or may not be applicable. Perhaps we could discuss that when we unpack development management process and cannabis retail, when we get when and if we get.
Okay.
Well, I'm back, Ferguson back, I'm back.
And do you have a item that you want to make sure we uh unpack today, one item?
Okay, yeah, the one item I still wanna continue unpacking is uh roads, hundreds of roads in township and of course the Willoughby Arturiar Roads and roads in general with a double overpass there, we just wanted to make sure we forelane it, thank you.
So specifically that's what, uh Counselor Ferguson, something road, a specific road?
It's called roads, yeah, in in a particular, we have a lot of different ways of looking at roads in Langley and one is the Willoughby Arturiar Roads program, some people call it four cap.
Willoughby Road, okay, um Counselor Davis?
Yes, you don't mind, maybe this is new, you want something new. I have um I feel an issue that is, I don't know if it's maybe trivial, but to me, it's a very, very controversial issue and uh puts a lot of people on the spot here is. I don't think we have a s- uh a um maybe if Mr. Backen can help me out, a uh like when it comes to um uh uh putting in a a special interest group sidewalk, uh a flagpole, I know, I think we have a flagpole issue where we it goes straight to uh we don't even, doesn't even, and another thing I like, well, I I'm, I don't wanna bring up, this is, this isn't for argument's sake, but I noticed like there's a um in front of it, we have a private university and on public land, they've have their symbol. And we need a uh because this this is gonna, this is a very contentious issue and we need a Mr. Backen, what's the word I'm looking for, not a a bylaw, uh so when somebody comes to us and says, well, we want to do this and we're a special interest group and we wanna put that out there, we have the protocols that that just fall into place and uh we don't have to like uh what what's the word, is it, it's not bylaw, is it? I'm not looking for a uh.
Perhaps, perhaps it's a policy. Such as a policy.
What the heck's the word I'm looking?
Yeah, maybe it's such as the word policy and having a policy.
Policy, po-.
Well, uh there's already.
Yes.
There's an item on the notes that talks about. Two uh O three or something, it says here.
So uh back to uh.
Well, that scares the hell out of me, I don't even know what that is. That 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 bothers me, I don't even know what that means, it's gotta be. Okay, good, I've got the floor, well, no, no, that's fine, no, I I understand, I I was looking for help. Is is that something that we should unpack? Can you hear me, uh can you hear me, uh?
Oh, yeah.
I I can you hear me, Jack? Can anybody hear me?
Can you hear me? Yeah, I just wanna capture what what you've said, uh to provide us uh for for clarification. Basically, uh we have a policy for suclamations, we have a policy.
Okay, good, yeah, yes, I guess.
Having that policy expanded to other things, you want to think about this and pack a bit. You know, where it comes to, usually one example is the the crosswalk, uh public art to include public crosswalks or or functions, so maybe a public art policy on how, I'm not kidding, that we are kind of getting at, so to take a look at that policy.
Okay, why don't we co- so we don't start unpacking it, we'll, let's call it a community uh request policy for now and then we can unpack it?
Well, I'm kind of, there's there's something, there there, I think that it needs. Yeah. Yeah, good, okay, yeah, that's what you're looking for, uh but that that's important to me.
Okay, uh.
Okay, thank you.
Counselor Comes?
Oh, sorry about that, um.
Yeah, no worries.
I guess there's a a few things, um and I if we're gonna go back to cannabis retail, I'd like to sort of unpack a little bit about the how how that all went and going forward, what that might look like for future um considerations. Um the road network, um as Counselor Ferguson um mentioned and then also I think, you know, back with where, I don't know the future of the things that are on the agenda, um I don't know if we're gonna start talking about those things, like our Counselor uh Davis uh mentioned about the the equity framework, um but there's obviously other, there's about five other different things, so um those are my comments for now, um.
So are are you adding something to the list that?
No, I I don't. No, no additions, just.
Okay, okay, great, thanks, uh Counselor Whitmarsh?
Uh yeah, I guess um it sort of does follow up a little bit with um what Counselor Davis uh was talking about, but it it one of the things that was moved forward to, one of the topics that was moved forward to this uh section or to refer to, to have at this session, topic of equity, dignity and inclusion framework. And these kinds of frameworks are being developed across the country by municipalities, I think, uh City of. And these kinds of frameworks are being developed across the country by municipalities. I think, uh, City of Victoria may have done one fairly recently. And, um, and so I do think that in light of of, uh, so many things going on in our world today, when we look at what's happening. Um, across, uh, in issues from Black Lives Matter or reconciliation with First Nations or LGBT community. Um, I think the issues around equity, dignity and inclusion are really critical and important. And, uh, I've advocated for this to have a framework, and I'd like to see council consider this as a priority for discussion. The motion that was, was not to develop, not to necessarily have one, but was to find out what other communities are doing. To see what's going on and to start moving towards it. So I'd like to put on there equity, dignity, inclusion framework.
Great. Thank you very much. Uh, very clear. Uh, Counselor Long?
Yeah, well, just to clarify then, we do have these notes that are attached to the agenda that I've got. And that's one of the items on it. So these are items that we that have been deferred. So there was a a request, for example, for a report on on what Counselor Whitmarsh and Davis have been talking about and coincidentally else, this equity, dignity and inclusion framework. There was a motion made for staff to report on it, you know, what other communities are doing and so forth, and it was deferred or referred to this. So there's this, that item, and there's a couple of other things about, uh, separating the RCMP. Uh, that was Counselor Woodward that wants to do that. And and then there's another one here about some ideas to get Alder Grove rolling from Counselor Arnison. So then what are we doing with those items before I add my two to your list?
Uh, that's very helpful, Counselor Long. I don't have those items, um, um. So, uh, I've added then RCMP separation, Alder Grove. Uh, and if anybody's has a list that can tell me what the other ones, that that would be very helpful.
Maybe while we do, maybe Ms. Bauer can send you the list that we've got, because it's quite, they're quite detailed. Uh, they've got all kinds of warehouses and stuff. And then, okay, so, oh, I've lost the screen now, but. So the, can you just remind me, what are the seven? You keep referring to the seven items, which, what are those? The seven items?
The seven items. Uh, well, the seven items. Yeah, uh, thanks, Counselor Long. Uh, the seven items that came, uh, that we discussed, uh, at the start were ASE, Horn Pit. Decision, uh, sorry, development management process, cannabis, debt management, housing needs and the, uh, Langley, uh, property, uh, inventory. So those were the ones.
We took two out of the, out of the deck. Yeah.
Yeah, so we took, we do those. And now I have, uh, budget, uh, you know, direction, consideration for twenty twenty-one. Uh, Willoughby Road, um, that might have been the road network, I'm not sure. Uh, equity, uh, longer words, um, uh, framework, RCMP separation. And something Alder Grove would be good to have a word attached to that for me anyway. Uh, so anything to add to that list? And I think, um. Go ahead.
Yeah, I do. So, yeah, uh, so just trying to get a handle exactly what we're up to today. My understanding is because budgets are right around the corner, that this is a budget priority session. So we're discussing all kinds of things and that's cool. But for me, in terms of budget, is where are we gonna put our resources and our money in the next year or two? And the two items that I don't know if they're on here or not, I don't see them, is a CPO in, uh, in Carvall area. We know that our policing is is deficient, well, that's, I would say deficient, but it's a public meeting, but we do have some policing issues. With the population growth in the Willoughby area, and we need to address that somehow or other with facilities. And the second has has been talked about a library in Willoughby. Which, from my recollection of discussions, and I I don't think they were in camera anything, but we talked about a library, we talked about partners with the Fraser Valley. Uh, library, uh, system and, uh, community center rolled into one kind of a thing. So I think we need to get those two projects built, CPO and a, when I say built, that doesn't mean I'm saying we're gonna. Take bricks and mortar and build it, whether it's leased or whatever, I don't know. But we need to have, in my opinion, accomplished in this term. Uh, uh, improved, uh, uh, RCMP facilities in Willoughby and a library. Never mind the roads.
Thank you. Thank you. Uh, Counselor Arnison?
Gotta, gotta unmute, thank you. Um, just so council is aware, I had a a list of thirteen thirteen different items and it's difficult to choose one or two. But these are, um, I just want to concur with a couple of the comments so far, so we know potentially where some consensus may be. So, um, I also had on my list that we should, uh, I put completely revamped the budget process for twenty twenty-two. So that would be something that after we finish this would be a priority. And include some of the items that Counselor Richter has mentioned. I also wanted to agree, but use different language with what Counselor Davis was pointing out. I think his was a sort of generalizing around this idea about, uh, community asks for specific. Things to represent their community. Uh, mine was actually more having to do with, um. My current understanding, so that if, I'm I'm just trying to find it, so I read the the exact language that I wanted to put out there. Um. The, the, the. That's what happens when you have a big list. Um. Okay, policy development regarding roundabouts and public art installations to create council oversight on design, costing and maintenance. Because we don't currently have that. So apparently it's something that can happen outside of council's purview, and I think it it's important under criteria of. What the different possibilities are that we should have a policy, uh, so that, I guess, would be one. Can I, can I sneak in another one? Because this one is really kind of novel, having to do with, um. Having to do.
So that's, uh, roundabouts?
Yes, roundabouts.
Round, okay.
On on public roadways, but the degree to which, yeah, there's an application to put something there. Um. The other one, it it does have to do with property, but it's kind of general. So, um, what I had was, um. And I don't know if we've done this before, review of paper road inventory in the township of Langley and undeveloped statutory right-of-ways. That are not considered to be needed in the future with a view to liquidating as an asset. To generate capital to address the property budget deficit and to fund other projects. So those would be my two.
Okay, well, you've come for, uh, two, we'll, uh, we'll do, uh, the reverse flow. So let's put the, um, um, such or right away, maybe we'll put that inside that property one. I think that's, uh, uh, probably a good lead. Um, and, uh, let's see. Um, Counsel, uh, sorry, uh, Mr. Mayor, what have you got? Your things?
Yes, I just muted. So, uh, one thing I know it's it's probably touches on all of these, and I think Counselor Richter touched on a little bit about the budget visiting. It's it's maybe encapsulated by saying COVID recovery plan and getting back to normal, whatever that is. But I think we have to have a lens on that through our budget process on. Knowing what we know with COVID and the challenges that we have and perhaps, you know, unpacking that a bit. Uh, just, we're going this next year, so, you know, we don't know what, nobody really knows what the end of the year will look like, but we make indications. We may expect to see recovery, so maybe just have that lens on, uh, like a COVID recovery plan. I don't know if that's appropriate to put in this, or where it would fit into these, uh, seven, like, uh, certainly, I think it needs a bit of discussion.
Um, can I call that, uh, recovery? Uh, COVID recovery or just give it a a name? Is that, is that, give us a a bit of a handle? Okay, okay, okay.
Better.
Yeah, okay. Um, okay, and, uh, I did indicate, uh, now, we don't have to make up more topics, uh, just for advisement there. Uh, but I did suggest that, uh, people could have two. Uh, so, uh, going backwards, um, Counselor Arnison, you've got two, Counselor Long. Uh, I think you had the CPO and Alder Grove, which were, uh, library, which were there. Anything else to add?
No, I'm good. I added the two, the library and the CPO.
Yeah, yeah, okay, uh, and they were there, so that's good. Uh, Counselor Whitmarsh?
Uh, I think I'm good for now.
Okay, Counselor Coons?
I'm good, thank you.
Counselor Davis?
I feel sorry for Betina. Can I give her one of mine? No, I'm good, I'm good. We've got a lot of really good, uh, material there. Thank you.
Hey, hey, David, you need to get your, uh, your IT guy in there to have, you're blowing the speakers out here. Sorry.
Uh, Counselor Davis, maybe, um, put a cloth, a cloth, a cloth on your microphone or a mic.
First of all, can I, Claire, is it my bad breath or is it just too loud?
It's extremely loud. I can, I can hear the cows in the barn, mooing.
Uh, Counselor Woodward, anything, uh, to add to the list?
Not on, not on you, on your microphone, David.
Just waiting for the conversation to to stop. So, Kate, so I would, um. Yeah, so I I think I said before that I'd like to talk about development process review and cannabis retail. But I won't be adding any items to the list, and, uh, there's a specific reason for that, so I'd like to discuss that.
Okay, thank you. Counselor Ferguson? Anything to add, Counselor Ferguson, to our list? And I'll go to Counselor Richter, anything? You're good, okay? Thank you, Counselor Richter?
Uh, yes, I'd like to add water policy. I do not, I do not agree that we should be in the water treatment business, and I think we need to have a policy discussion around that. Uh, because this upcoming budget includes six million dollars for us to start building new treatment facilities. I think that's a wrong direction for us to be taking this year.
Great, thank you. I added that. Now, uh, what?
Point of order there, point of order, and and don't get upset, Counselor Richter, but we're not, are we having?
Yes, I will, Counselor Long, because every time I open my mouth, you jump in and contradict me. Stop it, you've had your turn.
Counselor Richter, you did ask for point of order, so I do have to allow me to have.
Point of order is that, isn't that already on our council agenda that we're discussing as, so are we going to turn this session? Into into discussing items that are just on our regular agenda? That's my concern.
This is an appropriate place that somebody has, has something to add to discuss the question of what's going to come, so I think.
Thank you, Counselor. Yeah, uh, thanks, Counsel. Uh, back to your worship, thanks, Counselor Richter, uh, you know, that, we did agree, everyone could add two items to the list. Uh, when we unpack them and we decide that it's coming up very quickly, that's fine. So at this point, I'm gonna close that we've got a list of, well, some, my count, almost twenty items. Uh, so can I proceed to the next step? That be okay with everybody?
I can work here with it, I'll say in hand, so.
Okay, um, and just so everybody's aware, apparently they're cutting an oak tree down around here, and that's why I have no Wi-Fi and no, um, no power. And but with everybody's, uh, patience and endurance, um, uh, we'll, uh, continue. Why don't we, um, unpack, uh, a couple of the ones, you know, just check in on the ones that are already in progress? Uh, then we'll take a little stretch and, uh, we'll come back. Um, and and with that, uh, Wendy's taking notes, so I'm gonna start with the, uh, first one. Um, and these were, these are already in progress, and remember, we do not set priorities until, uh, we've, uh, talked, uh, talked about all the topics. So right now, they're just topics, possibilities, uh, that we'll unpack. So on the ASE, uh, if I recall, uh, Counsel, uh, Mr. Winslet, uh, said you are reviewing proposals at this point. Uh, I think most of us recall, um, you know, the earlier discussion of why we're doing this. So where are we on the proposals, Mr. Winslet?
Um. Sorry, Gordon, I'm not sure which part of you want me to update. There have been some discussions with council and special closed, um, because of some of the the land nature, et cetera. But essentially, um, prior to summer, we would likely have some recommendations back for council consideration.
Okay, so there might be a recommendation coming by July, shall I put?
Sure, thank you.
Okay, uh, does that suit everybody? Uh, I re- I appreciate there's been some, uh, in-camera discussions. So is everybody okay that we're expecting that there will be, uh, a recommended next steps for the ASE coming forward in July?
I, am I, can I drop?
Yeah, sure.
Okay. Quickly, this is just a comment. My, oh, my, is that, but my comment is. Yeah, we don't want to have it all come in July. Like it, like as much as, um, make it, it, I know it may be hard. But, you know, I would much rather have something in, uh, March or April and then a little bit in, like, if we, if all of a sudden, we get it all in July, it's a big pill to swallow. And that's just my comment. I might have to swallow that pill, it's fine, but I'm just, I don't mind getting a little more information, a little bit as it comes. The, just a comment. Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, your worship. Esther, that the timing, uh, I just want to emphasize that Mr. Winslet kind of gave that as an outer time limit, uh, you know, no, I I guess, um. Um, perhaps sooner, but not later than. And I emphasize that only because, uh, not of the, uh, the project itself, but the funding. Uh, we're in a bit of a unique situation as to grant funding, so there may be something that drives us to act more quickly for, uh, funding purposes, whether it be. The entire site, a piece of the site, a portion of the site, whatever it may actually be. Uh, it it really depends upon where we see the window of opportunity. So in theory, it could be as soon as next week, and it could be no later than June or July. We have something before council, depending upon, uh, what we think the time limits, uh, and requirements are.
Okay, thank you, sorry.
Uh, how about if we, um, um, you know, as we've done in the past, why don't we do an interim update sort of halfway in between there? And by my math, that would put us about April. Does that suit you, Counselor Davis? We get some kind of at least an update, uh, by April?
No, I I just, I, uh, I understood, yes, that would be, but I understood Mr. Beckham, and I think I understand now. That maybe, uh, what the, I I don't think we need, I don't think they need to put anymore. It was just my comment. And, um, if there, if, I understand now that it, maybe that's the outer time, I'm sure they, they, uh, what, uh, Mr. Winsley keeps it updated. But I just thought, well, I didn't want to just wait for one big whammy, but it's not that case at all. I I misinterpreted, thank you.
No worries. So our first item as what, uh, I term a strategic, uh, possibility is ASE. And this is really for Wendy, because she's, uh, doing a little whiteboard for us. ASE, uh, recommendation, July, that would be our first possibility. I'm now moving to, uh, Horn Pit and, uh, just, uh, what's the, uh, uh, next step? Uh, let's get an update on that, and then we'll see if there's any clarity required.
Thank you, your worship. So the, the next step is going to be some, um, a dialogue with council, um, as to potential options, layouts, if you will. That includes many aspects of what council has, uh, been concerned about, which is some sort of a. I don't want to label it, but some sort of community amenity type housing, some sort of a, some sort of housing component that covers both the public sector. Sorry, covers, um, affordable needs a little bit, but also deals with the the overall consistency with the Brookswood Plan itself. Uh, the timeframe, which is you're gonna focus on, is it can be fairly soon. Uh, it's just a matter of the timing and and the process for council, um. It could be as early as the next meeting. It certainly could be in the month of, uh, of February. Uh, it really depends upon refining a few things and, uh, and I guess the unknown, uh, what is why we can have these discussions. Is gonna be the advancement of the community plan, because staff just don't feel comfortable sending a rezoning application before council prior to those plans, uh, being in place. Uh, although, of course, there is a, some, uh, some financial consequences to us, the sooner we can, uh, deal with it, the better off we're gonna be.
So the Horn Pit Options Report, uh, would come in February. Um, now, you did mention a another plan, uh, Mr. Beckham. Um, come, uh, is, is that, uh, a major item in progress right now?
Um, it is, and Mr. Wouldn, uh, Mr. Sefi can probably give a, just a thirty-second update following my comments. You see, in its simplest terms, and it's and it's oversimplification, uh, the Horn Pit is really a, um, a subdivision, if you will, and it's it's much more than that. If we consider that, that's a rezoning in a subdivision. Uh, the challenge with it is, um, there is a Brookswood Official Community Plan, but there is not a neighborhood plan at this point. The plans were due to be completed by twenty twenty. With COVID, however, public consultation or the the challenges in doing so has made that very complicated. So the application has been, uh, kind of moving along, uh, but has not. So, the application has been uh kind of moving along, uh, but has not yet been brought to fruition, because we need to finish those uh neighborhood plans, and Mr. Seffy, just a thirty second update?
I think you just provided that, nothing to add.
Uh, so, uh, so thanks for that, that, I mean, we've all uh put context around it, so the Brookswood Community Plan, um, is there any kind of target for the next step for that, uh, Mr. Backham?
So maybe there was a confusion there, Mr. Backham used uh, the, the term community plan, it is not a community plan, Mr. Backham, it's a, it's a neighborhood plan. So we're in the process of concluding three neighborhood plans concurrently, as directed by council, and we hope to be able to uh bring forward the prerequisite bylaws, uh, at least for the initial readings, first and second reading before the end of the year.
So, okay, so I'll put uh December for that one? Thank you. Um, the next, uh, and, and, and I think Jack, you'll, uh, sorry.
I had a question.
Yeah, I know, just uh hold on, um.
Yeah, sorry.
Mr. MacIntosh finished, and then I'll go to.
I'll, I'll, I'll always go back to you, so.
Okay, thanks.
Any questions?
All right, uh, Counselor Davis, you had, is that still up from last time?
Sorry, I'm done.
Yeah, no, no problem, just wanted to share, uh, Counsel Whitmarsh?
Uh, thank you, I had a um, uh, um, thoughts around the Horn Pit and some questions, um. And part of the, part of the thinking was, uh, for me as well, I remember, um, maybe it was oh, uh, about a year ago now. And we did talk about the potential opening of Twenty Fourth Avenue, and at this time, at that time, council decided to wait, um, to, uh, for that decision. But I'm wondering if with the Horn Pit report being that Twenty Fourth was right by Horn Pit, um, it would cer- certainly as we start to develop Horn Pit, the road access would be important. And I'm wondering if the count staff is intending to include as part of the Horn Pit discussion, the opening of Twenty Fourth, and what it would take for us to do that, including, I think there was some uh wo- works that had to be done on to meet the road. Um, and so maybe if staff could just uh expand just a little bit about the opening of Twenty Fourth, and how that might tie into the Horn Pit discussion.
Your worship, I'll, I'll start on the Mr. Seffy comment, because uh, as I understand it, for our purposes, we're treating those as being a bit different, and the reason is that um the Horn Pit is a, let's say, the, it's from the twenty-six-hundred block to the twenty-eight-hundred block of Two Hundred Street. And that's an important delineation, because between that and the southern uh properties, there is actually a wetland creek or stream that uh, that bisects it, so it makes it about uh two, two to three blocks away. As I recall, the uh, the Twenty Fourth Avenue issue had some good, robust discussion in it, but it was, however, um, I think delayed until, or was um, was um, uh, the actual opening of it was delayed until we actually did some improvements in the area on Twenty Fourth Avenue, and I think the improvements may be in this year's budget, um, but um, that is running independent of the, the actual Horn Pit itself. Now, Mr. Seffy, can you remind me and update us in terms of the Twenty Fourth Avenue uh situation as to the uh, uh, the status of the roads, repairs necessary, and the, the potential timing, I guess, of its opening?
Yes, thank you, the uh, uh, works that uh Counselor Whitmarsh referenced has been underground, uh, were discussed as part of the uh council deliberations regarding the opening of Twenty Fourth Avenue, and they are in fact part of the uh, the budget for this year. So, uh, subject to the completion of, of those works, underground works and some improvements that were previously referenced, uh, staff would be looking to uh provide council with an update, and I guess information regarding or a, a refresher as to what the previous discussion may have led, led us to. Uh, and then seek further, I guess, uh, uh, consent or otherwise to proceed with next steps. And I guess I should also add that in the meantime, we have received, we have been receiving a number of inquiries from the City of Surrey uh, asking us, because of the pressures that they are, they are facing, as to when we might be able to finish those, those works such that they can actually be open. So, uh, that discussion is un- ongoing as well.
Okay, that, that, that's helpful for me, thank you, I, I guess, I, I understood that um Twenty Fourth, I know it doesn't, uh, it isn't immediately adjacent to uh, to the Horn Pit because of uh Horn Pit going to Twenty Sixth. But I guess I'm thinking that traffic flow, um, opening Twenty Fourth will be really important for traffic flow, as we consider a large development at Horn Pit, so that's why for me, they, they are tied together, even though they're not directly um, uh, beside each other, so anyways, that's good, thank you.
Uh, uh, does that handle uh your question, uh, uh, Counselor Whitmarsh?
Uh, yeah, I'm good, and my comments were made, so I'm good, thanks.
Okay, uh, well, thanks for that, uh, good discussion, um, uh, your worship, shall I move on?
I've got two more speakers' uh questions, uh, Counsel along.
Okay, go ahead.
Counsel along?
Yeah, yeah, so the Twenty Fourth, that's an interesting discussion, because I think the red, the road was recommended to be open, but council made a decision not to open it, because uh, for other reasons, I think, uh, political reasons perhaps. Uh, but my understanding from this discussion, eh, aside from Twenty Fourth, is that we're putting Horn Pit, isn't gonna come eh, eh, forward to, in any respect, until the neighborhood plans are approved, or is that not where we're at? So I'm confused now, yeah, cause I, I know, okay, so Twenty Fourth, we're gonna hear something in the next few weeks, or a couple of months, or whatever, because of some improvements that, that are gonna happen, but um Horn Pit, eh, isn't gonna come forward until the neighborhood plan is in place, or is it?
So, your worship, that's, that's correct, we've unbundled them, uh, so that they can be considered independently. The comments that the impact of Horn Pit may exacerbate the traffic situation and the need to, to deal with the traffic network. Uh, the timing, though, can be different, and it could be the same, I mean, Twenty Fourth could be delayed, uh, its consideration of the, the uh process could be delayed until Horn Pit is completed. Or it can advance independently, as to the Horn Pit, our challenge is, we are really, um, as Mr. Seffy said, pointed out, we do have a Brookswood Official Community Plan, but we don't have a Fernridge Neighborhood Plan, or a Booth Neighborhood Plan, or a Rin Neighborhood Plan. The Glenwood Neighborhood Plan was uh delayed, eh, that's not part of the council direction. We have a development, if you will, a rezoning application and subdivision in Fernridge, uh, that we're calling the Horn Pit. We could advance, advance that prior to the neighborhood plans, but that would be very, I think, challenging for council to uh, deal with the concern that, well, why are we advancing a development, uh, when there is not a neighborhood plan? So our, our current intention is to run them concurrently, and uh, concurrently means, as Mr. Seffy said, hopefully, um, by the fall, uh, we can actually have something there. Uh, that would be our timeline, and we're taking steps to allow the, the uh Horn Pit application to run concurrently, it may be just a little bit behind that, but we wanna advance it as quickly as we can, we've been working on the requirements for that, for that, but we're very sensitive to the uh public perception of running a application outside the neighborhood planning process.
Right, so that, so that's what I understood, so Mr. MacIntosh, that means that the, the Horn Pit needs to be put in the same uh envelope or folder as the NCP, is that not right? And Twenty Fourth is totally separate? Is that, is that where we're at?
Yep. So Twenty Fourth. And so I've got three hit, uh, so I'm gonna put the Horn Pit, uh, I guess what we're saying is, uh, they're parallel, but one, the uh Horn Pit can't get approved. Even though there might be work on it, it can't really advance to an approval state until you have the neighborhood plans, is that, that's my understanding, that's what I'm hearing.
Yeah, and I'm just trying to confirm, yeah, all right.
Yeah, okay. Good. Um, and so if I could go back to Mr. Backham before we go to the next question, uh, do I need to register the Twenty Fourth, uh, road, you know, the Twenty Fourth Road? I'm just wanting to make sure I've got that kind of, is that an operational matter?
It'd be an operational or capital matter, I believe, because it's um, uh, there was a decision made, a timeline, and some improvements, and Mr. Seffy's working on, as he indicated, the the funding, I think, is, is at least in part in this year's twenty-twenty-one capital budget.
Okay, so it's uh Twenty Fourth Road construction, okay, thank you, uh, back to your worship? We're good, uh, Development Management Process, um, there was a uh, a, a report prepared, uh, if I got it right, there were.
Oh, sorry, sorry for interrupting you, uh, Mr. MacIntosh, sorry for interrupting you?
Yep.
I actually had my hand up, I'm not sure if it got lowered or something, but uh, it was up for the uh Horn Pit?
Go ahead.
Okay, so I, uh, you know, it's interesting, there was a comment made, uh, and a comment was made about political reasons. Uh, boy, if I wish I had the time, I would send you a picture. Currently, at Twenty Fourth Avenue and One Ninety-Six, there's some one, two, three, maybe six bullards there with T O L uh names, and do not move forward, that road is blocked off officially, by a motion of council, not a political reason, a motion of council, that road's blocked off.
It's a political, political motion of council.
Don't interrupt, that's it, I'm getting set up and getting interrupted during these meetings, Mr. Mayor.
Well, we're, we're doing Lucy Goose.
I don't know, carry on, Counsel Ferguson.
Are you saying I'm not allowed to speak now?
Counsel Ferguson, please, carry on, Counsel along, uh, Counsel Ferguson has the floor.
Yeah, I just, basically, I, I drive by Horn Pit as much or more than any other member of council, and I've watched it over these years, and uh they had a huge fill project, to which they graded and filled, if you went to Horn Pit today, you would see uh excavation equipment and uh o- other things like that, I believe it's important, I believe it's important for Horn Pit to have the right particular uh housing project, the right particular zoning through there, that's important, it's important that we do it right, uh, it's important it falls in the place with the, the Brookswood Fernridge uh Community Plan and Neighborhood Plan, I agree with all that stuff. But there, for anything else to happen in all those areas, road upgrades have to ca- have to be uh done, especially on One Ninety-Six, which we share I believe we share a road with Surrey, and they're down there all the time working on their uh project, but not working on the road. So uh, you know, there's a lot of improvements would have to happen in, in that part of uh Langley. Now, I never knew that Twenty Fourth Avenue was part of this discussion today, but uh, certainly I'm prepared to provide evidence that it wasn't a political decision, it was it was a decision made by a majority of council to put those bullards up and to not proceed. So, maybe in the future, I'm not saying it's never gonna be open, but uh, maybe in the future, uh, it will open, but I don't think it's a topic for today. But Horn Pit is important, and I think it's important to find out what the housing project is gonna be, and how it complies with the Brookswood Fernridge Neighborhood Plan, thank you.
And I think, um, maybe just to kind of translate this and said, is that Twenty Fourth Avenue is one part of a, a traffic infrastructure network that would obviously be discussed in the future? But we do wanna keep Horn Pit separate, is, you know, what Mr. Backham's saying, so certainly it's there, and it's, it's certainly part of the discussion, but it's not um, part of today's discussion, today we're talking about Horn Pit, but it is part of the whole traffic infrastructure that will have to be decided, uh, in the future.
Yeah, so your worship, yeah, so, you know, I've been picked on a little bit, I guess we're getting a little on edge here, so I would like to request, rather than debate it here, because I, I don't know what a political decision is other than a vote of council. Can staff please redistribute the report and the, and the status of Twenty Fourth as soon as possible, so we all are on the same page? Because I, I, I understood from the report, a different information than I heard Counselor Ferguson repeat, so maybe we've got our wires crossed, but that would be helpful if staff could, could distribute that, would that be all right? I could probably find it in Granicus here, but it'd take me a week, but if that could be, re- redistribute it and how we dealt with it, that'd be great. And, and, and I think it's important for Mr. MacIntosh to understand that the two are not linked, I mean, they're both in the same neighborhood, but they're, the whole
Right.
network is, is all part of the big gig, I'll be quiet, thank you.
Yeah, Mr. Mayor, I'm not, I'm, I'm not providing any different information, I'm providing the facts that are there, and I can show pictures and evidence accordingly.
Yeah, that's fair, but I think it's a good idea to just, you know, refresh all of our, our memories of the report, and I don't mind looking at it again, too, thanks.
So we'll just, uh, we'll add, we'll add that to the follow-up factualists, um, uh, shall we proceed, uh, your worship? Okay, uh, Development Management Process, uh, council has uh received a, a report. Uh, there were comments made back, and I think we'll go back to um, um, where, what's the next step? Would that be, uh, Mr. Seffy?
Mr. Seffy, yes.
Yeah, well, uh, as mentioned earlier at the, uh, the beginning of the, the discussions this morning, staff is working on a report to provide to council in no later than March of this year, that will uh outline implications, which we don't believe to be significant. Uh, they're mostly uh, administrative in nature in terms of procedural uh improvements and things that could be done. Uh, with respect to the recommendations from the committee, uh, the mayor's Standing Committee on Development Application Review Process had some recommendations. So the staff report plans to, aims to provide council with the implications of adopting those recommendations. And it's planned, it's currently targeted to be brought forward no later than March of this year.
Great, thank you, so uh, the item then, uh, for possibility is the Development Management, uh, procedural improvements. Um, and I'll open it up back to your worship, any uh, any questions, comments?
Yeah, thank you very much indeed, I appreciate, I was part of the Development Management Process, and I know that everything takes time to uh get feedback, and if I through the chair, uh, we had that, uh, is there been any feedback from the either development community, or with staff, or anything else as to uh the, the value of that particular uh process we went through, thank you.
Thank you, was there anybody else that wanted to speak to this? Okay, then I think we have, uh.
Thank you, and, uh, move to the next one, uh, and the next one was uh cannabis, uh, which case, if I understand it right, a policy was developed. And now, uh, if I heard it right, we're now considering applications, um, and I think I'll go back to uh, uh, Mr. Seffy again.
Uh, that's correct, your understanding is, is uh correct, there was a policy that was developed based on uh community feedback and input as directed by council, and staff has been processing and bringing forward applications that have been received to council. Uh, Mr. Backham referenced the number of twenty of twenty-one, and council has uh decided on I guess, some that are, be to consider further, to be brought forward, and some that council does not wish to process further and not be brought forward. And I have not done a detailed analysis, but off the top of my head, I think there are maybe five applications that have been endorsed by council to proceed to the next stage, which is consideration of third bidding, and the remainder have been determined to not be uh appropriate to proceed. So that is definitely something.
Then what do you think the next milestone would be, Mr. Seffy?
Uh, I don't think there's anything uh from, from staff, it's just a matter of processing the applications pursuant to our, our past practice and procedures. Uh, and it would be up to council to decide whether they wish to either leave the policy as is, and process the applications in com- in, 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 uh, I guess consistency with the policy, or, or uh, I guess with some variation to the policy. And if they also wish to amend the policy or not, or just process the applications as they are, not bestanding the uh, the, I guess, the uh the, the minor inconsistencies, if there are any with, with the, with the policy, so it's really up to council to decide as to how they wish to proceed.
So would you expect that each application would be coming back to council?
Yes, and they will likely come back to council as a group, uh, because that was the direction that council provided previously.
Okay, so the next step would be unknown, it sounds like, that the cannabis uh application batch would come to council for its um decisions and direction, would that be fair?
That's correct.
And, and at this point, no timing, uh, it would depend on the applicants, or, or is there a sense of timing?
No, I believe the next we got council, uh, I'll have to refresh my memory and have a discussion with the clerk. Uh, and Ms. Bauer might be able to provide a, a reflection for all of us, but I believe, uh, they are on track, so to speak, they're on the, available to just simply be brought forward, there's no action needed from, from anyone, it's just a matter of the, the process taking them, advancing them to, to the council for consideration of next steps.
So, am I hearing a date or not?
As I understand it, we have five applications that will be going forward on January twenty-fifth.
As I understand it, we have five applications that will be going forward on January twenty-fifth for a third reading.
Wonderful. Thank you. That's what we need it. Okay, thank you. And uh, back to your worship, anything on uh, it's specific to cannabis, cannabis, uh, the application, the batch of applications coming forward, which will either move, not move, or require policy amendments, but we don't know until we see them.
Counsel Ferguson, question. So maybe I'll let Counsel Kuntz ask your question and then see where we'll finish. Counsel Kuntz?
Yeah, I, I don't know if this is the appropriate time then to talk about the process and about future um applications, 'cause I don't wanna change anything now, but I think um that probably council would all be in agreement that this has been pretty challenging, not just for the applicants, but for council as well. And that um, you know, once this process has finished and we've kind of determined where these places are gonna be, um, that way maybe we can re, relook at um some of the criteria. Um, one being that, you know, commercial areas are obviously not places where um the public is super comfortable having um cannabis. Um, so anyway, those are just my comments and I don't know when it's appropriate time to sort of bring that up, so I'm just bringing it up now.
Well, how about uh Counsel Kuntz in our um, you know, when we put these things together, we have multiple dates. So why don't we put a debrief, process debrief? You know, so once uh council has determined what it's doing with this application batch, we'll uh, we'll earmark a process debrief. How's that?
Yeah, that sounds good, because I think now, once it's done, that we're gonna have, um, we're gonna have some people complaining about the whole thing, so.
Sure.
Something in place.
Yeah. Okay, thank you. Uh, back to your worship.
Uh, yeah, Counsel Woodward.
Yeah, thanks for that. Um, yeah, I've been kind of patiently waiting. I think I'm gonna register disagreement there, respectfully disagree. I think we should be reviewing and confirming the policy and the process uh prior to approvals of any cannabis applications, not afterwards. I mean, afterwards, they're there permanently. So I would ask that, you know, if we're gonna look at this process, I've been sort of nudging along some uh, some criticisms of that process. I didn't come up with that process, um, but wanna help resolve that to before applications are approved. I'm still not understanding why we're voting ones down in Murrayville, for example, but it, you know, approving them in Aldrich Road. I'm not really sure what the process is that is leading to some of these uh decisions. And I think it'd be appropriate to discuss that. So I'm gonna just sort of put that in there that I think we should be reviewing that prior to. I don't wanna debrief after approval about a broken process. I'd like to resolve the process prior to approvals. So to me, and also I just reiterate again, I'll wait, wait quietly, wait patiently to discuss process in general, that even if we have these items on a piece of paper, um, I'd like to know what process we're intending to pursue them with, because I've objected to some of the processes that have been embarked upon on some of these items, which I feel have uh essentially prevented them from achieving anything. Thank you.
Thanks. So if I've got it right, uh, when this report comes um, uh, in January, that should be a prompt to look at the process and policy first, if I've got that right. And then consider the disposition of the application batch. And then there might be, you know, later a debrief. So I've got a three-part action plan for this. One, that the batch coming in should prompt us to uh be certain about our process and policy. I'm using those terms hopefully correctly. Then, once we've done that, we would look at the application batch, um, so uh we're clear. Uh, you know, the actual approval or non-approval or changes. And then later we would um perhaps have a need for a debrief to, so let's have some discussion. That, that sounds like a three-step process um discussion.
We all understand. I think um, Counsel Woodward has some good points around the fact that the process is difficult, but views are broken, but it is a process, but it, it's been a challenge, because these are the first um, uh, these ones of this nature that councils have to decide. So twenty applications came forward, we were tempted to go through various ways to some sort of agreement, and I think we're left with what's legislated. And that was first and second reading, public input, and then third reading in council. And we decided to put all the third readings together rather than do one ahead of the rest and try and try to gather. It is a difficult process. And at the end of the day, we're left with what's legislated and that's where we find ourselves today. I think moving forward, um, again, there will be other applications, um, perhaps in the future that will want to come for a certain reason to establish the cannabis retail. And I think that's, that's certainly worth a discussion. And if these applications will come to council or is there a reading, council can do anything along with it. If council decides to defer for further uh review of the process, then that's council's purview. But we, we, we start with legislative requirements of moving these bylaws through, but council anytime you decide what you wanna do. So we're, you know, it, it's, it's in progress, but uh.
Okay. So, so it sounds, so it sounds like January will be a prompt for going back to the process or policy or moving forward with the application. So it sounds, uh, once we have those in front of us, that would be the prompt for council to decide which direction it wants to take. Okay.
Counsel Ferguson?
Have you got more?
I've got three more, yeah. Counsel Ferguson?
You bet. Go, go ahead.
Before I ask my question, a quick clarification to staff. Where are we at with the next pa, uh, next uh round of uh applications? And where are we at with uh, uh, items going on agenda for third reading regarding uh the uh particular applications? That's my question.
So your worship, as Ms. Bauer uh confirmed earlier, the, the five applications that have been endorsed by council to proceed will be on the twenty-fifth of January agenda for council's consideration of third reading. That's the status.
Okay, so I just wanted to double check with that. And also, I, what my question, I guess, is, or my comments are, is, you know, the three points you said about the batch, applications and debrief. Uh, what happened and there's been a lot of discussion, I guess, obviously, there, there was probably a lot of questions the very day that the federal government made cannabis legal. So uh, we have to kind of, you know, we're always asking what other communities are doing. Of course Vancouver had an awful lot over the years and you've seen that the turmoil that that caused, uh, where they had, I guess, illegal uses being consistently run. So I guess we have to decide as a council, what, where, how do we get to best practices? What's, how do we get using information from either uh, either other uh communities when they're in the region or other provinces? We need to get it right so that uh our policy makes sense. And during this discussion, there has been an awful lot of discussion back and forth with council and staff about how to proceed. And I think that um, if you phoned up senior staff and asked them, by the way, what is the number one uh issue that's come up uh on questions from council, this would be one of them. And I think uh other council members have mentioned it a well. This is a concern to all of us. Thank you.
Yeah, this is uh no doubt. Um, I think the process was uh very challenging process at times, maybe a bit awkward. But I, I'm not sure that it would have been, uh, we could have expected a whole lot different for something that is very new to all of us. We didn't know um how these regulations would come down. We didn't know how that would be. We, we received input from the public and, you know, they had, they had a, they strongly came back and suggested one in every, in every region of our community, and yet we haven't even moved forward with that. So it has been an awkward and challenging process, uh, certainly for council, but also for those who've applied. But I do, but that doesn't mean that uh at the end, now that we have five here, it doesn't mean that in the end that good decisions still aren't being made just because something is awkward or challenging. And, and I, you know, I feel like we've, we've worked hard to get to the five that we're at and maybe there's another one make six, I'm not sure. But um, you know, we'll make decisions on those. I think for me, what's most important now is where we move from here. And um, what, what we do in terms of future um applications and others that are interested in moving in this direction. And some of these businesses that are applying right now, we don't know, but in five years, some of them might not be here, or they might request to move to a new location. We, there could be all sorts of things that come up in this cannabis retail that we're just all very new at. So I think um for me, a, a good debrief time, um establishing new policies as to how we go forward, how we establish um criteria for what uh additional applications, uh, what if our current app, one of our current applications would like to change their location? All of these things, I think, need to be considered. I don't think we've made necessarily bad decisions here. Um, the process has been awkward and challenging, no doubt, but I'm not, I'm not convinced uh that we've made a bad decision. And, but I do think we need to move forward and come up with what's a better way to streamline it and do it better, and what have we learned from our own process? Um, when we talk about best practices, uh, there's not very many communities that are doing it, so there's not a lot to compare with. Um, but certainly we can learn from those that have and we can certainly learn from ourselves as we debrief. So I, I'm all for a debrief and thinking forward, but I don't think the decision we made at this point is bad.
Okay. Your worship, anybody else?
One more. Counsel Arson.
Uh, yes, thank you, uh, your worship and through you, I guess, just to council and staff. Um, my thoughts about this process is it has been quite a challenge, but I, I agree with Counselor Whit, uh, Whitmarsh in the sense that being a, a novel thing that we don't have a lot of other references to because of the legalization and the short timeframe in which we'd had to develop these strategies. So um, my opinion currently is that more than anything, uh, because of the protracted nature and the challenging nature of what we've done so far, I wouldn't like to impose any now further barriers or changes to our methodology and our policy that would negatively impact those who are already in our process. So I would just go back to administrative fairness and the degree to which we set a policy. And the policy, as far as I recall, didn't have provisos except to say, you know, that it was subject to council's will, which is all of our policies are. So it essentially comes down to our vote to yes or no. But I don't feel that it would be fair, just carte blanche, to now look at, okay, here's the feedback we got so far and we're not liking it very much or it's problematic, so let's just uh rejig what we're doing and impose it on those who've already gone through our process. So uh, out of fairness, for me, what would make more sense and to potentially achieve the same result is to add, when we are agreeing, if we are putting something forward and we're going to approve it, to create further conditions around the licensing of that in order to get more or less what we want from uh, from that application. 'Cause I think that that's a, a fair way to proceed. So the subjectivity, I think, and none of our policies are perfect. I think if we, you know, try and uh get to the hundred percent degree, there'd be a lot, frankly, of other policies that, that we regularly administer and apply that also wouldn't meet that criteria. We're just looking at this one now because it's new. However, I, I think that we need to be cautious about the, the degree to which we then go back once again to look at something in the rearview mirror and decide to alter it. So those are my thoughts. Thank you.
One more question. Counseler Wong.
Yeah, thanks, your worship. Uh, so this is, this is a critical decision we're at now, because I, I agree with, with Counsel Woodward. If we're going to start unpacking the process, and let's not call it a process, let's call it guidelines, because we haven't, you know, there, there were guidelines set up and we, we chose to follow some and not others or whatever. Um, that has to be done before we even consider doing third reading. So we already heard Ms. Bauer say that, that they're scheduled to come back next week. Now, if we're not going to pass those or do or deal with those based upon the guidelines that we've already established and all the efforts that we've got to get to this point, then we're in real trouble, I think, because you, I don't think you can deal with those and then decide afterwards to have a session about how we could do it differently. It's, that's just gonna affect, you know, don't forget for the five that are so far on the front line and one more potentially, there's what, a dozen or so that didn't, didn't make it. So we're going to open up an area. If, if Counsel Kuntz wants to discuss how it all went, that may open up uh possibilities that they may come back and say, okay, if you're considering changing your uh, your, your guidelines, then we want back. And this, it'll just keep going and going and going. The mayor said it the best, uh, it's been a very difficult process, uh, and, and others have said, here we are at a point now where we're almost done with it. It, it is a zoning, so it's not so much the licensing that we're dealing with, if I'm correct, it's the zoning, that, that, in other words, the location where these, the uh dispensaries can be done. And, and I think we need to, probably the best thing to do is to complete the process or hold it all off and, and reboot the whole thing, which is, we've already done that quite a bit over the last year and a bit. So I really don't know, Mr. McIntosh, if you can put on here, you know, debriefing in my mind, because the debriefing is going to open up the whole thing again. Um, you know, we, we've all got our opinions perhaps, we've all, we've got the experience that we've been through, that's been stated. We've got other communities' lessons. Maybe we're probably the biggest lesson to other communities rather than looking to them for best practices. We might be the, the not best practices example for, for many communities to follow. But so that, so it's a, we're in a tough spot here, Mr. McIntosh. I don't think you can put on there that we're gonna revamp the thing. It, either we're gonna go through with it on the twenty-fifth and finish it, or we need to reboot it lickety-split.
Uh-huh.
Does that make sense?
Uh, it does. Uh, so if I've got it right, uh, is there anybody else, uh, your worship?
Yeah, Counsel Kuntz.
Yeah, I just, I just definitely think we need to have another look at how the process went, seeing as it's, it's very new. And um, if we can do better for people or businesses in our community, I think we owe that to them. That's not saying that, that we have to change the whole thing. But I think if, if um, you know, uh, business people wanna come into our community, hopefully they have some confidence that, you know, that we've, we've looked at the, you know, at what we're doing and, and that they can have some confidence in the process. So um, how we do that, you know, would be up for discussion and, and you know, what it is that we would fine tune. But um, I think that, that we do owe it to um future, um, you know, uh, businesses that, you know, they have confidence in our process.
Um, if I can, uh, your worship, uh, you know, we're using a variety of terms that can cause a bit of confusion. So if I've got it right, we have some guidelines. And on January twenty-fifth, council will either say, uh, we proceed with these, uh, whatever number of the batch or not. So we either proceed based on the guidelines or that will be a prompt that we need to go back and look at the guidelines. Is that fair? 'Cause, you know, today we can't decide what we're gonna do. But on January twenty-fifth, council will have a decision whether it needs to go back and look at the guidelines or proceed uh with a majority vote on the batch. Which is totally different than saying we ought to later, like any, you know, government, go back and review the process. So the process is different than the guidelines. It's the steps that people had to go through, if I've got it right. So a debrief on the process doesn't necessarily mean uh that you're gonna change all the rules, I guess. Uh, would that kind of resonate with everybody, that January twenty-fifth, we're either going to do something with this batch or it's gonna cause us to say, hmm, we need to go back and take a look at the guidelines?
Well, yeah, I think as a process, council is, it's a third reading, council has the options to do whatever they want.
Okay. Well, you know, uh, as you may recall, one of my favorite quotes is never make a decision you don't have to make. So until we see this, we don't know, right? But that doesn't preclude that later, like in anything, uh, that we can't uh go back and take a look at the uh process. If that's okay, um, now I'm just looking at uh. Yeah, go ahead.
Has his hand up, so Counsel Woodward?
Yeah, you bet.
Just wanna add for maybe just, just, just break a little bit, 'cause this is an important issue and for court's benefit, I would characterize it that on the twenty-fifth, uh, you know, we haven't been following the policy already. We've been, you know, we voted down, as I understand it, Brookswood and Murrayville based upon criteria that aren't even in the policy. So this idea that somehow we're gonna follow the policy on twenty-fifth or revamp it, uh, we're already not following it. So I just wanted to make that clear for court's benefit. Thanks.
Okay, great. Yeah. Thank you. That, that will certainly uh be a prompt. Okay. Um, so again, you know, today we don't decide, uh, but we know what the next steps are. Um, now is everybody uh, uh, okay to go till um twelve or do you need a five-minute stretch? 'Cause we're gonna stop at twelve. Uh, how's everybody feeling to continue?
Okay, as I've said, uh, we can go to twelve.
Okay, well, why don't, if, if I heard you right, I think, uh, let's, let's get these ones that were in progress out of the way. And that'll, uh, after lunch will give us the new topics. Uh, debt management, if I heard, uh, Mr. Backen correctly, uh, uh, you know, basically we haven't made, uh, any, um. Progress on that, you know, we haven't, uh, given attention to it. So if I've got that right, uh, that would mean it's, uh, it's there for all the reasons, it's always been there. And we'd look for perhaps a refreshed, uh, milestone, uh, Mr. Backen. Or just keep it as a next item.
Excuse me, Mark. You're muted.
There we go. There we go. Thank you, Wendy. Uh, thank you, Gordy. The topic, I think you've described it well, is it's, it's, um, likely sometime away, perhaps before the next budget cycle, if it still remains as a priority. So placing it as a next item is, uh, is probably, uh, a good idea.
Okay. Uh, and with the concurrence of council, then we would just leave it there. Uh, because we are going to see a topic called probably twenty twenty two budget, uh, uh, et cetera, if that's acceptable. Next one is, uh, okay, so it's just hovering there with no date, um, housing needs. Uh, there was a, uh, as per legislation, a requirement to do inclusionary housing, a report was done. Uh, other than that, there was, uh, some, uh, options. And if I understand it right, uh, Mrs. Sepe, uh, the next step is to develop an action plan.
That's correct.
And target date.
Target date, I had mentioned previously, Mr. McIntosh, uh, Q three and Q four. If you wanted me to, to land on an actual month, I would say, well, let's say December, no later than December of this year. Uh, and the action plan is not, I guess, uh. Well, let me rephrase that. It is to replace an existing one. So it's not that we don't have an action plan. But it's an old one, so it's about ten or twelve years old. So what we hope to do with the information that we have gained. Or collected through the needs assessment process is to update that old action plan and present council with a new one. For the next ten years ideally to be endorsed by council before the end of this year.
Great. That's, uh, really clear language. Uh, thank you. So that would be a housing plan update by, uh, December. Uh, back to your worship, any comments, questions?
Uh, no, I don't see any answers. That's very clear. Thank you.
Okay. Uh, and the next one was, um. Uh, the property, uh, doing a property inventory, uh, regarding, uh, you know, current uses, best uses, disposition. And I've, uh, noted that we would add councillor Kunst, uh, a comment on, uh, rights of way. Uh, over to Mark. Uh, Mr. Backen, sorry.
I, I think the comments for the rights of way may actually come from councillor Artison. Uh, they may be combined, of course, but there's, uh. Some issues about closing the, the rightsway and the, the property report, um, with some background work has been done. No analysis has been done, so I would put it in the category of the debt management strategy. I probably wouldn't put a defined date on it yet, cause it's also in the next category. Uh, so it's, uh, it's probably again a target date as prior to the next budget cycle.
And would it be, uh, property assessment, property strategy? Wha- what would be a report?
I think it's a discussion on a property strategy, uh, trying to determine the circumstances, I guess, primarily for property disposition. Um, and as well, that will then flow into property acquisitions.
Okay, good. So, uh, um, Langley property strategy would stay on the next list at this point, uh, with no date. Uh, back to your worship.
Yeah, thank you. This, uh, no, no hands up.
Okay, so let's do, uh, let's just do the advocacy items as a group, um. Cause I, I don't have it in, uh, all of them in front of me, but is there any thing on the advocacy, uh, items? Uh, that's before you that we need to discuss any of them? Uh, maybe I'll go to Mr. Backen first, just to see, is there anything that we're? They sounded like they were all in progress, uh, that they all stay, um, uh, any discussion required on any of the advocacy items?
Uh, from our perspective, Gord, I think they continue as advocacy items, so I think they, uh, they've been, um, um, reviewed somewhat. I was going to point out though, under the next list, and you may have done this intentionally, but there was the future of farming and community polarization discussion items, so. You may wanna just touch on those before we conclude the, our session.
Good one. Uh, so I'll stick with advocacy and come back to those two. Thanks, Mr. Backen. Uh, on advocacy for any councillor, um, uh, over to, uh, your worship? Any comments, questions?
Sorry, my comments are related to the next issue, so I'll wait.
Uh, yes, thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'm wondering, um, the super housing facility assessment, do we need to bring that up higher on the list?
As in, uh, a sooner, um, a date sooner? Oh, oh, well, we'll decide where it goes on the list when we've done them all, but are you thinking? Uh, sooner, uh, for the update than later? Is that what you're thinking, councillor Richter?
Oh, well, I just think we need to, um, keep a bit more pressure on them to produce what it was they said they were gonna produce in our community. And so far have not adequately delivered yet.
Okay, so, uh, make a note and then we can see, um, how it's, you know, um, we will advocate for its placement, uh, in a bit. That's great.
Yeah, and, uh, hand in hand with that, the widening of, uh, highway one, I, isn't that underway? Like, isn't that a done deal now? Why do we need to keep advocating for it?
Well, it's, uh.
A good point. If, okay, well, let's take that. Let's take that one off then, if it's, uh.
No, Mr. Uh, Mr. Backen shaking his head. There, there is a reason to keep it there. Uh, I'll let Mr. Backen explain.
Yep.
Yeah, thank you, your worship. The, the, the reason I think is the funding, um, is to a certain level. And, um, it, it, uh, it may not be sufficient to complete the entire project. When the province sees some of those things, one or two things happen. They can reduce the scale or they can reprioritize the project and it can be lost. Uh, so until, uh, there's the award or tendering of any contract for whatever the project may ultimately end up to be. I think it's wise to keep it on our list, because I think it may be our, our number one point of contact with the province to get updates and some assurance that things are progressing. Uh, otherwise, um, it, uh, it could be more of a challenge for us later.
Okay, thank you.
So keep it, yeah, keep it on, uh, relative to funding. Thank you. Anything else on advocacy before we move to the other two next items? Okay, uh, future farming. Uh, future farming was a topic, uh, that we had not discussed at the last session. Um, and the question is. Uh, well, somebody will recall bringing it up and the question then would be, uh, do we keep it on the, the list? Um, and, uh, where we go with it. So future farming comments.
Councillor Whitmore.
Yeah, um, yeah, this is one that for me, I think we, we should keep on the list, uh. You know, I think there's been, um, a number of discussions around, uh, farming, particularly in our ALR lands. And, uh, you know, we, we have a fairly small, um. Use of our ALR lands for the growing of, of food particularly. Uh, the, the utilization of the ALR for that purpose is not, uh, nearly as high. And so I think there was discussions around how do we? How do we move that forward? Uh, how do we help as a, as a council? Is there ways that we can help to advocate and encourage people to use their, uh, ALR land? For, for that purpose, for agriculture? And, um, there was conversations around that for helping young, young farmers to try and get the ability to farm. And so I think this is an important topic and, uh, it's one that, um, maybe we, we need some help from staff. I know there are some other societies and community groups that are. Trying to work on this and we've done some work, uh, through our, uh, agricultural and economic advisory committee to establish a task force to help with this. But I don't think this is something we should let die. I think it is something that we should continue to talk about and start working on strategy for that. I don't have a real timeline for it, but I wouldn't wanna see it dropped off the list.
Okay. Um, so, uh, it's around food production, uh, entre- you know, young farmers, farm succession. Maximizing, uh, productivity on ALR land, food security. Is that kind of getting close to what you're thinking about, councillor?
I think most of that is for me, so that, that's good. Thanks.
Great, thank you. Uh, so we would keep, um, not here, if I, uh, anything, uh, else, your worship? And with those comments, we'd keep that on the list for, uh, discussion.
War. Maybe we'll go to the war and then, and give comments.
Yeah.
For seconds.
Your worship, may I just, may I just provide a quick comment just to put councillor Whitmarsh and, and the rest of council a bit more at ease? Uh, this future farming is something that the agricultural advisory, economic enhancement and agricultural advisory of council. Uh, is looking at as a, a task for one of the task forces. They have a task force to actually look at this. So this is not something that is going to be concluded anytime soon. It will be a matter of ongoing discussion. Uh, with council through the committee, uh, for the next year or two at least.
And do you see, uh, uh, um, um, Mr. Sepe, do you see some kind of? Status report coming to council or, uh, any kind of, eh, anything happening with council in twenty twenty one? Uh, whether, you know, not, maybe not.
Yeah, it depends on what the committee wishes to do with, with the findings of the task force. This is a task force of the committee of council. So the, the process is the task force will complete their technical analysis, they'll provide a recommendation to the committee. The committee will then analyze it and provide a recommendation to council. So at some point, there will be something brought forward for council to consider.
Thank you. Uh, that really helps, uh, so we'll label it as future farming, semicolon, task force analysis, right? And that's what we would expect to, uh, to, to get a, you know, uh, a date at some point. Is that fair?
Uh, yeah, it sounds fair. I'd go for the speaker's list if you have comments, questions. Councillor Artson.
Uh, yes, thank you, your worship and through you, um, I guess to staff and thank you, Mr. Sepe, for, uh, reminding us about that process that's ongoing with the advisory committee. Uh, my thought for some time has been that since approximately seventy-five percent of our land base is in the ALR. And that there, uh, although there are, um, limited opportunities to advance certain kinds of development. I think we're getting a more sophisticated knowledge base about what some of those could look like. So with an evolving landscape. I think that we need to look at, for example, from a council point of view, economic enhancement. How can we provide opportunities? I know that agriculture provides actually a fairly good, um, cash flow to the township of Langley. Just by the things that are produced there, but I think that we need to increasingly look at, um, how we can enhance that opportunity as well as. Uh, food scarcity. More and more, I think people are becoming concerned in that if there is a regional slash local approach, we should be, uh, adopting that. So just wanna be more collaborative in that whole discussion area. Thank you.
Thank you.
Councillor Ferguson. Oh, Mr. Dr. Mac, uh, yeah. Councillor Ferguson.
Oh, yeah, am I on? Okay, can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay, uh, yeah, no, I think that, uh, farming, it's like the emperor's new clothes and people forget that Langley is still a farming community with, um. Millions of dollars of farm gate sales, but we wanna protect and promote farming and we also want to also save our land, um. In our ALR, uh, for actually farming uses and there are a lot of illegal uses that we have to work with both our bylaws and, and the ALR. So that we can keep the pressure on people that are doing things, uh, on agricultural land other than farming. We can also educate people that they, they aren't gonna use the land themselves, that they got large parcels, that they can. Uh, hire it out or lease it out or, uh, uh, loan it to others that wish to farm it. So farming is an important thing. It's been mentioned about, uh, the, you know, the hundred, uh, kilometer diet or whatever they want, a twenty kilometer diet or whatever it is. Is that we have to work with, uh, eh, within our capacity in a community to promote farming. Uh, also the la- the, um, removal of the regulated community and perhaps with our new, uh, MLAs. Uh, we might be able to do that as well. I understand if I wanna ask a quick question to, through the chair of staff. Usually task forces have a beginning and end. Uh, Mr. Sepe, when is the end of this current task force expected?
Uh, your worship, councillor Ferguson is of course correct, uh, usually they do. Uh, but sometimes in this case they have a, a task to perform. So, uh, it is really a, uh. A matter of the, the task force being able to complete the, the scope of their work. And I, as far as I know, I can report back to council after the break, uh, I'll check with staff. But, uh, I am not aware of a deadline that the task force may have been provided with. So I'll, I'll check that and provide council with more, more information after the lunch break.
Okay, thank you very much. Be looking forward to that. Thank you.
Councillor Wong.
Yeah, and I think this is a great discussion. I don't wanna un- unpack it completely here, but I'm encouraged to hear that the A E C E E, whatever the committee is, is, is got a task force underway. But I wonder if we could highlight the importance of this, if the rest of council agree, how important this issue is. The township of Langley always has had exceptional challenges when it comes to the agricultural, uh, land commission and how our communities laid out the past work, quilt, et cetera. Uh, we have tremendous output from our productive farmers, but we also have a lot of fallow land. And it's, uh, they're getting, you know, people are not paying the proper, well, appropriate taxes, let's say. So there was a movement on that front. It's, it's a multifaceted, um, concern that council should have and. And I, I'm, and we're gonna hear more after the break from Mr. Sepe on what the committee's up to, but I really think we need, need to highlight and put asterisks all over this one, because. You know, if they're not gonna, if we're not gonna farm the land, then we need to farm people on it. And of course, we can't do either. You've got land, for example, in Aldego, which is a huge concern. Uh, for, uh, you know, making the town viable, we need people. We need to grow, grow people and we've got huge amounts of land sitting there doing nothing. So it's an important one. So I'd like to see a star put there or, or something. Uh, but we can ta- I guess we'll hear from Mr. Sepe afterwards, but the committee should be informed that this came up in our priority session and the importance of it. If we need to put some more resources there and move it along a bit more, uh, I would be in favor of that, because I think we need to keep going, uh, and, and make our case stronger. Uh, and maybe the reps from the Metro Vancouver can fill us in, cause there was a movement from Metro Vancouver. To, uh, to adj- uh, 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 maybe Mr. Sepe can report on this, to adjust the tax, uh, li- limit. In other words, instead of five hundred dollars worth of hay. On your property, you had to produce a bit more substantial amount of food or, or resources, uh, for us. Before you get that massive tax exemption on your twenty acres with a big house on it.
Oh, that is, that's been done on it. Uh, where it sits right now, I'm not too sure.
Yeah, cause there was a movement there and it seems, seems to have disappeared.
Anybody else, anybody else on the list, your worship? Uh, cause I think, uh, we're starting to. I think the point is that the future farming topic is very important and, uh, probably at this point, not too much need to get into. Subdetail other than perhaps the task force analysis report, uh, may be a very important priority to council.
Yes, and then so, councillor Davis, uh, the only, the only councillor that's, uh, wants to speak. Go ahead, councillor Davis. I mean.
You know what? Don't take it off the list. Um, well, you don't have to look back very far. We've got lots of farmland. We've got lots of issues. There's tat, like councillor Wong said tats. Councillor Richter, I think, brought this, what farming will look like in the future. And, uh, her, and that turned into a task force. So you just leave it on the list. I, I, um, it's, uh. You don't always, um, hear it, uh, but it's, it should be on the list. Let's leave it on the list. Thank you.
Thank you.
Yeah, that is off the list.
Uh, count, yeah, it's still on the list, hasn't come up. So, uh, count, um, Mr. Backen, uh, I've lost the last item on the bottom of the next list. Can you tell me, remind me what it is? Or anybody?
Oops. Yeah, oh, here we go. Um, it's community polarization. This is a special item, community polarization.
Yeah. Yeah, community polarization. Okay, and a very, uh. Very broad topic, so, um, let's open it up, uh, before lunch, see, uh, this is, uh. So, um, let's open it up, uh, before lunch, see if this is, uh, a topic still of interest. Um, open it up.
I don't see any questions, but maybe just like to, uh, dig a little deeper into this. And I'm sure every committee has, has, uh, it will be called polarization, but different points of view, which is part of our democratic system. Um, and how other communities are dealing with that. I, I think we, you know, we're stuck on legislative requirement of, of the Council. How we get things done, but, um, and certainly, and part of our job is to instantly, you know, listen to people. But at the end of the day, it's, Council makes, makes decisions. So polarization, uh, maybe Mr. McIntosh, where are you seeing, what are you seeing in other communities around this topic? And whether it's called polarization or differing views, because I think it's in every, every committee, maybe you can add something, something like that, light on that.
Yeah, well, there's so, it's so many, uh, broad, uh, you know, terminologies. Is it, uh, neighborhoods, for example, um, have, you know, being amalgamated, um, and having different viewpoints? Is it rural versus, uh, urban perspectives, which, uh, of course, now we're seeing across the country, more and more, um, urban people are moving to rural areas, which of course will, uh, definitely create some, you know, different perceptions, but definitely we're seeing, uh, an excess. Is it different cultures, uh, within the community, uh, whether that's, uh, you know, um, p, p, uh, diversity, et cetera? Uh, what are people doing? Uh, well, it's a, it's, it's not like building a road or building a building or, um, you know, it's, it's much, uh, more nebulous, if you will, but nevertheless, uh, uh, important. So many are, uh, just trying to simply go through, uh, processes of discussing what does the future of, uh, the township look like? You would call that, uh, maybe, uh, the O C P or a sustainability plan. So what, uh, so that's one. Uh, but it depends whether, you know, we're talking about neighborhoods or rural, urban or development, environmental, et cetera, or if we're talking about different cultures. If we're talking about different cultures, that might lead us to more towards, uh, Counselor Davis and, um, others, uh, bringing up the equity inclusionary framework. So there's two different angles on that. If it's values around how we see the future of Langley, that would be more, um, you know, uh, uh, a future of Langley kind of process. But if it's more around people, um, being nice to each other, getting together, civility and respecting different cultures, that might be more towards, um, um, the equity framework. The equity framework had a bigger name attached to it, so I'm shortening it. So that's kind of, uh, what's happening across the country, and it is happening across the country, by the way. This is, uh, a major concern for, um, councils across the country.
Uh, your worship, just to provide a comment before the two parties raise their hands and perhaps others. Uh, for staff, um, it kind of results in something that we think is kind of a, a tacit or, or quiet priority. And we call that inquiry response processing. Uh, we use that generically, but quite often, um, we're seeing that there's two sides or maybe more than two sides to an issue. And, uh, we're spending a probably by time, more time on responding to people who are raising issues either about the issue or the process or, or just the, the topic itself than we've ever done so before. And a, a good example might just be because this current is cannabis. Uh, we went through a process. There was a, um, a public response that led to a, a target or a number. Uh, but as we then began to go into them specifically, other folks came forth, and that's quite natural that they come forth and say, hey, whether we agree with the, with the concept or not, that's one topic, we've got very concerns about the location. And, and our sensitivity to the number of those folks coming out, which is certainly very wise and prudent, is meaning that we have to respond. So there I've tried to outline an issue, but it would be fine if it was merely one issue. But as we've seen with such things as, uh, development applications, overpasses, revitalization, roads. Um, I would say in terms of all the priorities we have here, Counselor should be aware where most of our staff's time spent, and particularly senior staff, is in inquiry, response, uh, processing. Uh, someone writes into Council, writes into staff, response is needed. It can be fairly lengthy. It can be very comprehensive. It can be very technical. Uh, but I think the, the staff are spending a lot more time on that than was first, um, I think predicted. Um, and then when we overlay COVID and the other issues, it is affecting, uh, achieving some of Council's priorities. But I'm, I wanted to draw that link before we hear from the, uh, the speakers.
Um, you, uh, your worship, maybe just before we do that, uh, just so we're focused, I'm hearing three different aspects of polarization. One is differing opinions on any particular matter, project application, differences in values. And that was the origin of this comment was, uh, primarily rural, urban. And then the other would be, um, polarization around respect, i.e. different cultures, um, um, et cetera, uh, diversity. So those are three different aspects, which wa, which is why it makes this, uh, a big, a topic and would be helpful to kind of zero in. If we said that, uh, polarization around cultures, diversity, we would deal with, uh, I mean, equity framework. That would, um, enable us to, um, get us out of that discussion and leave it to the equity framework. If it is around diver, di, um, uh, diversity of opinions around any particular matter, if you recall, one of the items was how do we deal with inquiries and, um, uh, frequent flyers and responses? And so that might be a matter that would derail us as Mr. Becken has indicated from our priorities. That's a volume question. That would lead us to then this item, which is actually around, uh, values, different values. So just try to guide us because otherwise we can, we have three different conversations on this. So I'll go back to if it's around, uh, development, non-development, environmental, economic, uh, rural, urban values. And maybe we could just have that kind of discussion and leave the other two to, uh, a different place.
Okay, I'll look through the list. Uh, Counselor Richter first.
Yes, thank you very much, Dr. McIntosh. I think you've kind of hit part of it on the head. From my perspective, I'm seeing the polarization mainly coming out of the growth. And, uh, we have, for example, um, more people moving into the rural areas of Langley, um, right now that, um, perhaps have come from a city environment and they think it's okay to let fireworks off, which then scare the horses and the livestock of the people who live next door to them. So there's, there's that aspect of it. I think there's also the aspect of it that Langley was at one point, not that long ago, because it's like within my frame of reference anyway, a much smaller community. And the communities were pretty much of equal size. Now we've got two very, very large communities, and we're soon to have a third large community, which is going to outweigh the other communities that have traditionally had a strong voice in local politics, local matters and so on. And again, I think that's going to come back to the rural versus urban, uh, divide. So I think from my perspective, it's more around rural, urban, but it's also around, um, community building, like neighborhood building, because in our larger communities, which are, of course, our Walnut Grove and Willoughby right now, uh, and soon will be Brookswood once it opens up. There's, there needs to be created that sense of community, and I'm not sure that that's being created. And at the same time as this is going on, Council has made some policy decisions around funding, uh, improvements in a smaller community, Aldergrove, uh, taking development monies out of the larger community, Willoughby, in order to fund those developments. So it gets into a whole equity issue around funding. I'm not sure it's around culture yet, uh, but I do think that that is coming. Uh, but right now, that's the way I would categorize it. Like, I can see why staff are running into issues right now because there, there has been a significant change in Langley.
Um, uh, your worship, before we go further, maybe, uh, just a suggestion, we change the, uh, the title to be a positive. Um, and Counselor Richter introduced a nice term, uh, community building, uh, as opposed to community polarization, which is a negative term. So as stewards of the community, maybe our focus can be on how we can promote community building. So just offer that as a suggestion.
Come on.
Yeah, I guess I'm more confused as ever. I, 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 what is the genesis of this? And I appreciate the comments, Counselor Richter, appreciate your comments and, and yours, Dr. Uh, uh, McIntosh. But I'm, I'm confused as to where this came from. Is it an urban rural thing? Uh, is it a cultural thing? Is it the different values? What else do you write down here? Or, and opinions? I mean, what Mr. Becken explained is just the way the world is. Uh, people get behind their keyboards and send stuff all over the place. I don't know if we should have a policy where you have to, well, whatever the case is, there's a lot of communication going on now that didn't used to happen. You used to have to actually write a letter, put a stamp on it, mail it, or show up at a council meeting. Now we just get an email, you know, uh, just lickety-split. So, uh, uh, you know, I guess changing the name is a good one. Uh, I, I still think we need to define this for all of Council. Where, where is this going? Or is this, is it, it, it could just be the anomaly that we are the community of communities, and it's something we need to pay attention to. And perhaps community building is a good, uh, a good title for it, but I'm just confused as to where this came from. So how do you deal with it?
So, uh, so if I can, um, help there, uh, to go back. So we did, uh, say, uh, relative to cultures, uh, that we would do that in the equity framework. So that's not the origin. Uh, when it comes to the volume of disparate opinions regarding any matter, uh, that is a matter, uh, that I suggested, uh, we could deal with separately. So it's primarily around, uh, community values, and the origin of it at the time was, uh, really, uh, growth, limited growth, managed growth, rural values, urban values, um, and different neighbor, neighborhoods or community, uh, values. So, so it was more about the community of communities. Uh, it was the origin of it in, uh, 2019. Uh, back to you, your worship.
Uh, Counselor Ferguson. Uh, Counselor Ferguson, I'm off. You're muted. I'm not going to unmute you. Don't hear you.
Can you hear me now?
Yeah, now I'm hearing you. Thank you.
Okay, okay. I don't, some technical problems. Anyway, yeah, yeah, this is, uh, Mr. McIntosh. There's a welcome to our world, technical problems, and including yourself. I think that this is a great discussion and we have to continue it on. We have to keep, uh, educating and reminding our residents as well is how our role fits. I think Mr. Becken really hit the, uh, nail on the head when he talked about example of cannabis. Because this has been a lot of questions asked by members of the public, members of Council, and it's gone around. And that's an example of where we have to get to the best answers and get to educating those folks out there about how we do business. And it, it's not going to be solved overnight, but I think it's very, very, very important that we keep, continue up this dialogue of educating and reinventing things that, instead of the, the old mail envelope and letter, uh, we're using other devices and other media. So that's certainly a good discussion. Thank you.
Thank you.
Counselor Richter.
Yeah, just to add an example in there that might put this more into context. Uh, traditionally, Fort Langley has been a very vocal part of the community, and it still is a very vocal part of the community. But Fort Langley is only, what, twenty-five-hundred people strong? Willoughby is like eighty-thousand people strong? And right now, we have a, a funding issue to wrestle with, with, which is getting the trucks out of Fort Langley, which is going to cost fifteen-plus million dollars, uh, for a community of twenty-five-hundred. At the same time, as we have a community of eighty-thousand who want Two-O-Aid Street fixed. So if you're looking at the value of utilitarianism, which is the greatest good for the greatest number, where do you put the money? And I think that that's the types of questions that we're starting to wrestle with more than we ever have in the past. So I'd just throw that out as an example and an illustration. Thank you.
Anybody else on the list, uh, your worship?
No, that pretty much completes the list. I'll turn it back to you, uh, before lunch.
Okay, so I'm going to, uh, that concludes, uh, discussion of the items that were in the past. Uh, for everyone, but in particular Wendy, here's what I have. I have the A S E, uh, recommendation, July. I have the Horn Pit Options Report, February. I have the Brookswood, but I think there were other neighborhood plans, so it's plural, December. We have the Development Management Procedural Improvements, March. We have the Cannabis Guidelines Slash Application Batch, so I put them both together, January. Uh, we have the Debt Management Hovers with no date. The Housing Needs Action Plan Update, uh, December. The, uh, Langley Property Strategy, no date. Uh, the Future of Farming, the Task Force Analysis Report, no date at this point. And lastly, we have, uh, Community Building. There's no noun to that at this point. Um, and that would give us one, two, three, four, five, six, seven items that, um, appear plus two, uh, next items, obviously next items. So I just wanted to give us, uh, kind of a tick stock before we have lunch, that, um, those are the items that we have. I'm expecting that I might have, uh, power somewhere, somewhere over lunch. Um, but shall we, uh, take, uh, thirty minutes, uh, for lunch and rejoin? And then we'll, and we'll talk about the, uh, uh, the one, two, three, four, five, six, seven, eight, nine items that, uh, uh, were added.
Mr. Saffie has kind of, uh, Mr. Saffie, comments?
Yes, thank you, your worship. For the purpose of, I guess, being a bit more efficient, so we don't spend time after, afterwards now that Mr. McIntosh has, uh, summarized the discussions and the, uh, the deadlines that we've established ourselves. I was able to get some information from staff regarding the future of farming task force. And what they're working on currently is concluding some case studies. And they do plan to report back to the Committee such that the Committee can then report back to Council before the end of the year. So the work of the task force is expected to be concluded by December of this year as well.
Wow, thank you very much. Very helpful. So, uh, everybody, go ahead, Dr.
I'll, I'll, I'll leave finishing then.
No, that was, uh, I was, I was just thanking, uh, Mr. Saffie. So back to you, your worship.
Okay, thank you. So we'll take a break. Come back at, uh, twelve forty.
Okay.
Well, just, uh, come back to this, like.
Thank you.
We can just leave it on here.
Yeah.
Yes, you can, Counselor Davis.
Yeah.
Mr., um, Dr. McIntosh?
Well, no problem, Counselor Davis.
So don't you have a tree bylaw, Victoria, that were, would not, uh, I mean, did you go and count how many, how old the tree was? Did you, you know, didn't you spend a bit of time before they cut this thing down?
Well, you know what it was, uh, Counselor Davis? Um, we had a big wind, uh, eighty kilometers an hour, uh, last Thursday. And the power lines caused a spark, and so the tree caught on fire. So it was, uh, B C Hydro, and it's about, I don't know, it's about two hundred, two hundred yards from us. And so it was B C Hydro coming in, and we cut it down. There'll be a nasty note to them. It's a, uh, it's called courtesy to. There'll be a nasty note to them to say, uh, it's called courtesy to let, let people know you're gonna cut your power off for four hours. Anyway.
Okay, well, I'm here, I'm here, I'm here standing by.
Yeah, okay, here we go.
At twelve forty, uh, just wanna make sure everyone's back from their lunch break. Perhaps you can just put your screen on and a bit of a wave and you know who's here. A little better, a little refreshed. Councilor Davis is there. We haven't heard from him already, so. So I think, uh, we can carry on with the, uh, we can be in the meeting. And, uh, so let's just, uh, go over a little bit of what to expect this afternoon. We do have a special, uh, meeting of council to, uh, continue the budget, uh, which shouldn't take too long. So, uh, you know, I've been advised by staff, it's about, uh, thirty minutes of presentation, maybe, uh, you know, maybe it might take longer. So, uh, and we'd like to be, I think we'd like to be finished by four. It's a pretty, pretty big day, uh, lots to go through. A little bit, a little bit fresh, so. Dr. McIntosh, I'll turn it over to you. Maybe you can give us a bit of outline what the afternoon session will look like.
Thanks, your worship. Uh, if I've got it right, uh, um, uh, I have, uh, you told two. Um, if we look through our, uh, process, uh, we're now unpacking, um, the items. Our next, uh, task would be to confirm what our top prior, now next items or advocacy. I've also, if you recall, said there were about six themes related to what could derail us from pursuing these priorities. I'm not sure if we'll get to those or not, so there may be, um, some consideration that we need to follow up on those, because I think, uh, for a couple of the councils, those are equally important. It's important to, uh, determine what our priorities are. Perhaps it's equally important to say, what are the practices, um, actions, behaviors, whatever you wanna call it, that would derail us over the next, uh, twenty months or whatever. So, the, so that was sort of the plan, uh, unpack the rest of the items, uh, set our priorities and then move to, uh, discussion. At that point, we have, uh, I guess, a little bit more than an hour, an hour and fifty minutes, uh, to do that. Um, so I'm sort of taking maybe some guidance from, uh, your worship. If, uh, we wanna continue to unpack items, option one. And then, uh, if we have time, talk about potential, uh, how do we achieve success in this? That's option one. Option two, perhaps we have a sense that we have the priorities that we need at this point. And we discuss, um, the items of how to best achieve those and stick with our priorities. That would be option two. Though again, option one, continue to unpack as we always have. And perhaps, uh, another time for discussion of what would derail us or how do we achieve those? Or suspend future discussion on the rest of the nine or ten items and talk about strategies to achieve, uh, success and sticking to our priorities. It might be a real quick, uh, check-in, maybe a roundtable, uh, uh, your worship, just to hear from everybody and see, uh, it's your agenda, not mine.
That sounds fair. And, uh, if we have to go a little bit past two, uh, we do have time on our, on our afternoon. So be able to do it before four o'clock, so.
Okay.
Yeah, if you wanna do roundtable, I think that's. Got it, yeah, do a roundtable, that'd be good.
Let's check in with everybody. Shall we check, uh, let's go, uh, the middle, um, Council. I'll, I'll go roundtable, so that way we get everybody. So, uh, uh, Council Coons? How are you feeling?
Yeah, I'm good. Um, you know, I'm hoping that we can sort of get to some, uh, some good discussions about, you know, and, and get into, um, like agreeing what is a priority. So I guess that will remain to be seen.
Okay.
Thank you, I'm good.
Okay, so stick with priorities, okay? Uh, Council Whitmarsh?
Yeah, I, I would, um, encourage us to stick with the, uh, priority discussion. I think there are some that are on the list right now that look like we've either gotten very close to completing and we could take off and we could probably add some new ones on. So I think going through those priorities and identifying, uh, you know, the, the now five and maybe the next five are, would be important.
Thank you. Uh, Council Long?
Yeah, thanks. So I'm concerned about the ones that were specifically referred to this meeting. So I hope that you've got that now, uh, P one, uh, H three, which is on separate cover, which I'm trying to locate. I don't know what H three is, uh, O two and O three. So, I mean, if they've been referred to this workshop, I, we have to have, uh, assigned some kind of, uh, status to it. Don't read Dr. McIntosh's words.
So you would stick with, uh, continuing with the priority discussion then, including those.
Well, I think that we have to deal with these, otherwise they're gonna be referred to another session.
Okay. Uh, Council Arneson?
Uh, excuse me, yes, I concur. I, I like the, um, sticking with the priorities and also, of course, including the ones that are included in our package for today at B one. Thank you.
Thank you. Uh, uh, Davis?
You know, I, we, I, we, what needs to come out of this meeting for me is, uh, we need to get our priority list updated, but we, but I guess also the three that came, uh, like, uh, P one, three and O two, we, like, that was the whole purpose, they came here. So somewhere along the line, we gotta deal with them and maybe I should, I should shut up. Let's get on with it so we can get them done. Thank you.
Stick with, uh, priorities, thank you. Council Woodward?
Uh, no, I'm, I'm good. Can, uh, let's, uh, let's keep going here.
Yeah, Council Ferguson?
Yeah, I'm planning to keep going.
Council Richter?
Well, um, as we're in the middle of the budget process, I think the budget restructuring should be an item that we deal with as part of this, uh, session.
So stick with, uh, continue with priorities is, uh, your comment, okay? Uh, your worship?
Agreed.
Okay. So with that in mind, uh, should I, oh, sorry, uh, your worship, we have a hand.
Yeah, can I just, uh, uh, this, H three, can, is, is Ms. Bauer sending me that or do I have it somewhere? H three is one of the, of the, there's three, there's four items referred to this meeting, but one of them is a closed item, I guess. And I just having trouble locating it. Does anybody else have H three? It said it was, it was coming under separate covers.
Yeah, I don't have it either there.
Yeah, I'll ask Ms. Bauer, but we aren't in the full session, so I don't know how we're gonna.
No, but we don't, but I wouldn't mind having it in front of me, yeah.
I can get it circulated for you, not a problem.
Excellent, thank you.
Uh, so with that, uh, in mind, I'm just looking, should we deal with the items that were referred to here first?
Yeah, I think that'd be appropriate.
Yep, so, uh, somebody give me the first item then, just the, the name of one item that was.
It's revitalized tax exemptions on commercial buildings in downtown Alda Grove Core.
Okay, so tax exemptions, okay? Um, somebody, uh, brought it forward, um, uh, would they like to, uh, introduce it?
Council Arneson, I know this is emotional, can you move? You want to talk to her or can I stop?
Uh, thank you, worship. Uh, I thought about this, but I think it's probably better if staff can, uh, talk about it more generally as they're more insightful and have more details about this process. So I defer to them, thank you.
Thanks, Mr. Back.
Thank you, worship. I, as I recall, I think this was in the context of Alda Grove, um, the downtown core of Alda Grove and providing some, uh, incentives for the revitalization that could be in the form of, uh, I guess grants or it could be in the form of forbearance of, um, of taxation or, or reductions, which is a, a tricky thing to achieve or, um, or things of that nature. Mr. Saffi, do you, um, recall this item and do you have any other ideas in terms of how or, or how one could achieve the revitalization, I think, of the, uh, the Alda Grove Downtown Core?
Uh, thank you, Mr. Becken. Your worship, uh, beyond what Mr. Becken just mentioned, uh, just to remind council, there was a report, uh, a number of years ago. I, I forget exactly, maybe four or five years ago, that was, that was sent to council for information purposes, that outlined the options. And, uh, as I recall, because of the fact that there were specific properties referenced, it was received by council in a special closed meeting. Uh, I think, if I'm not mistaken, council did ask for the recirculation of that report, which was, as I recall, Ms. Bauer might remember as well, it was recirculated. So one option for council to consider would be to instruct staff to either re-recirculate that report or, uh, if that is fairly fresh in, in council's mind, maybe just council may wish to ask staff to proceed with an analysis that is similar to what was done a number of years ago, but based on today's conditions, which obviously have changed, the economics have changed and, and certain, I guess, uh, improvements have been made in the community that were not there a number of years ago when that initial report was, was brought forward.
Thank you, Mr. Saffi, and, yes, you know, perhaps, uh, refresh on the report, maybe what council, because there are a lot of, I think a lot of this is already in that report, but, like, you're right. I, I moved on and it's, uh, good for council to take a look at it. We did wanna make some changes, or updates, and that might be focused, but, uh, Council Long.
Yeah, I think that's a great course of action. We don't have to spend too much time on it because that report was, I think it was a lot longer than four years ago, if it's the one I'm thinking of, Mr. Saffi. But the, it certainly was based upon economic conditions of the day and, uh, things have changed considerably as well as other initiatives that council's taken, um, in, in the Alda Grove area. So maybe we could just refer that for an updated, uh, re-re, re-recirculated and updated, uh, report on the, on the, uh, on that thing. So it's, can we make a motion in this meeting or could we just put a note by there?
Yes, this is, uh, meeting council, so motion we made.
I think we should, yeah.
Refer this to staff.
Yeah, refer to staff to, uh, recirculate the report of many years ago and, uh, in an updated fashion or updated format.
Recirculate the report.
So, no, to up, to update and recirculate, yeah. I think without the update, it's not gonna help the position. Yeah, because the, if, if we get the same report, which I think was more like seven years ago, it, it's not gonna be relevant anymore.
Okay.
So the motion would be to refer, uh, this, uh, motion to staff to, uh, provide council with a updated report for council's consideration. Is that, Mr. Backen, is that, so I'm gonna nod there, so that's moved? Is there a second or? Council Arneson seconded it. Special, Council Richter?
We've had, um, discussions that, uh, in this type of forum before about the workload that is placed on staff by these fly-by motions. Um, is this something that should be going to the council policy committee? And the reason I bring that up is, uh, our second bit of homework that we had for today was to identify procedural areas that could be problematic. And I think the whole council pri, policy committee, a wonderful idea, but I don't think it's working that well because it's so far backlog. So those are my thoughts. I, I just would like to know from staff how much work this is gonna be for us to put on them right now with everything else on their plates.
So I'll ask Mr. Backen, uh, Mr. Saffi. One thing is, we don't have a timeline on this, and I think that staff will be working, since it's a work, work plan, but Mr. Backen?
No, thank you, worship. We do appreciate the comments because that is one of the challenges. What I think set this, uh, part a little bit is the fact that it's an update from the previous work that was done. So I think it helps us in terms of simply continuing what was done previously. But Mr. Saffi, you'd have to be the final, uh, I think, advisor as to the implications on the division. Mr. Saffi?
Uh, thank you, uh, Mr. Becken and your worship. This is really a, a question of, uh, I guess, the intent. Um, and I'm fairly certain, uh, it's, it's a matter of individual opinion as to what, what might be the intent. So I, I say that because, I mean, there, there are three ways I can see at a high level that this could be done. One is simply redistribute what was done previously, which I, I tend to agree with Council Long's comments that it will likely not serve the purpose because it is so outdated that it is no longer likely, uh, valid. At least it needs to be looked at in a bit more refreshed manner. So then the question will become, well, how much time does one spend in, in refreshing it? Uh, it could be what I could call a light version or a heavy version. Heavy version, as Council Richter has referenced, could take quite a bit of toll on, on staff and it will likely require external resources because the last time around, we did engage the services of an external consultant with something like, uh, I'm just guessing now, maybe a fifty-thousand-dollar assignment of some kind, uh, for a review, a thorough review, again, looking at case studies, specific properties, analyzing what the likelihood of development might be and what the impact of an incentive of any kind might be on the development potential of that site. That would be the heavy one. Now, that could take something like six to nine months and it would obviously have an impact on the rest of staff's work. Uh, that said, the light version could be done within, say, three to four months with, with no external staff, with no external consultant assistance. But then you will have to sort of take, take the information with a bit of a grain, grain of salt, uh, because of the fact that it wouldn't have been through the more rigorous analysis by, by testing the market and, and having an external consultant review it to make sure that all the assumptions are, are accurate and correct. So it would be higher level and, and less effort.
I would like to say light. Let's do the light one, I guess.
Well, Mr. Saffi, if, uh, to do the, uh, as you say, go with the light one, certainly can be the report with some, um, recommendations to staff as far as the updates to it in the form of a parallel report and then council could make some decisions. If they did decide at that time to go with the heavy, or then there's, uh, cost implications, we have more time to review it, so it helps, helps make those decisions. But certainly a redistribution of report with some staff, um, highlighting some of the changes that they could do and that might be just sufficiently, like, pretty, so that, I think that's what the intent of this is. Going with a bit of a light update, and then from that, council can take it further to do it. Uh, Council Richter?
Um, I'm not in support of a light version because I don't think a light version is what's needed at this point in time. We've had some significant, um, development changes in downtown Alda Grove. I think what we need to do is to start coordinating more changes around the big ones that are coming. Uh, and so if we're gonna ask staff to put time and energy into this, I think we should be asking them to be as rigorous as they were in their original report to us, uh, which was several years ago. So I'm not in favor of a light version and a heavy version, I think, is one that we need to make a policy decision around with regards to everything else that's on staff's plate right now. Should we be asking them to put the resources into this with everything else that they have to handle in terms of the COVID recovery, et cetera? Those are my thoughts, thanks.
Maybe calling it light is, uh, the wrong term, it's really, it's, uh, provide the council with the report, with the parallel staff report, also recommendations. Then it gives us more information if we do wish to go further than that, I think. Today's discussion to make that kind of decision, a fifty-thousand-dollar hire, hire, I'll make that, bring back a, a full report. I think we require a little more backup for council and staff. I think that's the intent of this motion, is to bring that back. Recirculate the, the, uh, report, the original report with some, uh, parallel report. With some staff recommendations that we could incorporate into the original report or, and leave it at that, or council could then decide. That's what the intent of this is, for staff, and it may be the only staff. Uh, Council Arneson?
Uh, yes, thank you, worship. Um, I, I, I agree with some of the points. I'm not sure exactly about the terminology of light, but it occurs to me that the original investment that the township made was as a result of a snapshot in time, which the consultant then drilled down into that specific information. So I'm concerned about this, what I would call orphaned information, information now that was generated for a purpose which basically stagnated. It may or may not be the case that it is an appropriate, uh, way to consider. For example, I agree with Council Richter's points about integrating different elements together, but to me, that's precisely why now. But to me, that's precisely why, now that we have some momentum, that it would be helpful to look at. What areas are advancing, but what areas could also co-advance at the same time? And that might be rationally supported by a policy. So to me, um, to realize the, the benefit of that original investment means that we have to delve further into it. And if we're going to just do the lighter version, that would inform whether or not we need to make a further investment in it. So that's just kind of my, my rationality about that. Thank you.
Uh, Counsel Ferguson.
I, I wasn't a hundred percent sure whether we were going to get motions. I don't, can't remember in the past whether we put ideas to the council. Um, what, if I may, could you read back the motion again, for my, maybe my help?
Certainly, um, Ms. Bauer.
The motion was to recirc, re-recirculate a refreshed version of the previous report.
Yeah, yeah, I mean, I don't even know if that's even a motion, but I mean, uh, I guess it's a direction. I mean, we're going to be getting, uh, information back on. Whether it's Alda Grove or any other community. Uh, it would make some sense to review anything and to look at improvements along the way and, uh. And incentives. I mean, I guess under COVID and under the number of challenges we have financially, otherwise, uh, it's difficult for us to look at. Financial resources and, uh, looking at how they would be implemented accordingly. So I, I look forward to reading it, whether light or heavy, I understand the discussion by members of council. I think we have to, I guess, re- reread it, ask questions again and move forward. I think also it's important also to look, uh, with the number of, uh, months left on this term, that, you know, what's going to work and what isn't. And I did sense something to, uh, to, uh, Dr. McIntosh about that, uh, but, um, that's up to council, but. Certainly, again, motions, it, it, interesting motions now, but the thing is, I don't have a problem rereading something. Thank you.
Good, yeah. You know, we are in a meeting, so, you know, having this here for some discussion and taking some action on it, move forward or, or not to.
Uh, your worship. Uh, your worship. Just, uh. If I could just, uh, process wise for today. I think so far, what we've been focusing on is priorities. Um, and we, we've never done motions before, so I'm just kind of wondering where we're heading with it. So.
Okay, I was taking directions from staff here, they take motions, but it is, I know it's a workshop and.
That's okay, that.
I just want to steer away from every report coming out of the council, which is more information.
Yeah, so just for clarity, when we said we wanted a twenty-fourth avenue, uh, update. Uh, we just said, hey, let's get that up. Uh, and we put it on the follow-up action list. So, no problem.
Just, uh, to clarify, the difference is this was referred to this meeting by council. So that's why I looked at it a little bit differently.
Yeah, uh, okay, I just want to clarify my point. My point is not how you're treating it. My question is. Is this becoming a council, potential council priority item? Or it's an information item? That, that's all I'm trying to get at, because if it's a potential priority item. It should be compared to ASE horn pit, development management cannabis and not by a, a resolution. That, that's all I'm trying to get at. Yeah. If it's an update to refresh so that we can have a discussion later. Um, then, then that's fine. Um, anyway, I just was trying to get clarity whether we're separating this from all the other items that we've discussed.
He's still having on the list.
No, thank your worship. The, the context of this, I'm not sure council's, um, fully remembering. Was it, uh, it was put into a meeting format and is open as well for the public to tune in, but of course not participate. So it's in that context, the priority session continues and as the mayor has outlined, it is technically possible to have. I think motions, but I think the hope would be that the motions would be summarily, uh, processed, where they can be. Uh, such so we could continue with the, the overarching priority sessions that we're trying to achieve. And as well deal with some of the other issues because we, we certainly have a bit more time today, so we can go a little bit over. But we do need to conclude at least with a bit of a budget update at the end and, uh, I think that's all we're trying to ensure proceeds today.
Thank you.
Yep. With that, I think, your worship, you have a motion.
No, I'm trying to, I've had my hand up.
Yeah, sorry, maybe you didn't hear me. I did go to Counsel Law, Counsel Law.
All right, thank you very much. Well, listen, let's, so I was trying to make it so that all council would agree and with the light and the heavy and the comments from staff. But let's go way back, Gordon, to the, to one of our, Mr. Mac, Dr. McIntosh, that Alda Grove has been a priority from day one. Maybe it fell on and off the list, who knows? But the other thing is, we, it's a process issue here. Uh, this is a, a motion that was referred. We got to do something with it. So I think getting a refresher, which is what we've decided, what staff feel they can, uh, provide. Deals with this motion. And if we don't deal with this motion, I don't know where in the world it exists. It's sort of out in the clouds. And it is a priority for certain for me, and I'm sure for the rest of council. Alda Grove has always been a concern. That's why we're. Doing the, some of the things that we're doing, some which I agree and some which I don't. So I think this is great because since the report that was referenced of several years ago and today. We've put on a, a number of incentives in there. There's a, a waiving of, uh, community amenities, I believe, for the next two or three years. I don't know what the timeline was. There's other contributions from it. There's all kinds of cool things that we've attempted to do for Alda Grove. Staff now have an opportunity to refresh the report and, and give us an update. That deals with this motion that's sitting on the books because it means we're doing something with it and I think we're all happy. So if we don't need a motion, then we should put a follow-up thing. If we have a motion which is on the floor, I think we should do exactly what it says. And, but it should be referenced probably to this item. Uh, I heard, uh, Ms. Bauer just say, recirculate the report from years ago, but I think the subject matter on the referral. Uh, to get that re-circulated is, is in relation to P one. Which was a very thorough motion that council, uh, deferred to this meeting. So, I think, I think we're all on the right page.
So to keep in spirit of the workshop, I think the motion really, where I wrote it down, maybe. Check with clerk, this, this move to refer this to staff to recirculate the report, provide a report on changes and improvements for council's consideration, so. So not a, not ask for a complete rebound, we just want a report back, so it gives us more information.
It deals with this motion, so it's, it's a win-win, yeah.
Asking for more information and getting the report back. I know you read it a little bit. I thought that's what, what sort of accounts. Move to refer to staff, this motion to staff to recirculate the report, provide a report on changes and improvements for council's consideration, so. Not, uh, we're not intending that they get a consultant, spend a lot of money. It's like, here's the report, here's some things we see that were updated. And if council wants to take it further, so hopefully that factors out. Okay, I'm going to call a question on that. Almost in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
Opposed.
Uh, Counsel Richter's opposed. Okay, thank you. This moves it all along with that.
Thank you. The next one is the RCMP detachment.
Consideration of a township aligning the RCMP detachment, and this was moved by Counsel Woodward, uh, originally. Uh, Counsel Woodward, did you wish to introduce it?
Uh, no, I mean, I, unless there's questions about it, I mean, we've, we've got here, what, uh, fifty minutes left, so I don't want to belabor this. I'm no longer pursuing it with no expectation it will go anywhere.
Oh, let's just get rid of it.
Then if, um, if there's no desire to move it forward, then we just. Leave it here, as far as any, when you see it, there's no, just leave it here. Nobody wishes to do anything, take action on it. But, uh, Counsel Long, you had us so up, is that before? So we'll move on to, um, oh, three, uh, Mr. McIntosh, that's the equity dignity inclusion, your line.
Great, thank you. And that was, uh, topic raised, um, and again, pretty big, uh, topic. Uh, was, uh, I think introduced by Counselor Richter, would, uh, we'd feel like to, some bit of context and then. Uh, and then I think Counselor Davis can do it. And let's see where we go with this.
Actually, could I just comment on, I, I, and I'm, 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 I'm out of line here, Mayor Froze. But consideration of a township aligning the RCMP detachment, I, I guess you didn't quite see my head. That's going to come, i- 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 do we just leave that on the table now? Like, this is the priority setting. This is a priority setting meeting and what's going to happen is. You know, real soon, this will be back on the table and we got it, like, we've got it. I, I'm not suggesting, I guess we're just leaving it on the table. It's not like we're taking it off, but when will the next priority session that we have? Uh, because I, you know what I'm saying? Like, all of a sudden, we'll be talking about it and we'll say, well, we didn't even, it didn't even move with the priority. Why are we dealing with it now? That's what's going to happen.
Yeah, this motion was referred to. Uh, council has the option to deal with it, to move it forward or to leave it, then nothing happens. It stops it. Doesn't stop any member of council at any future time, bringing up a similar motion to council. For this motion, unless there's, uh, direction from council, if it stays here. And, and Counsel Woodward, uh, had moved, had originally asked him. Further, knowing his time, but it doesn't mean any other member of council. That, I'll clarify.
We got it here. We didn't even talk about it. That's what I'm, okay, you know. Well, I, I'm, I guess I'm speaking to it. I, I just think that, um, we, we. We put some, a lot of thought into, um. You know, a lease and all that sort of stuff and the acceleration of what Grove, uh, the population and. How maybe we need it closer to the freeway. You know, we had lots of really good points that I just, I'm. I'm concerned, but it's, we got it here and, um. Um, you know, I guess I'm not, I guess in my personally, uh, I just don't want it to sit here and then never talk about it again. And the next time we deal with this, with this, uh, topic, we're going to, we're all, I'm going to say. Well, why wasn't even, we didn't even talk on the prioritize. Uh, this is the time to talk about it. Anyhow, yeah, you know what? I'm, I'm behind, I'm behind here.
With this motion specifically, discusses is, uh. Creating or establishing standalone RCMP detachment with the township aligning. Rather than what we have presently, which is.
Yeah.
So it's two means, plus that's all this motion, this doesn't talk about growing population, doesn't talk about, uh, other CPO.
You know what? I, I'm on, I'm on the line here.
Well, I'll try to clarify very quickly, your worship. There's two different topics. One is main detachment and its future. The other one that was referenced was the potential for a. A Willoughby community police officer or precinct officer, whatever that may be. As council may recall, work is advancing on the Willoughby matter. And, um, when I, when we have actually come to a conclusion on that, we'll be able to circulate that information. This motion, however, was dealing with, uh, more historical topic of a, a detachment at size and our sharing of that detachment with another. Intergovernmental agency and, and what's our future. So, uh, what I've heard today is that the main detachment issue is. If you will, falling by the wayside, at least for now, but the other matter is something that's still proceeding in accordance with previous council directions.
Okay, I'm sorry. I'm right, right on the line. I didn't, I guess, I'm sorry. I'm sorry for wasting everyone's time. I didn't realize. I didn't read the, I just highlighted the, the topics. I'm sorry. Okay?
Thank you, uh, Counsel Richter.
Um, yeah, no, I, I actually want to talk about this police detachment thing. Again, it's got budget implications. We're moving to a substation in Willoughby. Cause we need space to put ten more officers. Well, if we didn't have to share the building in Murrayville, we'd have the space for ten more officers. So I would like to propose with this motion that we refer it to council policy committee, I guess. Because, just to get it off the table for now, but I don't think it's a done discussion in any way, shape or form.
I just go through the speakers list and come back to you.
Okay.
Uh, Counsel Whitmore.
Yeah, thank you. I, I guess, um, what I'm wondering about, I mean, I think that this, this particular item on the, uh, Langley RCMP detachment. Was referred to this meeting for us to discuss whether or not we see it as a priority for council. And so, um, this is the place to do that. I'm kind of agreeing with Counselor Davis on this. If, if we don't think it's a priority for council. Then we should decide that, decide it's not a priority for council. And then, uh, take it off the list and then I don't think we move it necessarily to a policy group, uh, meeting either. Cause it's therefore not a, not a, um, uh, it, it's not a priority for council. But if it is a priority for council, then we do put it on the list. It's one of those priority items. So I think that's what the purpose of this was and, and I've heard, um, you know, the, the, the mover of, the mover of this. Counsel Woodward suggests that for now, for him, it might not be a priority. I don't know if that's the case. He indicated that and so maybe, but for the rest of us, it might be a priority. This is where we need to discuss it. Does it make the list or does it not? I think that's important to decide today.
Fair, fair enough. Where are the comments for, when I saw no hands up, nobody wanted to speak to it, was that nothing happened, it was just, it would, it basically dies here. But if somebody wants to make a motion, that's the purview of council to, to, um, to deal with this and then there's a council decision. Uh, Counsel Law.
Yeah, well, first of all, I think we're making an error when we say it's Counsel Woodward's motion. Certainly he made it and it was seconded, but it's a council motion. It was voted on by all of council and it was to be referred here, but I, I recall the discussion very clearly that. I made the point at least, that we should have a presentation from the RCMP on how policing is done in the Langleys. As has been done by previous councils for the last seven terms that I've been on. Counsel Richter, we, we call, we've had several presentations during that time. Because this, this topic comes up time and time again. It's a budget item, it's a service item, it's a concern to everybody. So we have had detailed presentations by the, uh, the officer in charge or, or. I think even beyond that, with the, the command sent somebody out that, you know, an expert in, in the accounting aspect and all the different parts. So we should have a presentation. I think that should happen almost every term, or at least every two terms. Where we can get the state of the nation of the policing in the Langleys and that's where I think this should go. So I, I'd like to make that motion, if we're doing anything, that it be referred to a future presentation. I don't care if it's a policy. It should be at a regular council meeting. Uh, it may have to be in camera, but we should get a detailed presentation from our RCMP. And then we can take further action if required from then or let it go after that. But just to let it go, well, why did we bring it up to begin with? I think we let it, we brought it up because we had some questions. And, uh, we should get those questions answered by, uh, by the RCMP. So, Mr. McIntosh, how do we do that?
Uh, thank you, uh, that can be part of, part of how we deal with this. That's all we're trying to do. You refer it to council, I mean, for a presentation. Uh, on police, certainly appropriate. Uh, Counsel Woodward. Not, you're muted. Counsel Woodward, you're muted.
Uh, you know, call, yeah. So, um, I guess I will have to speak to this because people are assuming that I don't consider this a priority. That's not what I said. What I said was that I didn't consider this to be achievable objective this council, so. Um, if that's changed, then that's great. I think that we kind of moved on from this when there was a decision made. To not pursue the RCMP detachment that was outlined in the community amenity contributions program. And replace it with a CPO office, uh, leased in a building in Willoughby, so. Uh, I kind of moved on from this item when that decision was made by other members of this council, so. Um, that's, I think, explaining why I considered this to be something to, that wasn't achievable this term, uh, based upon that decision. So, you know, if we're now going to have presentations, great, I'll take a presentation with new RCMP. Um, we can certainly keep this on the priorities list, something to consider, uh, the future of the detachment. But I believe other decision-making in the meantime has, uh, moved this to the background. That clarifies it. Thanks.
Counsel Richter, uh, based, I know you're waiting to make a, a motion, so based on the discussion you've heard, maybe you could, uh, provide some.
Yes, I would like to, uh, I would like to place the consideration of a township of Langley RCMP detachment. On council's priority list. Or further, um, discussion and what is it that Dr. McIntosh says, unpacking?
Good one.
Mr. Dr. McIntosh.
Well, if I could help, uh, I think we've got, I think we're hearing two things. One is like a follow-up. Better, let's get a update from, uh, Staff Sergeant James. Right? And what I'm also hearing is that the future of RCMP and Langleys. And then we can, remember, they haven't prioritized that. We do that after we've talked about all the items. Right now, I would be circling that along with, um, revitalization of downtown Alda Grove. Uh, and more items that we go on our possibility.
Okay, so, uh, it is, uh, basically it is appropriate for council to make a decision on this. If Counsel Richter wishes to make a motion to have it. As a, as a priority and then maybe to add, uh, including a presentation for the RCMP.
Well, you're going to have a dust-up your worship. I'm trying to make a motion too to get a presentation.
I know, I'm just, uh, maybe not hearing me. Uh.
In fact, point of order, worship. This is extremely troubling. I can barely hear you. I can almost not hear Dr. McIntosh.
Okay.
Councillor Davis is blowing my speakers out across the floor here. So.
He'll do her best. I'll speak a little louder.
No, but councillor Davis, get your son to phone me or, or councillor Woodward and we can find the button that you're supposed to adjust.
Yeah, he has, he has his fine. He's sitting in background. Basically, we have to move this thing along. So. All I'm trying to do is uh, this is a workshop and we wanna either deal with it in one way that satisfies council uh, or, or leave it, but what I'm hearing. Is that there's a desire to have a presentation from the RCMP on policing in the Langleys. That's what I'm hearing. I'm also hearing. No, councillor Richard has proposed a motion. I'm also hearing that we'd like to um, keep this topic in front of us from several. Councillor Richard has motioned that. So councillor Richard's motion, except that it's seconded first, is to um, defer this to the uh, as a priority. And to hear from RCMP on presentation from policing in Langleys. Would that be appropriate, councillor?
Um, what I would like to do is to leave it on our priorities list, I guess, and have a present, a subsequent presentation. Because the other thing that happens is every time um, RCMP leadership changes, the. Priorities and how service are gonna be delivered changes. So I'm not sure if there's been a change that's permanent in the leadership right now or not. Uh, but I, I do believe council needs to consider this further. So my motion would be to leave it on the pri- uh, priorities list. And ask for a follow-up presentation from the RCMP on it.
I'll second that, your worship.
Second, I, councillor Long. Uh, see further discussion uh, from councillor Whitmarsh, councillor Long, and councillor, if you want to speak to anyone. Councillor Whitmarsh, can I speak to it?
Yeah, um, I, I support this uh, motion. I think it. Uh, there's been enough conversation around it that uh, keeping on the priority list, keeping the discussion going is important. Um, I haven't heard anyone say here that it's not a priority or we just need to boot it off the list. I think we should keep it. We should get a presentation. It doesn't mean it's gonna happen. It just means that for right now, it's an prior, priority for council to get more information and, and keep moving down the path. And at some point we'll have to decide, but it's not today.
See, no further discussion. I'll call a question always. Opposed? Opposed? Here's the nonsense. Thanks. Okay, Dr. McIntosh, thank you for that. You know, I hope you understand why we have to deal with this, because there are motions that came here, so.
I think you have one. If I've got it right, your worship, you have one more.
Yes, the equity, dignity and inclusion frameworks motion. And uh, so. Uh, again, I'd like to go to the um, who originally.
Well, I'm, I'm, Mr. Mayor, thank you. I'm not sure I was the one that put the original motion on. I thought it came from councillor Whitmarsh. But um, I, I think that this is something that uh, we do need to discuss. And I think it's already come up on our priorities list that has been generated today that we're working through. So perhaps it could be further discussed when we get to that unpacking item.
Oh, councillor Whitmarsh and councillor Long will ask.
Well, yeah, I've got a point of order kind of a thing, but.
No, we'll go to, I think we go to councillor Whitmarsh.
Go ahead.
Now you can discuss this and then councillor Long will go to Dr. McIntosh.
Thank you. Um, so I, I think that thi- this is on, was on generate on the, on the other list as well, but this is here also. I think it's probably worth just discussing it now. Uh, this motion uh, was made by myself, seconded by councillor Coontz. Um, it, for some reason, it doesn't indicate it here uh, like the other ones do, uh, but that motion was made by us. And, and then, and then it referred as it does shows there. So I think this was deferred here to have a discussion to see if council wanted to proceed. With having uh, staff uh, look into it and outline and look at what other communities are doing in this regard. I think it'd be a helpful report for us uh, to know what other communities are doing. Um, I don't know what this framework would look like at this point. I just would like us to begin the path. Do the research, come back from staff to hear what's happening in other communities and we can continue to discuss it. But for me, it's a priority. I think it should be on our priority list and it's something we could probably do over the next six to eight months.
Councillor Long?
Yeah, I think I agree with everything because I'm trying to read the writing here and it says that the motion for staff, so in other words, there was a motion for staff to prepare a report, but for some reason that was referred. For a discussion here. So I guess we're discussing the merits of staff preparing a report. And uh, and, and I think we should get that report. So uh, it didn't have to come here, but it did. Maybe, I, I don't know. I, I don't know. Maybe I guess we had to put a priority number on it. So. Then I think that the, is that what's being done here? That the motion to, for staff to prepare a report be done?
So it could be uh, similar to the last uh, item that we dealt with is the uh, motion to uh, refer to the priority list and also to receive.
Yeah. Okay, so I'll move that. So it remains on the priority list and referred to staff for uh, to deal with it. Okay, I'll second that.
Just hold on to that. I'm gonna go to uh, Davidson Ferguson before we take the motion.
I'm gonna put my earplugs in before David speaks.
Okay, councillor Davis, go ahead.
Okay, can you hear me, Bob? Anyhow, I'm sorry. I, I, I think that we, I'm gonna support exactly what the motion was. That Bob had said, let's, this is important. This um, this can, this is something that we need to look at. Um, and the sooner we look at it, the better because we're um, um, this, we're gonna, this is a uh. Contagious issue every time something comes up. So I, yeah, anyhow, that's all I have to say. Thanks.
Thank you, councillor Ferguson. Uh, you may be muted. I'm hearing you, councillor Ferguson.
You hear me?
Yes, I would.
Okay, so basically I, yeah, this, this particular item is becoming forward for us to discuss as well, equity, dignity, inclusion. And of course, uh, I'll be, I'll be suggesting that at a later point in time that we also look at reconciliation. But all these things are important to all council, including Metro Vancouver. So. Yes, we have to move forward to as other communities as well. So. And that, that includes uh, the three-way approach we have, the public we deal with, our staff and ourselves. Thank you very much.
Okay, so councillor Long, you moved it. Councillor Whitmarsh, you seconded it and the motion was to refer this as a priority. And also to receive a presentation on it, for this now.
No, no, there was no present, I don't, no, it was to remain on the priority list and for staff to prepare a report.
Record, yeah.
Move from seconded?
Yeah, that was me and.
Councillor Whitmarsh seconded that. Uh, call a question always, favourite?
Aye.
Opposed? Here it is. Now, thank you. So that um.
Now, your worship, what about, what about this age three that's sitting here now? I don't know how we can deal with that.
We're not in a closed meeting, so we can't discuss it. And I don't have a funny right now, doing that, you know, so. But I'll just ask uh, Mr. Backon how we'll deal with that. We'll, we'll deal with that maybe in our next scheduled.
In coming meeting, okay.
We'll, we'll do that next closed meeting if we have, uh, but it won't be today.
That's correct, your worship. A future meeting and we have to be a bit cautious because I'm just gonna interject here briefly. We, we now have some new topics introduced and as Dr. McIntosh was going through. Some of the items, this was the start of those items. Uh, so once we conclude the other items that were raised in our discussion today. We will then have a number of priorities that we're gonna have to rank and deal with and that may or may not occur today. So. I'm just giving that heads up that it may be necessary to consider uh, we can, continuing this if we, if we get um. To a point where we can't get to a clear five or seven priorities and Dr. McIntosh can guide us through the, the process when we have. Um, the ones from before, the ones that were referred, and we still have the ones from today to deal with.
So if we can uh, sort of reset, so we've gone through the initial uh, check-in on our priorities and some discussion. And we've gone through items that were referred to this meeting and made some decisions on that. So. Uh, that's helpful. Now, now at the end of votes that are referred to this, this meeting. Uh, so I'm gonna turn over to Dr. McIntosh to take us through the next steps of this session. And I know that there are. Certain items that I think members of council have that we wish to uh, have dealt with today. And let's see if we can do all of that. So, Dr. McIntosh, for you.
Okay. Uh, thank you, uh, your worship. Thanks for uh, clarifying um, uh, the notion of uh, the motions coming here as well. That was uh, new for me. So I appreciate, uh, appreciate your guidance. Now, uh, let's do a quick little recap. To see if I have the items that are, before we get the new ones, that are obviously next items. They're, they're not candidates. So let me uh, try. Uh, the um, Langley property uh, future uh, use disposition is a next item. If I'm not hearing anything, so I'm trying to whittle down our list of fourteen at this point. So if I don't hear anything, uh, your worship, I'm gonna treat that as a next item. Uh, debt management, we heard from uh, Mr. Backon. Uh, it's not, not uh, important, not on the radar yet. Uh, we keep it on. And that would be a next item. I'll just, I'll do a little pause after each one.
Uh, do you know, do you just burn in, uh, Mayor Froze or do we put perhaps?
Just put your hand up, yeah. Councillor Davis, go ahead.
I, the reason I. Okay, just quickly, um, I think debt management strategy goes with, and I know that maybe Mr. Backon can clarify. Um, it says options, but you know, we're going to, like councillor Richter said it six times already that we're going to budget. Debt management strategy is huge unless you take it out. And we say, okay, we're gonna apply this to the debt management, you know, it, it uh, it qualifies for that. We're gonna buy a bunch of pink paint, okay? Oh, okay, I didn't mean to say pink paint. Just, okay, we're gonna paint the house. Um, worse and worse. What I'm saying is, unless it goes to one area. The reason I use the pink paint is because Mr. Backon used that example ten years ago when he was showing me what was going on. Um, so that debt management strategy options. That, that, that's got everything to do with ev- with everything we move. We, we make, spend money all the time. And it's kind of, I don't. To say it's not important and I, anyhow, I just, I wanted to comment that, that's all. Thank you very much.
Okay, thank you. Uh, so remember, none of these are not important. Uh, if they're not on the list, right? They're all important. Uh, we're reflecting back with Mr. Backon saying it's not in action right now. Uh, is my point. Uh, the reason we're trying to get to those top five or seven. Priorities are things that have staff assigned to them, they have resources assigned to them and they're moving. Next items are the things as councillor Davis says are important. Uh, but we need to free up some room before we do that. Hope that helped.
Thank you. I've got another, I've got more questions. Thank you, Mr. Backon, one.
Your worship, just to interject to try to, to provide some comfort to this, I can, I can elaborate. The topic is Dr. McIntosh suggests is very important, uh, but in our, our priorities, it's a next item. That's where we begin. Now, why it's a next item is we, we think we have a theory in terms of where, what the principle or, or the pillar of our debt, debt management strategy is. And that is that council is reluctant to see borrowing for, we say ordinary capital items, uh, usual items. But if there's extraordinary items such as uh, infrastructure that we could not otherwise obtain, say perhaps without the event of third-party grants or assistance. That's when the borrowing perhaps comes in. And as we look at that in the context of the budget coming up. We are not now suggesting, and this is a prelude to what's coming later. We've removed the suggestion of budget, of funding, borrowing funding for um, some of the more mundane or usual or typical items. But are reserving the right to say, hey, if we can find out there's this piece of infrastructure uh, that is very important. Um, you know, a, a massive new bridge or a massive new facility and the government is promoting funding those. That's where we believe that that becomes part of it and that will take some time to prove out with council, but also may give some comfort for this budget cycle.
No.
Um. Then we heard that the uh, so again, these are all on our list. We're just trying to organize now and next. So the future of farming.
I've got a couple of questions uh, from council, if you don't mind.
Right, absolutely.
I've got councillor, councillor Davis, if you'd lower your hand, I think you still have the last one, and then councillor Richter and then Arson. Councillor Richter, go ahead.
Yeah, um, I, I think that councillor Davis has raised a very good point and I just wanna clarify with Mr. Backon, cause the last. Budget session we had, the suggestion was put on the table that we take out an additional ten million dollars worth of new debt. To cover some of the costs that we may not be able to cover. So that's off the table now? I just wanna confirm that.
Yeah, thank you for uh, clarif- for allowing to clarify. We had a discussion in terms of uh, if there is to be a difference between our revenue and our expenses. What are one of the options? And one of the options is borrowing for more of the more mundane things. And the reference was made to perhaps two, five or ten million dollars. In hearing council's response to that, what we heard, and this is a collective interpretation, was that that wasn't really something comfortable uh, for council, that they really didn't feel comfortable. Seeing that level of borrowing for that. Uh, so that tells us in the upcoming uh, update, we're to do later this afternoon. We put a, 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 basically a line through that as being one of the options. So as you may recall, we had a sheet full of options while we're beginning to reduce those options. And are focusing on the remaining options that are, that are still viable, such as uh, use of surplus, use of reserves, deferments, uh. That, you know, eliminating services is options, just, just generically. So that's where our focus is now being. But we also understand that on some occasions, there are programs out there that the government puts out there that could provide us with opportunities we may not always receive. Uh, or may not always um, have a chance to obtain. So we think council might be interested in considering, not saying agreeing, but considering to those. And that's where we're at at the moment. Uh, at this point, we're not even uh, suggesting any, any, any borrowing other than uh, well, there's no borrowing being suggested. But we're reserving the right that if these programs come along, council may wish to entertain that. So it does change the nature of our budget somewhat. So in answer to your direct question. Yes, the suggestion of whether there's two, five or ten has fallen off the table.
Great, thank you very much.
Uh, councillor Arson?
Uh, yes, uh, thank you, your worship, and uh, through you to Mr. Backon. Um, with all due respect, um, sadly, I personally don't take much comfort in the discussion around. What parameters that we are currently looking at, because if we look at this and keep ki- kicking this policy down the road. By default or for whatever reason, I'm not saying that, you know, we're determining that we don't want to know what our debt's management strategy is. But this particular motion was adopted and endorsed by council quite a long time ago. So I really feel that in the last budget go-around, when there were substantial changes to, I believe. Council pattern and habits, having to do with borrowing money, which to me is an entirely unusual kind of departure. For our local government. To me, what happens if you don't put this in terms of a priority and do it as soon as possible. And certainly prior to next year's budget, is that we are by default then. Notting, allowing ourselves or understanding based on our current situation, what our opportunities are to do rational borrowing. You know, I, I'm, I'm certainly one that's never said I was against borrowing. But I certainly don't think it's prudent to borrow when you don't have a comprehensive plan to help to understand how it is. That the borrowing that you're doing, including your past borrowing cumulatively. What that looks like when you're at the same time then considering future borrowing. And it could be the case that I might be persuaded to borrow ten million dollars for something. But I'm very reluctant to do that unless I know exactly, and I think it's good practice to know. Where you are in terms of that whole matrix. Where are you as a community to know in terms of sustainability? How is it that we are managing the debt to build our infrastructure and do other important, critical things, having to do our, with our development? At the same time, we do not know what the impact will be in the future to the degree that we can understand that, predict. And account for how it is we're gonna do that. Because I, I'm sounding like I'm on a soapbox, but I think it's inequitable that we would do that. Potentially to the detriment of future generations that are gonna live here, who don't have a way to understand in the way that we do. What the implications will be with respect to property taxes when we do that without understanding what the flow of monies is to. Uh, to balance those uh, those budgetary items. So I strongly feel that we need to have this as soon as possible. From my point of view, we should have had it yesterday.
Councillor Ferguson?
Um, Mr. Mayor, I, I'm really gonna fall on, oh, can you hear me?
Yes, we can hear you. Yeah, I'm good.
Can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay, I gotta really fall on your advice right now, because this is very, very, very important, uh. What has just been said, and I really, really ask you. You meet with staff on a regular bas- basis. You're the mayor. What's being said today, Mr. Mayor? Is there some sort of lack of confidence on behalf of the department that administers our budgets and our budget? Is there some sort of lack of confidence on behalf of the department that administers our budgets and our budget formula? And how that's done? I don't know what that means, I don't know how we can get answers on that. But I've been involved with at least twenty budgets, and every step of the way, we have had a process. And Dr. McIntosh is aware of that, there's a process in which we have to be accountable, our budgets, we have an audit, we have a financial report. We have a number of things, and Mr. Mayor, if we're not doing that, please tell me, or please tell the staff at this point in time. To provide that stuff, because I'm a little bit confused right now.
To bring some clarity, this, what we're doing today is part of the process, we're certainly going through a process, we've had several, several presentations by staff. So far, I think we're both moving on quite well, working with staff to ensure that we're meeting our timelines and that decision-making points are adhered to. So we don't fall behind, but we're taking our time, making sure that everyone, every one member of council is heard. And today's a big part of that, so certainly lost confidence, but this is a process, and sometimes you have to go through this discussion. It's, you know, we're hearing a lot of different points of view, and that's healthy, we're wanting to hear, we're wanting to get that. But at the end of the day, it's council that has to make some decisions. But today, other than dealing with some referral motions and things that we're excited to hear, aren't a lot of decision points on the budget itself. It's more about, I mean, together on what we can agree on with the five priorities and next steps. Mr. Backen, do you want to clarify that?
Well, that's correct, your worship, but I take the comments as they're quite helpful. What we're seeing is, I think we're beginning to get into a bit of a debate in terms of the priorities, whether they be five or seven, and the ranking of them. And Counsel Arson's been very helpful in articulating what she thinks is very important and why that's very important. And I think we're gonna have to deliberate upon that and take those comments seriously in the context of the remaining priorities. Because as we've heard from Dr. McIntosh at the moment, I think there may be about fourteen on the table or something. And this is a process that's very important, that has to be reconciled. And I would also even go further, because I know that there's members of council out there that were quite thoughtful in terms of listing other priorities that may also merit consideration. That they, they had a great deal of difficulty in going from their number down to two. And I think it would also be prudent to hear those out as we go forward, because I think that the, if we don't do that. We're just going to have to deal with them in a different forum, and I think that if we can carve out some time and deal with them in this forum. It's much more helpful, because we can deal with them holistically and determine exactly what our top five and next five and next five actually is. As opposed to trying to interpret which ones are gonna go where and how they fit, so that would be our suggestion.
Thank you, so, Dr. McIntosh.
Great, thank you. Okay, so I will consider that a failed attempt to clarify the next items. But while you were doing that, I was updating charts so that we've got something to look at. So let's go with Mr. Backen's suggestion that we go to the topics. At best, we want to make sure we unpack the topics that came up. And then perhaps I can show you something that either today or another day, we can select the priorities. Let's finish the discussion. The first one that came up, in no particular order, just the list that I have, is the budget process. Now, there are two, three aspects to the budget process that were brought up. One was twenty twenty-two, which is different than twenty twenty-one. Which is different than starting to debate what's in twenty twenty-one. So, I think it was Counselor Richter first who brought it up, so let's, if I can, let's start there. And see strategically where our discussion goes, as opposed to having a budget debate. Counsel Richter?
Counsel Ferguson, what are you on your, the point you made earlier? Counsel O'Leary?
Yeah, without hearing from Counselor Richter first, but I, I would say that this is, you know, this is an important topic. However, I don't think that we should be considering a change of budget process for the twenty twenty-one budget. I think we're halfway to three quarters of the way through it. But I do think that we should be looking at what is our budget process going forward? So, once we finish the twenty twenty-one budget, I think we should start having discussions around budget process for twenty twenty-two and not waiting until we're in the middle of it. And there are some other things around that, specific topics on budget that we should also wait. But, for example, we brought up the concept of levies, which we all decided wasn't appropriate right now, but it might be in the future. So I just think we need to come up with, discuss our process, but it should be after the twenty twenty-one budget's done, and I do think it's important.
Thanks. We'll continue, and then I'll, with you, your worship, and then we'll circle back to me, and then we've heard from everybody.
Counsel Woodward.
Yeah, so I'm gonna try to be in the, try to, try to see if we can find a middle ground on this one. I mean, I, I share some frustration with the budget process, but I'm not sure that I'm as frustrated as some others. I think every year that I've been here so far, we've talked about the budget process. And now we're hearing about how we're waiting until we're in the middle of the budget process. I think people have been raising frustration with the budget process for two years now. At least while I've been here, and I've heard about it prior to that. So I don't think people have waited until the middle of the budget process to raise the budget process. Just seems every year, we're always pushing, we're always talking about it next year. It's always next year, next year, next year. And I'm willing to accept that, that's fine, if people don't want to look at the budget process, just tell us that, we don't have to keep asking.
Thank you, and certainly, certainly always looking for assistance in how, how to improve things. Staff are very receptive to that, so far, with what we have, I think staff have been adapting their presentations. Tailoring to what council wants, but you can always have more information and advice from council. Counsel, record.
Yes, thank you very much, Mr. Mayor, and I apologize to you and council. I just had a phone call from a very irate resident over parking issues, so it's another one of the problems on the table. Anyway, yes, going back to this budget process thing, I think this is an ideal opportunity, I've expressed this opinion to council before. For us to be looking at getting back to our core requirements, the basics that we are required to provide. In terms of services under the legislation that governs us. It seems to me that the proposals that are in front of council right now, in terms of projected tax increase anywhere from six point seven one to nine point. Something, nine point six one, I think it is, is just, it's just not. A great idea in this particular time of COVID and COVID recovery that we're facing. So I would like to very much put restructuring the budget process on the table. Because for the last twenty years, it's the same game that we play all the time. It's the, okay, here's the budget now, if you want it lower, what are you gonna cut out of it? Well, it's not my job to go line by line and cut things out. That's staff's job. I think it's my job and council's job as oversight to say, no, we're not gonna have a ten percent tax increase this year. We're not even gonna have a five percent, the best we can do is cost of living. So this is what I was getting at when I asked to have this topic put on the table. We have to start looking at this budgeting process differently. Because what's happening is we just keep adding and adding and adding to a base budget that's never reviewed. And that's the problem. Anyway, again, I apologize, Mr. Mayor, and I'm not gonna answer my phone anymore today.
Okay, thank you for that. It was Dr. McIntosh.
Well.
Counsel Long has a.
Yeah, I don't want to get into another fight with Counselor Richter, but I mean, the document I got today didn't say there was gonna be a six to nine percent tax increase. So that's not accurate, as far as I'm concerned, and there has not, there has been no prescribed number for a tax increase yet. So, you know, this is a public meeting, I don't think we should be saying those things, and adding and adding and adding. That could be the council's opinion, and I respect it, okay, I do. But this is a public meeting, and when councillors say things, people believe them often. And I don't share those views, so we're in a budget deliberations, all kinds of things can happen. So please, let's be careful on the comments that we're making, in my opinion, thank you.
So yeah, so this is just a discussion on the budget, I've heard, you know, the process, always looking for advice from council, how to improve the process. And I know several years ago, Counsel Sparrow had come up with the, the online, you know, the idea of having online. Go on and staff created something, got something where you can go on and start playing, well, if we add, you know, ten more police officers, what happens to the budget? You can play that game, I think, it's always been, staff have been receptive to ideas from council. That's just one example, there've been many good ideas from council to help improve the process, always looking for ways. Mr. Backen, your comments?
Thank you, worship, just very, very briefly, I think some very good points were raised, but I think I'm beginning to understand the, the challenge. There's a bit of a difference between a budget policy and the budget process. And I think what we're hearing is those are being wrapped up together, and Dr. McIntosh perhaps can help us on that. Because as was said, just as an illustration, last year, we budgeted for an increase on the RCMP complement of ten members. That has a certain cost associated with it. That cost alone, provide, I shouldn't say that, that cost alone, together with the fact that seventy-five percent of all of our expenses are effectively for salaries. Means that we're going to be in a situation that would exceed the cost of living. Why? Because we've increased our services, that's a policy decision, it's very meritorious. But it also means that we were faced with that. The only way to deal with that then is to reduce or eliminate other services. And I take very much, take seriously the comment that can staff do so? Well, we can, but quite often we need council's guidance, only because as we brought them forward, the council decision has been historically, and not concurrently. That we don't want to reduce those services. So we're, we're left in a situation where we have finite money, but infinite, I guess, desires for expansion. And that's the, the challenge in the policy, I think, that maybe Dr. McIntosh wants to comment on. Because to staff, it would seem more, I think, logical that if there's a situation to drive some of the revenue pressures down. That we would then instead be, instead of adding anything, we would be subtracting. And of course, that's the great challenge in this environment, because COVID has exacerbated that and made it more challenging. But Dr. McIntosh, the policy versus process issue, I think, is the key here.
Uh, Jack, anybody, sorry, your worship, anybody else before?
I have this, two more, Counsel Ferguson, Counsel Arson, and Counsel Long, if you wish to begin. So Counsel Ferguson.
Oh, yes, I think, I mean, it's been a great discussion, I think, when budgets come up, we're very, very serious. We spend an awful lot of time, energy, and effort, we discuss it with staff. And I think that the budget process is always a difficult thing for all members of council. And yet, as much as we don't have a lot of say on paperclip or some pens or pencils or office stationery. We do have the council decision to make budget decision regarding, as Mr. Backen had just said, RCMP. Land uses, opening up new areas, major projects. There's a number of things that we can make absolute changes to, and as we've done in the past, and consistently done in the past. So that opportunity has always been there. And, you know, we can always cut services in other areas which our public don't want, but that reduces budget, budget costs as well. Now, under COVID, we're certainly restricted under a lot of challenges, and a lot of frustration out there and concern. And a lot of people are nervous about that. So the cost of living also, that is really changing from community to community, province to province. And it's not really all that clear as to whether it's a two point one one day or a four point six and X. Because the cost of food and the cost of other things keeps, keeps changing from community to community. So it's a good debate, but we do, as a council, have decisions over how much we charge at a budget time.
Counsel Arson.
Yes, thank you, worship. I think that these comments are also very helpful to inform some of the sense of where we're coming from. And I do support some of the prior frustration about trying to get our budget process being altered in some way. And at what point do you actually do that? It's like a car traveling down the highway, well, at which point do you want to take the steering wheel and turn it off to the left or the right? So I think there's some rationality in looking at COVID nineteen as our inflection point. There have been prior discussions having to do with the degree to which we are deviating or somehow evolving away from our characteristic. Or historical costs of looking after roadways, infrastructure, potholes, those kinds of things. And so, you know, for me, I, I'm a bit conflicted about, at what point do we actually just take the reins and say? No, this is something we need to do right now, so that's why I put forward twenty twenty-two. But I also think that, further to Mr. Backen's point about, you know, staff having the relevant information from departments, bringing it forward. I certainly know that other council colleagues and other jurisdictions have definitely taken the perspective that. The council governance job is to set, and inappropriate, I guess, under our circumstances, or what we think is reasonable. Set a property tax limit, and then send that message directly and early in the budget process back to staff to say, for example. We would accept two percent, or we would accept three percent. Please go back and look at your numbers that you've generated and all the different jobs in the categories. And then please bring us back options to choose from what we think is a reasonable range, from a lower end to a higher end. And I know that we do that in terms of the budget, where we separate out certain items and put it in there for public consultation to say, for example. If you want four more fighter, firefighters, this is how much it's gonna be on the budget. So I, I do think that there are some things that we can still do, even though we're midstream in our process. To make sure that we are generating enough direction to staff to know. That we're not gonna get to a point where, for example, and this is just a wild exaggeration, but truly. If it were to be nine percent that we thought we'd be able to fulfill all the requests and ongoing works. That we could know that staff would come back, and they would give us their analysis of what that would look like. What would we have to do, or what would that look like versus what would four percent look like? And where we would have to, to use a characteristic term, cut the fat in order to get to that number. So I, I think from a governance point of view, that that would be actually helpful for us to be able to do. And even as soon as, coming up today, there might be an opportunity to make that recommendation. To go, for staff to go back to each department and look at all their budget items and say. We have now been given direction to look at, for example, three percent increase or cost of living increase, or whatever it is. So that we can have some certainty as we carry on these conversations, that there will be some measure to know what that would look like. Before we're actually starting now to vote on that and put it forward to the public. So I think there's room for change, it may seem incremental, and I do agree, we need to completely overhaul in twenty twenty-two. But I don't think that should stop us from making changes, more or less as we go. Thank you.
I agree with a lot of what Counselor Ernestson has said, and she's right. We're going about this backwards, and I give a great deal of credit to Counselor Woodward. Who in the two years that he's been on council has managed to bring us another ten police officers. Which is a need in the community, at the same time as he was able to find other things to remove. That kept the overall tax impact down. But I don't think councillors should have to do that job, I really don't. Our job is to set the limits. And I, you know, if we got five point four seven million dollar grant, which is a five point four seven percent tax increase this year. We've got no guarantees we're gonna have it next year. So if we build a budget this year, which includes that, how do we cover for that five point four seven next year? And this is the way it always keeps building and building and building. You know, maybe this is the year to take a dramatic stance, maybe this is the year where we say, okay, until we get recovered from COVID. We're gonna put a freeze on all hiring, no new hires. Maybe that's the kind of action or policy that we have to set. But we don't seem to have that flexibility within the process that we're using right now. So thank you, Counselor Ernestson, for your comments, I really appreciate them.
Counsel Ferguson.
I have to say, what's being said has been very, very, very helpful, and I think that you're right, every single.
I I think as I say, what's what's being said has been very, very, very helpful, and I think that you're right, every single grant we get, where are we going to get it next year? Uh and that's can be consistent with Park and Rec and with other things as well. Uh I think we do have uh the 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 wherewithal to put freeze on hiring and to do do many, many other things. This, I have heard this debate before, and I think that's uh where you get a whole list of uh people uh who have been in the business. Um Mister Cuff or other George Cuff or others, it's, what is, when is a a budget, a staff budget? And when is a budget, a council budget? Because I've heard this debate many, many times before, I've always erred on the side, we should have a council budget. I know that Delta, and that was kind of spoon- fed to me by uh an individual one time, uh they believe in um uh very much so in a staff budget where uh it's like uh that it was the comparison given to me by the interesting people from Delta, it's like buying a bag of peas, that's all there is to it, just get a cheaper rate on the peas. And I said to the person, no, it's not necessarily that way, but that's the way Delta did. They really believe that council wasn't important, that they just did basically a staff budget and council just rubber stamped it. I still believe that council should have a decision, so that's where, when you look at at the different types of budgets, um that's where you have to determine which one's going to be a staff budget, which one's going to be a council budget, and that's important to me, Mister Mayor, thank you.
Mayor Fros, Mayor Fros, you're muted.
Yeah, thanks, I was muted, I was talking away, my lips are moving, I'm going to see those masks. Uh basically, I think all budgets are ultimately a council budget, we vote for, we separate, whether, uh but we also rely on our professional staff to provide us with the information that we need to make a good decision. So it is a balance in council and staff, through the process, at the end of the day, council has to approve it. So yes, it is council's budget, but we could not do without input from staff. So I want to respect staff and all of the work that they do, and we work together as a team with them to come up with the best possible number to operate our corporation, the benefits, our residents in the most efficient way. However, there's always trade-offs, there's always a balance, it's always, you know, you you want to do one thing, something else has to fall off. It's, we we've been doing that, we're trying to go through a budget, so, you know, yes, it's a council budget, but staff, without staff, being a partner with staff, we we couldn't. I've got Council Whitmarsh.
Yeah, I guess. Yeah, thanks, I I guess I um, you know, certainly understand the comments that are made uh by uh Councilor Ernestson and Council Victor. I and I appreciate that we do probably need some uh maybe some thinking as we move forward on budget process. Um all of our budgets, I agree with uh Mayor Fros, all of our budgets are council budgets that we end up approving. Uh we vote on them and make a decision, it's a council budget. Uh we could not build a budget from scratch ourselves, we don't have the intimate knowledge of each of the departments and areas. And so staff does come forward with, this is, this is what it costs, this is where we're at today and and outlines what those costs are. We as a council members, during the year, we come up with all sorts of ideas that we bring forward to the budget process that we ask staff to consider and put in, that's a council input into the budget. And then we get to vote on it and decide, and once we vote on it, it is council budget. And, you know, I I think that there are certainly um some merits to the idea of having a staff work at, say, certain percentages of a three percent, a four percent, a five percent budget, maybe presenting some options to council for us to consider um and work through, but ultimately, it is a, it is a council budget, but we need staff, staff can't, we can't do it ourselves. Uh there's just way too much knowledge and information needed for us to just start creating our own council budgets. So it is something that comes from staff, and uh we could, we have a different process, um I think we could improve it, we could get better. But we're three, we're halfway through this year, I think there's a lot, a lot we can do this year, but I like Council Woodward, I don't want to keep talking about it every year. So I'd like to see us start developing the twenty twenty-two budget process, as soon as we complete the twenty twenty-one budget process, which is probably in March to April, uh we should start having our conversations at that point about what the twenty twenty-two budget process is going to be like. And give us six months to discuss it and start working on things before we even start talking numbers, we would just simply be talking process, thanks.
Office, I have them, uh Council Whitmarsh.
Yeah, I just want to concur with that, I appreciate uh Council Whitmarsh wanted to look at it, I I just, you know, I I agree, it's a bit late in the twenty twenty-one process. To change the process, I just feel like we've had this conversation before, and I, I just, I would like to just know if we're not going to change the process for the, you know, the last uh remaining budget of this council in twenty twenty-two, that that maybe we kick it to the next one, because we do seem to be discussing this all the time. Um we have a difference of opinion, you know, what, how do we define council budget versus, could I have this, the screen sharing stopped, please, I'm trying to um distracting, I'm, okay, I'll try to continue, yeah, thank you, um to train your thought here, we've got a difference of opinion in staff budget versus council budget. And I think that's the the underlying, the underlying issue, if if council doesn't feel like they're participating fully in the budget or that we're presented with a draft budget, you know, with a month to go before the bylaws are due, it doesn't leave a lot of time for council to weigh in. So I think, I did, there's some way to maybe find a middle ground here, find the right balance where we don't have to draft the budget. And I agree, there's no expectation or ability to do that, we don't have the numbers, we don't have the daily, the daily totals and the 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 bank account balances, so. Um but find some way to move the needle a little bit here and and uh give some of the other members of council what they feel would be a a more direct role in the budget. Um, you know, I I do share some frustration with it, but again, I'm new and I I'm still learning the process from the inside. I would like to see some ability to to have more of an impact on what the end of the budget looks like, and I I don't feel like I have very much. So um I think that's the core issue, and and I think it will take a long time to to figure out how we're going to get to that middle ground. But I I don't think we've found it, and and I'm frustrated, if people are frustrated that they don't feel like they have a role in the budget that they want to have. And if staff don't, don't feel like they're, you know, don't want to hear about this either, that somehow this this process isn't working for council, I'd like to find the solution. Um and and see if we can do better, but I I'm wondering really if there's enough time left. Because I don't want to be discussing it in the summer and just go around and around in the same circle if there isn't uh in our majority to really look at this. I don't want to go through the motions and pretend that we're going to change the process if there's no plan to do so, thanks.
Council Long.
Yeah, I feel I should say something, I mean, I've been involved with many organizations and having to put budgets together, worked for Trinity Western University for a number of years. And it's a, it's a, it's a process that is a collaboration between staff and and council, in my opinion. So it isn't one or the other, it's an exercise that we go through together to better understand what our needs and requirements are. Many years, we increased taxes because there are things that the taxpayer wants to have, more police, more infrastructure, so, and it can, it can be affordable. In the many years I've been on council, uh I've heard many times, hey, as long as you provide the services, I don't mind paying the taxes. So I I don't think there's a problem with the process, I think there's been a problem perhaps with all of us, uh uh you know, finding where we fit into that uh that that formula, let's say. But I I suppose last year and this year are different years, this is, this is COVID years. So maybe I could support uh picking a number that is affordable and saying, okay, for the next year or two, we're going to have to find a way to bring a budget in that fits this number, because this is the number that we feel that our community can bear, considering all of the COVID aspects and who can afford and who can't, uh you know, it's it's a different, a much different formula that we're going to have to uh put together this year than any other year because of COVID. So um anyway, I just thought I'd I'd make my comment there, I I don't, I don't feel there's anything wrong with staff. And I think it's appropriate that staff and council forge through an extremely difficult, complicated uh process to come up with a fair, a fair amount of uh whatever the tax increase is going to be, but that's, that's the gig we've got.
Council Rick.
Thank you, Mister Mayor. Uh I appreciate what Councilor Long has just said, because that's exactly the approach that Metro took this year. Um prior to this year, Metro had um significant increases projected in all the utilities as a result of the um capital projects that are needed to support a a growing region. Uh but they said to staff that the region can't handle lease costs at this time. So staff, to their credit, did come back and they scaled the budget back. And I think that's what we have to start doing too, we have to start saying, no, our community can't afford this, we need to scale it back. And sometimes I wonder if the policies we have in place, which were put in with very good intentions over the years, are perhaps creating stumbling blocks to the freedom and flexibility that a council has uh to put a budget together that is a council's budget. I um I appreciate the sentiments of some members of this council saying that it's a council budget. I don't share those sentiments, I've never thought the budget is council's budget. I've always thought the ca- the budget is a staff budget, the council is asked to endorse. Uh and just as an example of one of those policies that I think could be presenting a stumbling block to us this year, is we have a policy that says we're going to put eight million dollars uh into capital contribution. Well, maybe this is a year we can't afford to do that without having to raise the taxes to an unnecessarily high level. So why are we still stuck with the eight million dollars to capital contribution this year? Why don't we scale that back to five million or half that, four million? There's got to be more flexibility and there's got to be more um more use of of council's collective brain power in determining what's right for this community and what isn't right for this community. And right now, any tax increase that's anywhere near five percent or higher, I'm not even going to say five percent, I think three percent or higher, is just not affordable for this community right now. And it's unfair of us to place that burden on them going forward. Because the three percent or the five percent that we put in this year, we have to cover again next year and add to, and that's how the adding goes along. So I'm uh I'm frustrated with the budget process, I have been for many years, I still am. I think there's a different way, a better way to do things, uh we got to start looking at that, thank you.
Uh Council, oh sorry, Mister Backman, if you want some comments.
Thank you, Your Worship, I think this is actually a good discussion, because it may surprise council a little bit. But staff are about as frustrated with the budget process as is council, in in a good way, uh I think, because uh it's something that is just not uh working all that well, even this year, attempts were made to simplify the budget process to try to to get it to a point. And this comes back to the discussion with Doctor McIntosh about the policies versus the process itself. Uh perhaps an illustration could bring it out, because council should be aware that staff do not consider this to be a staff budget at all. It's much more considered to be a council budget, and I'll give just a couple of illustrations, and and it's all intended to say the council's policy decisions were very wise and prudent. Not saying that's not the case, but it creates these anomalies where there's things that are at odds. Uh for example, uh you're quite right, we're in a COVID recovery year, and there is COVID money being used to bridge. But as we'll see later on today, the number with the COVID bridging money is now about three and three quarters percent, but we're trying to show the revenue, uh I guess, uh push that we're seeing. And last year, as an ex- example, a good attempt was made to add ten RCMP numbers, members which increases the cost. And it was being done so by way of using reserves and deferments and and whatnot, it was uh very uh very shrewd and very bright. But it did kick us over to this year with a bit of an overhang. As we go through this, I I think we can articulate it in in this way. I think if council wishes to see a zero percent tax increase, just as an illustration, um that means effectively we must shrink the organization by two percent, because we know um that our salary increments for union and and uh fire and and all those pieces in RCMP are basically built into two percent. And because seventy-five percent of what we do is going to be salaries, it's going to have an overhang to it. So so just standing still means a contraction, nothing wrong with the contraction, in fact, the contraction can be a good thing. Where do we look to contract? Well, as was referenced, we look to contract by not increasing services, by holding the line on services, perhaps by not hiring more RCMP. But alas, in this community, it's very important because of health and safety concerns to do so, not a problem then. So the next level is where can we look? Well, uh again, a wise decision was made, we have a lot of infrastructure around pools and rec centers not being used. We decided to to bear that cost to bring them back on stream before the economics would justify to to do so. Again, a a very wise move, because there's service levels that need to be maintained, not to, not to suggest that's the case, but is that the business case we would utilize? Not at all. Would we be interested in perhaps consolidating some operations, uh could we do so? Um you know, whether it be rec centers or operation centers or or whatnot, or libraries as an example, we certainly could look at that, but we're very cognizant of the fact that that could affect service levels, and it's something that becomes an ongoing challenge. And uh in trying to reconcile the policies in terms of what we have as to the built-in cost drivers, the increased services versus a process where we're trying to take that policy direction, put it in the process so we can illustrate to council and show council. Uh show council then how we can possibly reduce some of those things. So it's an interesting challenge, because uh one of the key things, I think, that was probably most disheartening to staff is, let's use the phrase, gee, let's cut the fat out again. Um there is precious little fat in the system, because they're they're qualifying, I think what's being happening is we're characterizing services that are of some value to some, but perhaps not a value to others, as being what's called fat. Well, we've known for a number of years that when we compare our complement to other organizations, we're running very lean. So that tells me then, if we aren't truly running lean, that our issue is, it's the services we're delivering that don't have value. And I think the council member that was suggesting, is it time to revisit all of those services? It certainly is and can be done, but the only thing we we fear in that process, and I would say fear is we go through the process and we actually come to the point where we are trying to um effectively add services back in. But I I bring this back to Doctor McIntosh, because again, it's a bit of a policy versus process issue. The 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 policies, uh if they're consistent, then the process can lead us to a lower one, and council can be involved as much as they they have time to do so. And that's not a challenge at all, because we truly don't have a a staff budget at this point, and I'm hearing we don't have a council budget. So our processes going forward then must combine the two into a policy that brings it to be a township budget or corporate budget, because I don't think that uh that it's meeting the needs of all the groups at this point. So back to uh, well, Your Worship, back to yourself at this point.
Uh so I just want to make, Council Ware, at two thirty, is a hard stop, I have to actually adjourn one meeting, we've opened the other meeting, because it is uh open at two, we have half hour. And then we can come back to this meeting, Dr. McIntosh, with some more uh discussion we've had. So I'm going to go through Council Ferguson, Council Davis, and then turn it over to Doctor McIntosh, but just be aware, at two thirty, uh some uh process has to happen. So uh Council Ferguson.
Thank you very much, I really, I'll I'll try to be as brief as possible, I really appreciate the comments by every single member of council. I'm totally thankful, Mister Backman, for bringing uh the back home as to how the budget process works and how what, how hard they work. I've always believed and agreed that we've had a council budget. Uh I did one less than a minute, I'd say that uh I was helped out a number of years ago by a former uh director of finance, he's passed away, Steve Wilcock. And he's passed away since, uh God bless him and his family, but the thing is, he sat me down through the whole budget, was a lengthy document at the time. It was probably about a thousand pages, we went line by line by line, and he explained to me every department, every expenditure and why those expenditure expenditures were put that way. He also believed in the in the reserve, and he had a lot of reserves put up for Township of Langley, including contribution to capital, which we had at one time twelve percent, which paid for the Walnut Grove Pool. So I think it's important that we really spend a lot of time on our budget, and if it comes early next in twenty twenty-two, great. Uh I'll be the, one of the first persons looking to look to uh review it. Um anyway, good discussion, thank you, Mister Mayor.
You know, all the time is gone, I I'm concerned that we're a little off track here. We're making Doctor Mc- uh Gordon McIntosh's job real easy here. Anyhow, we, I I'm a little confused, because I, I, and what we're talking about is real important, and I like it. But is it setting, um I'm just wondering if we're spending, we're, anyhow, I uh I'm, I I guess I I feel like I should go on and say, talk about the budget right now, and I don't know if that's what we started to do here uh before, you, is that what we're talking about, Mayor Fros?
We're talking about, I think, the discussion, it's been a bit of a loose discussion, it's good, but I think council staff here is about process. And so there's been some discussion to take a look at the process and how we do this. Twenty twenty-two, it's been drawn into twenty twenty-one, so I think more of the discussions on on process, and that's.
Yeah, okay, so uh it's just, I'm concerned that, uh I I just, you're getting, uh which is good, a good idea, but, okay.
These are topics, topics in days, I think, so, the uh, you know, not all come together solidly. Not all come together solidly, but you know, they're they're good topics and everybody has good input. So I'm gonna turn it over to Dr. McIntosh. And uh, see where we're at and where where we're going with this, and then I do have to do that uh bit of uh. Move our meeting along. Thanks.
Uh, thanks, your worship. Um, so what I have, what while we were having this conversation, just so Counselor Davis knows. I was making uh good use of my time and listening. Uh, out of the budget, uh, what I hear is three items. One, uh, twenty twenty-one budget guidance. Uh, is that around uh percentages, uh, staff hiring? Uh, particular service targets and COVID recovery. That was number one. Number two, perhaps uh the discussion was more around uh the twenty twenty-two budget model. Process implies steps, but just our whole model, our our approach, uh, you know, how we structure it, et cetera. Then I also heard uh that there's a prompt maybe uh to look at service slash policy uh levels. Uh, to review those. So those were kind of the three things. Uh, and I should point out that would be totally different than the last time you looked at service capacity. Uh, uh, and that's relevant, but this would be totally different. Are there services uh that we no longer should provide? Are there services that if we should provide, uh, we should be changing how they're provided or the level they're provided? Now, with that in mind, as you head to two thirty, uh, would it be okay if I share the screen? Okay, so let's see if I can do this properly, and I I apologize to uh Counselor Woodward. When I did it, I didn't realize I I took over. Okay, can everybody see that? Okay, so what I've done is I took the now items that were now, but notice I've put them in gray. So they're not protected. They're in gray. Uh, so there we've, and let me just very quickly go through so that. Uh, we can think about it. We still have, by the way, uh, six more topics. Uh, we have Willoughby Road, Community Request Policy, Roundabouts, Alder Grove Library. Wall uh water policy and COVID recovery, which we may have sort of covered. So. But as you head to two thirty, uh, here's the candidates, the possibilities. We've got ASE District. Looks like it's coming in July. We've got the Hornbit Housing Options Preliminary Report coming in February. Although there will be steps after that. We have the Development Management Process, the Procedures. You may wanna think about whether that's still a council priority or it's operational, just uh suggestion. Uh, the cannabis, sorry, I spelt it wrong, I think. Uh, Guidelines and Applications uh coming in January. So we're either gonna review the guidelines or the application batch and deal with that. We have the Debt Management Strategy uh Options, and uh it was, you know, the old date was April. Um, so we'll just leave that there. For next items, um, and again, uh, I'll put the new ones in gray, uh, the twenty twenty-one budget guidance, which I just mentioned. Twenty-two uh budget model. We've been saying process, but maybe it's just the whole fundamental model and structure. Um, and I heard May that it should be done after you approve the budget in April, so I just threw a date in there. We have the Neighborhood Plans, uh, Mr. Seffi indicated uh heading towards year end. So I put anything with a date uh before anything without a date. The Future of Farming, we have the Task Force Report coming in December. The Housing Needs Assessment, the Action Plan coming in December. Uh, sorry, I got the Future of Farming twice. That's how important it is, Counselor Davis, and a couple others. Uh, Road Network Financing Options. These, this was previously on the uh list and I didn't take it off. I I'm not sure where that went. The uh length uh Property Strategy, the Community Building uh Discussion. The Equity Framework, doing some research, best practices, coming back with something. RCMP, uh, RCMP, the future, uh, the Langley's uh discussion. And then the Service Policy Level Review. So these are all candidates, uh, possibilities that you uh. Whether it's today or a follow-up, we'll massage to come up with your product. For advocacy, if I got it right, Counselor Richter, uh, the one that maybe was highlighted, I think, was the BC Housing. But I wasn't sure whether it was Quantlin or BC Housing, but I I know you said we should move one of those, so just some clarity. We have some follow-up items, uh, which are the Twenty-Fourth Avenue Update, uh, the RCMP Update. The North Langley Truck Route Update, if I have that one right. The Alder Grove Downtown Incentives Report. I put refresh, you know, just trying to find a word that may. It wasn't a a rethink of the whole thing. Operationally, if I got it right, there is uh the CPO, and I I didn't know the ending of those words. So this is just uh based on the conversation, how I was beginning to kind of shape it out. Uh, for you, uh, you know, as we move forward, we could obviously move these things wherever you want. So uh, that uh, so that's kind of where we're at with um six more topics to discuss.
Well, thank you very much, uh, Dr. McIntosh. Uh, certainly, uh, a lot of work. Wonder if we can do this all in one one uh one day. I'm just gonna ask Mr. Back, and we've got a couple minutes left. Just uh to guide us through the next little bit, we should spend another half hour, an hour on this. And uh, then what what I'll do is ask for motion to adjourn this meeting. We'll then open the next meeting, and then a motion to adjourn that meeting. Then we'll come back to this meeting and open it again and carry on. So uh, if uh, uh, we get to two thirty, we do wanna uh end at four. So I think we could spend another half hour on this, but Mr. Back, if you could provide us some.
Yes, your worship. I I think it'd be prudent to spend as much time as we can on the priorities to try to finish off the the list today. So I do like your suggestion of a a two thirty, adjourning this briefly, calling the next meeting to order. Adjourning that, coming back and finishing off this with Dr. McIntosh's help and perhaps even inviting him just to observe the early stages of the budget update. And I I say that only because it's truly not a budget meeting if we're gonna be doing it from three to four. It's gonna be quite uh, quite condensed, I think. And and quite indicative of uh kind of the summary sheets we're using from when we started the process back in uh October, November. As we began this, launched the process going forward in terms of trying to determine uh how we could cope with so many, so many of the unknown factors we've been dealing with. From the COVID situation, which has been taking a lot of time to try to determine the impact of that on terms of uh usage levels by the public and some of our facilities. And the staffing levels and what that means, because as you'll see, we're proud to announce we're at ninety-five percent, I think, in the. Some of our use usage rates, however, that usage rate is ten percent of what it was before. So really, we're more like at nine point five percent of what we were before with a full staff complement. Just an illustration to see how complex this environment is. So your suggestion of uh of doing that uh two thirty, adjourning. And coming back and doing it, I think, so we can get as far as we can today would be uh be very wise.
Okay, I'll ask for motion to adjourn this meeting. Have a motion, please. Counselor. Counselor Davis, second question. Is our discussion almost in favor? Opposed, carried, and we're gonna immediately go into open the other one, and then uh come back to this one, then we'll take a little bit of a break. Uh, with that, I would like to uh bring the special meeting for uh council for budget purposes. Uh, in order. Uh, the first item is the, I'm often see the trend items. Can I have a motion, please?
Remove.
Almost in favor? Any opposed? Carried, thank you. Motion to adopt a minutes, a special post, council meeting for budget purposes. All with favor? Opposed, carried, thank you. Now ask for a motion to adjourn to uh. To adjourn this meeting, do you have a motion?
Adjourn this meeting.
Uh, Counselor Davis and Secretary. And second, Counselor Whitmarsh, uh, Counselor Richter, question.
Yeah, I just have a request. Somebody's got an open mic that's got noise point on in the background, and we can't hear anything. So please don't have an open mic if you've got something running in the background. Thanks.
Yeah, and further further to that, your worship, we have, we still have a serious problem, at least I do, with Counselor Davis's, cuz I'm getting nothing but. So maybe, can we deal with that in the break? Maybe I could help out.
Sure, we'll take a little bit, yeah. Offline. Okay, thank you. So with that, I'm gonna call the question on on adjournment. All with favor? Or carried? Thank you. Now, uh, before re-convening the next meeting, uh, I'd suggest a ten-minute break. And we'll come back, ten minutes. So I see two thirty on the wall, so two forty, we'll come back.
Okay.
Hey, Bob, are you there?
Yeah, I'm gonna phone you, okay?
Okay.
I'm gonna phone you right now.
Okay.
For the information of staff just entering the meeting, we are going back to the Council Priorities Meeting briefly, probably about a half hour, and then we will be back to the. Uh, budget meeting. Thank you.
Discussion, but maybe council. Certainly, uh, uh, I don't wanna, you have a good discussion, but carrying the time. Maybe uh move through. So I'll turn it over to you, Dr. McIntosh.
Uh, how, uh, yeah, thank you, your worship. Uh, perhaps at a certain point, we say, um. We're where we're at, and uh as as you could see, I was trying to. Uh, create something we could look at to make some uh decisions. So uh, perhaps at three fifteen, let's check in and see, notwithstanding, maybe we haven't talked about. All the topics that perhaps uh we can derive what those top items are, so. Uh, so let's see how we do. So uh, does that sound okay, your worship?
Yes, yeah, please, yeah.
So, uh, uh, again, no particular order. It was just the order that they came up. I believe the next one would be uh Willoughby Road. Uh, and that was uh brought up by Counselor Ferguson.
The chart, uh, put it up, uh, again. You can share the screen so we can see it.
Yeah. Want me to share the screen?
Yes, if you could share the screen, so we can see the chart, just sorts in front of us.
Okay, true.
Went through it just before the break. That's a nice picture.
Yeah, okay, and uh, there, can everybody see it?
Yes, yeah, so just.
Uh, and I I apologize. I think there's uh, whoops, probably a typo here and there. Not as good as Wendy. Okay, so uh, so Willoughby.
Excuse me, can you make that? Uh, I think if we've got your screen and. Sort of doubled up here. Is there a way to?
Can you?
Change the view.
Um, now let me s-. Um. I'm, I'm. Can you see it now?
No.
No.
Uh. Okay, let me try again. Uh, I mean. Does that look?
That's good. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, so we'll keep that in the backdrop. As we hear these discussions, I'll do my best. To uh add them in to our list. Is this making sense for everybody, just how I'm trying to give us something to look at?
Okay, I think I think you've done a good job in trying to put together what one of our comments.
Yeah.
So with the plan now, it's just to decide if we should stay on and the now or the next, is that what we're going to exercise?
Uh, well, uh, or I thought we would do that at three fifteen and.
Okay, sure.
Continue with uh the ones that came up in case one of them should be up here.
Yeah, okay.
Why don't we try twenty minutes, see where we get? Uh, so the next one would be uh Willoughby Road. And do I need to stop sharing the screen? For us to hear from Counselor Ferguson?
Uh, no, I think you can go ahead.
Okay, okay.
But Counsel Ferguson, did you wish to uh to speak to this, you put it on the board? Now, I see Counsel Whitmarsh stand up, so we'll go back to Counsel Ferguson, Counsel Whitmarsh.
Uh, yeah, just a a question that I have. When I look at this list, um, on next, it includes a topic called Road Networks. And I'm wondering how we're differentiating this topic of road networks uh from uh the specifically the Willoughby. Uh, roads, and um, i- is the, is it intended to have two items related to roads? Or is this really all the same item talking about um traffic and um flow of traffic? And how we doing roads and so on in various areas. Obviously, Willoughby is one of the hotspots, but. Um, is that what, are there two topics or is this just one?
Uh, if I could, if I think, and then I think you have a couple of hands. I believe uh, the Road Network was already on the list. And that Counselor Ferguson specifically brought up Willoughby Road as a new item, so therefore there are two different items at this point.
Okay, I guess I'm just having trouble differentiating the two, cuz I thought Road Networks really implied a lot of that was around Willoughby, but.
Could be.
I may be misunderstanding the topics.
It could be. Uh, and perhaps uh if Counselor Ferguson is there, we could hear from him before. Uh, to clarify, then perhaps go to Counselor Woodward.
Okay, thank you.
Awesome. Thanks, Counsel Ferguson. Are you uh, no? Uh, I'll go to Counsel Woodward.
Yep.
And back, Counsel Woodward.
Yeah, I'm gonna want, before I speak, I'm gonna want a similar clarification from Counsel Ferguson. What exactly we're discussing, what the intent is here with this item, uh, before I can discuss. I mean, I've got some thoughts around it, but I should probably get those clarified. I don't wanna waste time talking about something that isn't the case.
Uh, I think Counsel Ferguson said that, so maybe we'll go on to the next item and come back to this.
Um, the, another one that perhaps is uh clear, roundabout, uh, which I believe. Counsel Ernestson brought up.
All right, sir. You're muted.
I did the opposite to what I was supposed to do. That happens sometimes. Um, yes, thank you. So um, through your worship to uh the rest of council. Uh, I I'm not sure about other individuals, but my observation and why I wrote this uh was a policy in the Township of Langley. Which um apparently does not include what I consider to be public art installations or installations of that ilk. That can apparently uh come and be um situated in roundabouts. And I have to assume in other appropriate places on public roadways where it doesn't in any way refer. To a council-directed policy. So I understand our public art policy and what its parameters are, but this does not apply to that. And I thought it would be helpful under the circumstances because in light of the fact, from my point of view. That any business or entity around and or joining potentially a roundabout could consider. That they wish to have some kind of representation in in a public roundabout, I found to be problematic. Without having any guidelines about what that could look like, and I'll just leave it to everybody's imagination to try and suggest, you know, it could run the gamut. And so I'm not suggesting administrative staff doesn't uh review these, but I think it's really critical, especially. From my also point of view, that installation is one thing, but then the eventuality is that public art of any type has to be maintained. Because it is outdoors, and the degree to which we have the funding or wish to receive that. Seeing that it's in a, in a public interface, I think is a a challenge, and that's why. seeing that it's in a, in a public interface, I think is, uh, a challenge, and that's why I brought this forward. Thanks.
Yes, uh, the listener will last stop, um, Counselor.
Yes, thank you, um, Counselor Arneson, I was just wondering, are you referring to the Trinity Western statue that's in the roundabout? Because I've heard about this too, and a lot of residents have been questioning, how did a Trinity Western statue get into the middle of a public roundabout? And I'm just wondering if perhaps staff could give us a bit of an explanation on that? Um, are they paying to have it there? Did they pay to put it there? Like, how did that get approved? Because, or, or is the roundabout on their property? Is that, is that what the problem is? Like, I, I just don't understand how that decision with a statue of that size did not hit the council table.
Staff, I'm sorry, to Counselor Whitmarsh, and staff, Counselor Whitmarsh.
Yeah, um, I guess my comments are around, um, that thi- this type of issue, it is an important issue for us to consider, and it kinda ties in to, for me, uh, the same kinds of issues that we have around what we're doing with crosswalks, what we do with roundabouts, what we do with any of these kind of places, and we don't have any kind of policy that deals with any of that. Um, so far, uh, council has really gone on a case-by-case basis, some come to council, some don't. Um, and that's exactly why the equity framework is so critical, and it's why I wanted to have it in before we made any kinds of decisions around this, uh, but we're here today, and, uh, I think we need to move forward, and, uh, I think any policy that comes really comes out of the equity framework, and I wouldn't wanna shape any policy until we had the equity framework.
So, what a staff, I know, and this is the discussion where I'm always interested, there's an example, uh, that we're using, roundabout, uh, um, North Side and, and Bubba Road, so, uh, Mr. Mack.
Well, thank you, your worship, I can, I can partially update it, and it may require us to go away and get more information, but, uh, the, the premise, I think, exists in terms of what the intention was versus, uh, I guess what the perception is. Uh, what we're seeing there in, in the center of the roundabout is a torch, and it was fairly well established to the staff involved that a torch is actually the symbol of universities and higher learning in many countries and jurisdictions throughout the world, particularly in Europe. And in that regard, it's probably a fitting thing to have a torch, uh, in a roundabout in your university district. Uh, the, the problem with that, though, is there is a great deal of similarity between the torch that's been presented and the university symbol or logo. So while it wasn't intended to actually reflect the university in particular, I think it's understandable that their perception is that it could be viewed as doing so. So, as, as a consequence, as we look at the process that was in place, I think Counselor Arneson is probably not too far off in terms of having a comprehensive global policy that deals with, uh, things that are going to be of public interest, uh, that's whether it be public art or public installations, that they actually, uh, have a, a revision to the process such that they are, uh, brought before council as a matter of policy, and that can then be adjudicated upon. That will make it a bit of a, a challenge for council, and the suggestion of an inclusiveness framework, perhaps providing some guidance, would be helpful, because we are gonna see, uh, similar requests, and, and we can deal with the requests at certain levels by making sure they're not corporately oriented, that they're for not-for-profits or for, um, institutions of, of learning or, or public, uh, purposes. Uh, but we are going to see, I think, probably continued requests and, uh, and, uh, maybe some other types of schools that will be coming forward, or, or entities or, uh, faith-based entities that may wish to take advantage of it the same, and of course, there's a broad diversity in the faith-based network, so, that would be my, 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 s- my snapshot of the issue at the moment.
What?
Uh, that's a-
Counselor. Uh, Counselor Arson. You're muted. You, you're muted.
Yeah, thank you, I, yeah, I, I just wanted to respond to Mr. Backen's comments, because as he will recall, I actually emailed him when I first saw this, so, for me, in the absence of a policy is where it, it's leading to an issue. Uh, I don't take any issue with the fact that this one has been installed, uh, because I don't know what one would do in order to, uh, change any of the dynamics that happen, but it does occur to me that we are going to be faced, as Mr. Backen has suggested, likely, with a number, now that we've seen one, then I have to look at others have used this, well, if we allow it here, what about there? And so I think we're opening up a real quagmire if we don't have a policy, because in fact, public art installation, whatever you call it, is very subjective, it's all in the eye of the viewer. So, Mr. Backen may feel like a flame is representative of higher learning in a university, but in fact, I have to say in this case, it looks exactly like the logo of the university. Um, and so, I just think about the different things I've seen around in Abbotsford, they have a roundabout, and it's got, because they're a fruit-growing center, they've got big raspberries hanging off sort of an abstracted kind of plant. I mean, these are all kinds of things I don't have a problem with, but I struggle with the fact that, A, for me, the critical issue is, what kind of oversight do we have in terms of a policy? So we'll at least know that this is, you know, what's allowable and which is what we support. But secondarily, but no less important, is the installation, well, the installation is another thing, who pays for that? Um, but thirdly, I think most importantly is actually our public art policy calls for monies that are have to be put away in order to maintain the outdoor object, because it does deteriorate over time. So who is responsible for that, is my other question? Is it, you know, and the policy would then have to inform us about what that would look like? Because I think in the absence of that, the worst-case scenario, we could have somebody who's allowed to put something up, allow it to deteriorate, next thing you know, the township of Langley is having to maintain it, or take it out, or whatever it is we need to do over the course of time. So, I wanted to bring it forward, because I think it's something that won't take a lot of time, uh, to consider, I think it could be mirroring the public art policy, but I think it needs to be put in this vacuum that we currently have, apparently.
Uh, Counselor.
Um, yeah, and I concur with Counselor Arneson's comments, when I drove by it, that was the first thought that went through my mind, this is Trinity Western's logo. Why is it in the middle of our roundabout? And it might be a torch, but it's Trinity Western's torch? Like, who approved that, and what did it cost? I'm assuming that, I guess, the taxpayers paid for it, what was the cost of that? And why was that particular torch design chosen?
Uh, so, that, uh, must be just them, or, uh, our staff wanna comment, I, no, I think, we're looking at, uh, uh, worship in a policy direction, but certainly I think there were good questions, and so I'll, I'll refer to, uh, Mr. Backen to see how you, needs to get more information on that. Back.
Uh, thank you, your worship, no, thank you, your worship, the, the cost of the township was negligible in terms of, of the installation and, uh, and whatnot that was provided for by the university is, is a, a representation of the, um, of the public art, now there, there was certainly some, uh, in the township in terms of the roundabout itself, it had some costs associated with that. And the nature of the structure itself, um, is negligent, is, um, maintenance minimal. Uh, I'm not saying it doesn't have any maintenance, but it's maintenance minimal. Uh, the, the issues, I think, those issues are easier to address in terms of the process, the question really is, though, going forward in terms of roundabouts or other public art installations, uh, that are, are compatible, um, is, is, uh, well, as Gord is referenced, is trying to, to, uh, put the installation in, uh, in the context of a policy, uh, so we can actually, um, ensure that we don't have the, um, the friction or frustration with something that, that was intended, didn't quite achieve the mark, but was intended to be, uh, a positive for the community.
Okay, so just as a point of clarification, did I understand, uh, it correctly that Trinity Western provided the sculpture?
Uh, either the sculpture, or the, or the finance, or the funding for the sculpture, I think it was done by a third party, not by Trinity themselves, uh, but it was a representation of something that was intended, as we discussed, to represent higher learning and education, but yes, does have striking similarities to the TWU, uh, logo, in fact, uh, I think it's virtually identical, except for a sash that wraps around the TWU logo itself.
Yeah, it is virtually identical. So, why would we do this for a private organization? And I think Counselor Arneson is quite right. If we do it for one private organization, do we have to do it for all private organizations?
Yeah, I, I don't, we don't distinguish the uni- any university in the university district as being a private one, I mean, I guess, in theory, it could be. This one certainly doesn't have any government funding, uh, and I don't wanna, don't, I don't wanna claim to have the knowledge or expertise in terms of what it, uh, their admissions policies are, because there certainly are some constraints. But it was simply, I think, by the people at the time, viewed as being a, a compatible movement with the, uh, the district itself, and was intended to have a broader representation than any one particular user.
Okay, so when you say the people themselves, I'm just curious, was it a staff committee that decided that, or was it a TWU committee that decided?
Oh, no, it was, it was referenced with the staff on site, and I'm sure it went up to the, the, uh, the process to a number of levels, I don't recall exactly where they went, but it was certainly TOL's, uh, involvement with it that would have to been, uh, engaged to facilitate it.
Okay, well, I'd be curious to get a review on it and to find out, you know, what it would cost to remove it or replace it, thank you.
Uh, Counselor Woodward.
Yeah, yeah, I'm gonna weigh in here a little bit here, I mean, I, I mean, I, I, okay, there's two issues here that I see, is that, um, you know, I don't see any issue with the installation in of itself, um, Trinity Western's a pretty, to me, a pretty important institution in the township of Langley. It's a private university for sure, but it's the only one we have, great, you know, big employer, lots of economic activity. Uh, so I think in the end, I think we should support Trinity Western. I actually have no problem with public art institutions in roundabouts. I think it's kind of a good use of public space. So in the end, I don't think I'd have, uh, object to the specific example whatsoever. Um, but I am sort of concerned, I would like to, rather than focus on, you know, roundabouts per se, I mean, if, if, uh, council recalls, I attempted to get a revision to the public art policy that would allow pub members of the public to actually apply, to, uh, to proceed with some funding or matching funds or locations potentially that could then be considered. I think that's the larger issue here. I think that was what remind me, perhaps Mr. Backen can remind me, I think that's hitting almost a year, over a year now, to get, you know, a two or three-page policy adopted, uh, or revised, so, I think that's really the issue here. Uh, you know, not, not focusing on, on any one institution, which I, I would hope that we all support.
Yeah, and, you know, I think for the purpose of this discussion, that one is an example, but I agree, uh, policy would be placed, we do have policies that I think can easily be adapted, the policy on donations for fences, uh, in the parks, uh, trees in the parks, uh, we can do picnic tables, so, you know, we already have something in place, and that also includes, uh, funding for the maintenance of it, it's a ten-year kind of a, usually ten years, you have to recommit or it falls off, so. So, uh, you know, I think we have some big, good basic policies, and that's really where they should be going, so I agree with Counselor Woodward. Policy, taking longer existing policies and expanding that to do a public art. Counselor Davis.
Thank you, um, you know, maintenance, uh, minimum cost, um, cost of it, um, the, this is why we need a policy. It's actually, to me, it, after, you know, it is, in the university, but, but this is gonna open a box. And, and everybody's, I'd like, I want a cow on a, I would like to put a cow there someday, you know, I mean, and, um, I know that there was a Christmas tree put in Murrayville. There's a private citizen just put it in, and he phoned me the other day, and he was, or he phoned me a year, or he phoned me quite a number of months ago and says, "The township just come and cut it out," and he was mad, he, he put it there, I mean, so this is why, the, I don't wanna get into the details of that, but, this is why, um, equity, um, dignity and inclusion and fairness has to enter, this is private, uh, it's public property, and I have no issues. Um, but you know what? Like I say, I want a cow on one of them. Well, who, why should David Davis have a cow? You know, like, we, we, I, I, I shouldn't go too much further here, because I, I totally agree with a, uh, getting this. Because I can remember, um, what your interpretation of art is, is a symbol of something else to somebody else. So that's why we, that, this, this is, this is important, we need to put something in place that doesn't, um, just all in, uh, into a bind and, and, uh, you know, gets us going on it. So anyhow, that's why we need to look at a policy. Thank you.
I'll take Counselor Ferguson, and then go back to you, Dr. McIntosh.
Yeah, I, I kind of agree what's being said, in particular what Counselor Woodward has said, I mean, I don't have a problem with, uh, uh, the Trinity Western University being a university that does, uh, employ a number of people, it's a, a pri- a private university, but it does, uh, it put Langley on the map as far as, uh, what universities do and, uh, other things. It's an important, um, infrastructure pro- well, it's, it's an important, uh, university for us. Um, also, you know, going forward, yes, if we look, we can do as much as we want on our own, uh, you know, public property. I'm talking about parks, you know, we're talking about, um, uh, our pools, recreation centers and the like. Yeah, we just have to tighten up, uh, what we do, uh, with the community, as you know, the building community, uh, they have to provide public art as well, it's, that's part of our mandate, and, uh, maybe we can learn from Mr. Tilla Metal and some of the staff about what options and what things we can do, so, if we can sit up, sit down and look at ways of, uh, implementing a better tightened process, um, that's good, and I don't have any objection to that, thank you.
Okay, Dr. McIntosh, uh, so it looks like work on policy is something, uh, of interest in doing.
Well, uh, great discussion, uh, so I've done two things. Um, again, always for your consideration, uh, the art amenity, I put art slash amenity, uh, installation policy, so hopefully that covers. Uh, question whether it comes after post-equity framework, just a question. Um, and, uh, I've moved the equity framework up in our list, if you can, uh, conversation. And if I understood it right, um, uh, Mr. Backen, there is a public art policy coming from staff, it's not-
That's correct, there's a, there's at least a framework, and we can, uh, dig that out and complete, uh, or update it to, to include these sorts of situations.
Okay, thank you. Um, uh, your worship, uh, I noticed Counselor Woodward has a hand or, uh, is that just a hangup, is this, uh, I, still a question, or should I move to the next topic?
Woodward, is this on the, uh, policies, policy we just discussed, is on the next side of-
Yes, yes, it is, I just want for staff's and council's benefits, very quick, just to, just to note that I think it is over a year ago that I, I had a notice of motion referred back to staff to generate a draft revision to that public art policy that would provide a process for the public to apply, uh, which doesn't currently exist, so I'd ask for an update on, on where that is and, and why it's taking so long.
Okay, I'll get that put on, on, thank you. Okay, uh, so, Dr. McIntosh, we'll go back to roads, uh, see, Counselor Ferguson's back, so.
So, uh, uh, when Counselor Ferguson brought up, uh, uh, Willoughby Road, uh, you weren't there, so, uh, the question was, and I put it on here, can everybody still see the chart somewhat? Okay, uh, so Willoughby Road, the question is, uh, is it inside the Road Network? And, uh, uh, everybody agreed you should, uh, quickly, uh, briefly speak to it.
Counselor Ferguson, you have to speak there.
Is that me? Yes, certainly.
Right.
I mean, I think it's important, it's, it's part, I, I'm not sure where, I'll have to ask staff where it sits with the budget now. I mean, there's a number of things, maybe we need to sit down through a, a council policy or council priority session and go over, I know we've gone over the number of times, but go over the next steps going forward over the next eighteen months, as to where we're at with it, uh, and looking at a plan and a process, because there's a number of things that happen, has to happen within that, uh, Willoughby core area. Uh, if you drive down those roads, you'll see telephone poles in there, you'll see, uh, some parts of construction, roads, uh, uh, being, um, worked on, being built, uh, we need an update and we need a plan, and we need to see, see some numbers as we talk about planning and preparing for the future, as to what the costs are. Obviously, you know, development pays for a number of things, but, uh, there's some other things we have to look at for going forward for the future, and that's why it's important to keep that front and center, that we're always discussing roads and, and road infrastructures for the future.
Thank you, uh, and I think, uh, Counselor Woodward, whoops, sorry, I, uh, lost that. Um, you had wanted to comment on that topic, uh, I should go back to your worship.
Oh, fine, Counselor Woodward, and I know Counselor Whitmarsh wishes to speak to it, so Counselor Woodward.
Yeah, I'm gonna just kind of, like, just gonna kind of admit, uh, you know, that I don't really understand that, so I just don't really know what the specific objective is, I think, you know, the, the provision of roads, the improvement and the maintenance of roads is something that's going on on an ongoing basis, so it's a strategic priority item, I, I don't fully understand it, so I, I really can't comment, sorry.
Councillor Whitmarsh.
Yeah, well, for me, the 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 strategic priority topic around roads is. Particularly what's happening in in Willoughby and we have, you know, we had lots of conversation around two oh eight. We have different perspectives on council um around two oh eight, but I don't think there's anyone. On the council who would not like to see things improve from a traffic flow in the Willoughby area. Everyone agrees with that. Uh we've talked about the two twelve connector and what that means and how that might impact two oh eight. Uh so there's lots of discussion and uh there's lots of comments that are being made and. You know, and and I think all of us would be, would benefit from a really good, healthy conversation and providing where we wanna move. As a council. So for me, road networks implies largely the Willoughby area and how to prove that, but there are some other. Uh significant roads in Langley that we need to consider. So I'm not talking about regular daily maintenance or how much money we put into. Paving or road repair. I'm talking about improving the traffic flow in our community. Willoughby being a particularly hotspot and maybe some others. So for me. Um the topic that councillor Ferguson brought up of Willoughby, to me, it should be included as part of. The general category of road networks and I think it's a high priority.
Uh yes, I I wanted to get clarification on this. I um. Did councillor Ferguson mean the road network everywhere in the township or just in Willoughby? Because we've spent the last two years talking about Willoughby roads quite extensively. And those roads keep getting closed down by council decisions, so I'm just wondering. What the clarification is here? Maybe councillor Ferguson could uh.
Yeah, I have, I have no, yeah, obviously, uh roads are important, obviously. And I think the uh members of council said, well, what does this mean? And I agree, what does this mean? We have to look at all roads in general and we have to also look at maintenance and things like that, but. Well, I said, I did mention, I did the word war cap when I was mentioning it earlier on. Uh and Mr. Um Doctor McIntosh might not have picked up and that's my fault. War cap means Willoughby arterial roads uh. Uh communication project, but it is, that's what that means. So I wanted that topic as well as other roads updates and how we're making out with sixteenth. Avenue and other ones, but definitely it may be a two or three point segment where war cap would be one. And and other roads and other other networks as well, but certainly I did mention the word war cap. So as other members of of council mentioned, particular um councillor Whitmarsh had mentioned uh. Two oh eight and two twelve connect, yes, those are definitely things I I would like to discuss and continue to discuss.
Okay, well, um I would like to suggest to Dr. McIntosh that this topic be subdivided. Because there's roads in other parts of the township that aren't as busy or as congested. Or as problematic for the taxpaying public as some of the roads in Willoughby right now. So I think the Willoughby roads, particularly two oh eight street, um two oh four street by the schools. Uh Eightieth Avenue are a topic in their own right that need immediate attention. Whereas uh Twenty Fourth Avenue in Brookswood, we haven't even started development in Brookswood yet, so that's not a priority right now. And I'm not even sure Sixteenth Avenue is as much of a priority right now as the Willoughby roads are. So could we break that into two categories? Thank you.
And um, oh, I I've done that, so we'll continue your worship.
Uh yes, thank you, your worship. Um I think that this topic remains to be very uh critical and important. I know that um there has been a lot of discussion, transportation and our networks in the township is exceedingly important. And as councillor Richter has referenced earlier in the day, I think what's happening to some degree is a growth that's happening in certain communities. Has started to take over and set, you know, supersede other of our. Let's see, historical priorities, for example, Old Yale Road and other roads that don't uh receive as much traffic. But still have been on the books for a long time, have a budget attached and it's just a matter of trying to uh generate enough capital to do that. So I I just want to bring this conversation back to the degree that. I think all of this is predicated, or a large part for me is predicated. I have never said that I don't want to borrow money for roads. That would be incorrect, that or a mischaracterization. What is accurate is that I want this to be tied to an understandable framework. So we know where we are vis a vis borrowing this money. And I'll just give an example. So if war cap, for example, this, it probably just sounds very simplistic, but. If war cap could provide some further details. As to the timeline in which the monies that will be coming from those developed areas. And the special levy or surcharge that's going to those properties to build out the roadways. Then I would like to know what the anticipated timeframe is for that. Will that happen in twenty years? Will it happen in five? Could it happen in ten? I think staff is well positioned to be able to try and figure that out. Based on our current rate of development, what what's happening. And I would even appreciate. An annual update about what that looks like, because certainly if you can pinpoint. Strategic areas that you wish to invest money, and I understand that there's an economy of scale. You know, you could borrow the whole thing and just do the whole thing and then pay it back. But to me, it's more prudent to look at. Where can our money best be spent based on where we see the most pressure for this? And it could be on the connector, it could be on two oh eight, but I would like further details about what that looks like. Before I'm willing to commit to more strategic borrowing. So I I think those are inextricably tied together as as things that needed to be managed. They need to be co-managed, similar to what we do with Metro. For example, if we pay for something, we have the certainty to know. That the costs aren't going up like Jericho. At the same time, we're forced to salt money away. But we know that we're gonna get something at a date that crystallizes in the future. So I think that that's a relevant consideration if we're talking about Willoughby, because I understand it is frustrating. Just to keep going over the same ground over and over again and not feel like you're really uh completing the mission. Or getting the project completed. But I still think that there's a couple of small components there that that could be helpful. In making sure that people feel more comfortable in moving forward, such as myself. Thank you.
Thank you. Um I didn't hear you say my name. Um so yeah, uh Willoughby roads obviously are, I think, top of mind um for. All members of council, myself included. Um I wanted to sort of get an update on war cap. Because the last time we talked, um there apparently was no money in war cap, so I just was wanting to. Um have that discussion on when we could anticipate some of that money um coming in there. Um also, I noticed in the budget that there's actually millions and millions of dollars being spent on the connector. On, I think it's from sixty fourth to sixty eighth. So it it would appear from some conversations that we have at council that no money is being spent in Willoughby. When in fact, um you know, we do are spending money from D C Cs um to get some of those roads. Um, you know, started and or finished. So um we're a long ways from obviously getting uh that completed. But so I I and the 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 last thing is, you know, should we borrow money for two oh eight street? Uh what what would be the implications um for for the budget? Um for for this year, for next year, for the next, you know, twenty years or or what that would look like and how. Um, you know, the, again, back to the work app, how that's gonna help um with that. Um getting those roads completed. So those are my comments, but yes, I believe this is a very important uh topic for me.
Yeah, can I hear you too well? Uh is is it me? Okay, thank you. Well, you know, somebody said that we're going over the same roads over and over again. And I've I've been, I've been trying to find the motion. Wasn't there a motion on war cup that 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 was defeated recently? So maybe, you know, we, somebody also said we should get regular updates. I'm not sure where we are with it right now. But uh there seems to be this concentration of efforts on Willoughby and and of course, it's a developing. Community, part of the township and uh and it has its growing pains and will continue to have as long as construction is is occurring there. So it's not a surprise that the the roads are a concern, but we haven't even got Fraser Highway four lane. I mean, you know, two oh eight seems to take, take all of the attention. And you can't even get from one side of the township to the other at certain times of the day. So, you know, it's, I think councillor Whitmarsh said that everyone has just different opinions on here and I sure have a different opinion. I'm not trying to minimize the concerns in Willoughby. Willoughby, in Willoughby, but uh, you know, just you go to anywhere that's highly density, high density and you're gonna find traffic uh issues. I mean, you know, try and get along the ninety sixth avenue with uh anytime during rush hour and that's been there for years, so. Anyway, I don't know, um Dr. McIntosh, where you ended up here, but. Uh it would be perhaps handy, where does staff think we are with that? I think war cap is collecting money and when it gets the money, it'll do the work. I think there was a a notion to advance that, but it didn't pass through council. So are we gonna continue to keep going over and over it again? Or just let it play out? Yeah, everybody's adding their own pet project in there. I'd like to make sure that Sixteenth Avenue isn't forgotten and certainly Fraser Highway. It's a highway, by the way, it's an actual highway. It's not a neighborhood road, it's a highway.
Uh Mr. Suckin, can you make any, uh there's been some um questions raised regarding war cap and and parties, a lot of parties in the country. Maybe you can make some comments on what you personally find.
Uh thank you, your worship. Um. I guess the uh policy has been in place for some time. Uh there is a framework for us to be able to collect funds. That will assist with the acquisition of roads in in the developing areas where the D C C backlog does not. Account for the road dedication because it assumes the road is going to be dedicated as part of the development process at no cost. So the war cap has been structured and the policy adopted by council to address those those areas where we have no. Road component in the D C C program. That said, the way that it's structured, it it allows for. Uh contribution or payment, if you will, however you wanna put that, on the funds at time of rezoning. So even though applications, some applications have had this new requirement imposed upon them, refugee misuse speaking. Uh none have actually reached the stage where the the funds have been contributed. So the last time uh staff checked and councillor referenced that, uh staff did report to council that. No funds have been uh contributed yet. So with that in mind, staff is not sort of sitting on their hands, but rather pursuing. The areas that council identified as being uh more urgent than the others. So the work app itself has a certain network of roads that is identified. Within that, there were priorities identified by council, so staff is pursuing. What actually will be able to, uh we will be able to acquire. Uh as part of our negotiations, at what cost with respect to those areas that council identified as high priorities. So uh as an example, a landowner would be willing to dedicate that at a dollar. Based on understanding that there won't be a loss in in development densities. Whereas another landowner may may argue that they're not in a, in a position to develop in the next foreseeable future. And that such would like to be paid for for the the value of of the land. Uh so those things, we're in the process of finalizing and analyzing. And at some point in the next few months, we'll be able to report to council as to what we believe will be the ultimate cost. Based on the information of that, at that time, because this is a a very fluid situation, as you can appreciate. Uh landowners' positions will change depending on on a a number of different factors. So based on the information collected at the time, we'll be reporting to council as to what it might cost to acquire the land. And then to to construct the the roads, uh either. Through borrowing or through uh, I guess, by by baiting simply until such time as as the funds have been collected. I hope that makes sense.
Maybe you need it. I know, it must be these masks trying to talk to them, I don't know.
Okay, so yeah, so that's good to get this clarified. I appreciate councillor Richter specifying some different categories of roads. I think, I think it'd be great to leave it on there. I don't see any harm in in leaving it on this. We have lots of stuff on the strategic priority list that that doesn't sound like we're gonna do much with anyway, so I'm fine with leaving it on there. I I think it would be good to clarify because some of the comments, I mean, the motion that was, uh councillor Ron reference that was voted down. Uh before the Christmas break, was an attempt to get draft information to council to confirm the budget implications, the cost, the scope. And that was voted down. So I I view it as a definitive result that unless others are gonna pick this up, that, you know, maybe. Maybe there is not much need to leave it on there for a spot for something else. I'd, I'd take council's direction and and decision seriously that. That it won't be pursuing, completing these roads until war cap has the funds within it to pay for them, which I suspect will not be in my lifetime. So. Um I think that that draws it to a conclusion unless there, unless the majority council is gonna go in a different direction. So I question that maybe, I'd like to know some other items like Arness, councillor Arness had mentioned others that that maybe I haven't thought of. That could be on the list rather than something that is just being left there for, you know, for what I perceive to not necessarily be doing much with it. It's really a matter of are we going to uh borrow the money, uh finish the roads? And is the debt gonna be serviced by the war cap uh program? And that's what the motion in December was about and it was voted down. So I I consider the matter to be closed unless there's uh something else. Thanks.
Alright, um, Dr. McIntosh, it's three twenty five. I need to do a check in.
Okay, um so I think we're ending, if I've got it right, in uh five minutes. Uh so we have um two options in five minutes. Uh one is to perhaps magically agree to this uh page. Uh perhaps, uh or at least uh five. Or to agree that this, along with, if you recall. Uh and I'm just gonna, uh that there were a variety of other topics. Like how do we stick to the priorities? How do we deal with C P C? How do we deal with matters arising? How do we deal with the volume of public inquiries? Uh so those were also some topics uh that were uh brought up. So, um in three minutes, I guess. Uh it would seem that maybe the best thing we can do, your worship, is agree. We maybe need another hour, hour and a half to wrap, wrap this up. And we could send this out to everybody so that we can think about it before then or.
So you're, you're thinking another hour, we've uh we've wrapped this up?
Well, I think.
You know, I'm looking at the capacity of council to uh go through this. Some, this is a really good discussion here and.
Yeah, well, I was probably over ambitious. I given that we still have uh Alder Grove Library, uh water policy.
Uh uh Dr. McIntosh, it's not Alder Grove Library, it's the Willoughby Library.
Oh, sorry, sorry, thank you. Uh Willoughby Library and the water policy. And our experience has been that when we go back and really just wanna make decisions about these. Uh that we tend to open them up again and it's good discussion, right? That staff are really clear what we're talking about. So, you know, that's my fear, like in a short little period, uh we'll do token, uh just, you know. We come out in two minutes and say that's the list, we do uh the whole priority setting of this service. My recommendation is that we uh, good work today. Uh we've normally spent a whole day on this. We normally check in every three months. We haven't been able to do that in twenty twenty. So in fairness to all of us, a good discussion, um uh maybe we consider um.
So I I potentially agree, I think the time you might follow up. Uh very soon would be appropriate, it all depends on your schedule and we meet Mondays. And uh it's, we're, you know, working hard to process a budget. Mr. Backen, is there an opportunity that we could have a follow up in the very near future? Perhaps schedule another Monday session with um Dr. McIntosh.
Yeah, we could certainly.
Cause there's a lot to go through, yes.
We could do uh that Monday afternoon if that works for.
Uh your worship, we'd, we'd have to check the calendar. Uh I think that there is an opportunity to have a Monday. I don't know, we we have a meeting on Monday. Dr. McIntosh, we start. Dr. McIntosh, we start at uh one o'clock and I think we were considering that to be a potential budget day. Now that may be uh too soon for the budget, given the discussion today, because there was a lot of good discussion here today and a lot of stuff we can take away and digest. Just a couple of comments we'll need your your help on. Uh first of all, the chart is fairly robust at this point and I understand the process going forward, we'll actually have to cull it down. But as well, part of it's measuring the resource requirements for these elements as well, because these actually don't detract from the equilibrium or whatever. Now, they actually add to it and then certainly some can be accommodated, but we have to think that through as far as the budget process as well. So of course, that has implications in terms of raising revenue or cutting costs and all those sorts of good things. So my suggestion is that we um probably uh leave this as a work in progress. Uh that we uh we take this as being something that still will be further refined and hopefully condensed. And that we try to schedule a Monday, Monday as quickly as we reasonably can uh to to actually make the time work. Um and that we have uh, uh but we'd have to check with the clerk's office and see what the, what other things happen to be scheduled. Cause there's other scheduling challenges, so that might be the best thing is to go offline and try to find the time that works.
Uh your worship, does it have to be a Monday?
Not necessary, but it depends on people's uh calendars. Uh Monday is one day that it's easier for staff to find time. Because generally we're available on Mondays, whereas during the week, there's other commitments from other members of council, so it makes it, it makes it more difficult. So I think our first um opportunity would be Monday, but uh you know, I'm open to any day, uh you know, on the weekend or Saturday, we've done these things before on weekends.
I'm open to any day too, yeah.
So perhaps we could leave it with staff to come back and hold council and Dr. McIntosh's schedule. So that, you know, coming at this, I think today's been a great session, um but you wanna be fresh and um and have these good discussions. So that helps staff flesh out what, you know, the correction that council wants to go on this budget. Uh councillor Richter, I see your hand up.
Yeah, I just had a a question mark and um I am very thankful we had the discussion we had today. Particularly around the budget process, I think that Dr. McIntosh has got a. A good sense of what the real issues are here that we're wrestling with. And I wonder if uh when staff are booking time for him to come back and finish the priority session with us. If they might look at pre-booking time for him to work further with us. On restructuring that budget process for twenty twenty two, it looks like we're going towards now.
That's not his turn, yes, thank you.
Is that something that could be done? Uh I'm assuming Dr. McIntosh would be available, maybe?
Your worship, I don't think we're being heard through our mass, uh I think the consensus was it could be done uh with the schedule and probably starting. More as to process and format as opposed to actual uh hard uh financial analysis, but process and format going forward. Uh as early as uh this budget process being completed.
Yeah, well, I think it's um, I I s- I feel like. Council is looking at making significant changes to the model uh for twenty twenty two. So we need to start preparing for that now, I think.
Yes, um yeah, we've got a message for it too. And that is part of our discussion today, so thank you.
Right, well, I think uh what I will do then is um work with staff, obviously, uh to uh. Send this out to everybody, you'll notice I've got water policy, Willoughby Library, COVID recovery, uh still items to discuss. Then we can come back to the chart. Uh and you know, the reality is, I think we need to go back to each one, as many of you have highlighted. Now, what's required budget wise or time wise, just to make sure uh we're realistic. Once we've done that, assuming we have time, cause we've been here before, we've done this. We should probably go back to how are we gonna uh keep our attention to these? Uh regular reviews, the chart, uh how can we best use C P C meetings? Uh how do we deal with, you know, the matters arising as you head into your last year? Um you know, more and more stuff comes up, so how do we deal with those, uh public inquiries? And uh so that would be our next meeting, uh is finalize the uh actual now, next, later priorities. And make sure uh we do our darndest, uh what's required to be successful in doing that.
Good, well, thank you very much.
Uh and thank you, that was uh a great way for me to spend my birthday. Uh always, uh I, you know, I know, you know, sometimes we have differences of opinion, but. Um I think the key is a good discussion, but like anything, we need to make sure that we've got the tools. Um practices to implement it, right? I look forward to helping you do that. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Happy birthday. Yes, happy birthday.
Happy birthday, Gord.
Well, thank you very much and uh go and enjoy your birthday, please. Hopefully, there's some good plans for you tonight, uh nice dinner out, if you can, if you're mobile. Uh so with that, I'm gonna ask for motion to terminate this meeting. Councillor Arneson moves it. You have five minutes and we'll go uh back.